Yep, now I can. Hey, guys.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we go into clothes to discuss real property and litigation.
Hi.
Okay, let's go ahead and continue with this meeting and go into the work session. Where we have an opportunity to learn more and discuss the fiscal year 2023 city managers recommended budget. The capital budget presentation and review.
Great. Good afternoon. Your Honor and City Council, we're excited to be here. Jed Briggs, Budget Director, and Eric Danitz, Assistant Budget Director. We're going over the capital budget this afternoon for the next couple hours. Just a couple of housekeeping items that I wanted to go over. The first thing is we still have two meetings left before we're asking Council to adopt the budget on the 23rd. On the 16th, so next week, we're going to be going over fees as well as policies and the compensation ordinance. We also typically have some extra time for any miscellaneous items. So if anything comes up today in this session that you want us to come back and have a bigger discussion on, we can bring that back next week. And then we're asking to adopt the budget on the 23rd. One thing I'll point out is we are in a work session. So what that means is that Council can give us direction, but there's no official action. There's no official regular meeting agenda item this afternoon, this evening. So if you give us direction, we will bring that back for adoption on the 23rd. And I think Council has given us some, some things for the 23rd already. So if that happens again today, that'll officially be part of the, the final budget adoption. The other thing I'll point out is the way that we have put together the presentation. It's really focused on new capital budget items or adding budget to existing projects. To go over the entire capital budget would be an incredible amount of time. It would take a lot of time to do that. But we also always encourage talking with the Council, a little bit more in-depth, one-on-one or in two-by-twos, whatever we can do to assist in understanding better the capital budget. We have project managers that we've brought similar to the operating budget today. And so we'll deep dive in a few of these different areas because they are the experts on these projects. And you'll be able to answer or ask questions, and they'll be able to answer you. The last thing I'll point out too is that as we talked about before, we are interested in doing kind of major new kind of transformative capital projects. What we're presenting here is what's recommended. And so we don't have some of these kind of big bolder projects that we've talked about in the past. And we encourage Council to make recommendations, any changes today based off of what we're showing you or presenting. However, if you do want to deep dive into some of these major project areas, I'd recommend that we kind of hold off on that and come back later to the budget. Just because those can be big, kind of gnarly conversations that take a long time to get through. However, I will say Council has the ability to make any changes that they, as they see fit in the budget. So just keep that in mind. We're not prepared necessarily to have a big conversation about major changes to the capital budget. And I think that's about it. I think Eric is gonna lead off.
Yeah, and before we even jump into the slides, I think I would reiterate some of the points that Jed is making, which is that this budget is a responsible pay-as-you-go philosophy essentially, which means that all of our recurring revenues are balanced with expenses. We're not seeking to, you know, over-expend against recurring revenues. And we're using only existing resources. So if we mention bond proceeds or grants or things like that, it means that for the fiscal year 22 and 23 budget, which is what we're really asking for on approval on June 23rd, it means that we're only recommending at this time using existing resources. So I just want to make that clear. Lastly, large tools for capital still remain at your disposal, but they're not necessarily entertained in this year's budget, meaning in fiscal year 22 adjusted or 23. So with that, I'll jump in a little bit to our, our process. And I want to emphasize that the scores in the capital process are a jumping off point for discussion. A lot of the capital budget has to be what I say is hand-tuned, even more so than the operations budget. So the scores are informative, but they're really just a jumping off point for further rationalization. So we look at, we look at how well do, do the projects that are proposed align to the priorities we've heard from you? Their, their funding source availability or their traditional funding sources, whether we really need it or we want it? And the history of support from the Council? And then from there, you know, relative value cost benefit analysis across all the projects that are flexible, I would say. From there, we prioritize them and discuss, you know, in our committee. And this year, one thing that was just slightly different was we also discussed how the existing program and/or additions could align to some of the themes that the city manager was speaking about. And then if there was space in revenues, we, you know, added some selective opportunities. And a lot of these opportunities will have managers cover with you this afternoon. For transparency in our scoring criteria, this is the weighting of the, of the capital scoring program. So each of these criteria, you could say, scored on a scale of one to five. And then they're further weighted based on this, this information here. You'll, you'll notice that the funding source availability is the largest weight. And that's really reflected in honoring past policy that Council has guided us on or legal constraints. And I'll get into that next. So one of the things that I mentioned before is this question of past policy and then the constraints associated with revenues for capital projects. Among our annually recurring revenues for capital, these are things like sales taxes, water service fees, or past accrued sales taxes essentially. We also carry a fair balance of bond proceeds from past raises, although there haven't been any recent ones. And then we have additional grant funding that's been awarded throughout the current year and things that we know are coming in the next fiscal year. Among bond proceeds, these are one-time tools as, as our grants, meaning that, you know, once you receive them, you can only deploy them once. Whereas the characteristics of our recurring revenue is that, you know, those have a tendency to be more flexible, although you'll see in the next slide that councils of the past have largely constrained those recurring revenues as well. The revenues that are under your control directly are the recurring revenues, like the taxes and the bond proceeds. The grants are of course subject to approval from outside entities. And that creates a certain state of uncertainty in the future, especially with our transportation projects. And then I've given a little bit of a highlight of the approximate amounts that are actually tied to these revenue sources. And I mean, these are, these are rounded numbers, so they're not precise, but it's to give you a sense of the relative size of those. And you'll notice, the last thing I'll call out on this slide, in fiscal year 23, when we say recurring revenues of 28 million, some of that is also coming from balances of the past that we are proposing be deployed in fiscal year 23. So it doesn't mean that we're receiving all 28 million of new money. We've moved some accrued balances forward, if you will, to pay for proposed projects. And that's sort of a normal process that happens each year in our, in our history, I guess you could say. To touch on the, the constraints that I've been speaking about, I've shown Council various versions of these types of slides in the past, but this one is now just zeroed in on capital only. The first one we'll talk about is the resort tax, which actually gets split up into contributions to operating and capital. So a portion of the resort tax goes to general fund operations. Thirty-one percent of it goes to the capital fund. And then an additional percentage of it goes to the transportation fund for transportation operations. You'll see in your pocket and in the staff report, we frequently refer to this revenue as the general fund transfer. It's about four to five million a year, and it is the most flexible revenue that we have available for capital. And that's really where the competitive relative value process happens in our capital discussions. And this revenue is traditionally deployed for what I call like core maintenance. It's like the bread and butter of keeping the lights on in the city. And it's things like replacing pavement, replacing computers, keeping our police vehicles running and things like that. The additional resort city sales tax, that's the 0.5%. It pays some existing debt service, which we have some remaining bond proceeds associated with. It's, and it's traditionally been used for large capital, open space, downtown streets. Am I, am I still? Speakers? I don't know. People can hear me still? Is this live? Is it? This one live? No.
Does work?
Hello?
Do ours work? I don't think ours work either.
Test, test. Is that, is that on?
Ours are, ours back too.
I think I'm, yep, we're back. Okay, um, the additional, the additional resort sales tax is legally flexible, but has been constrained by past council policy. So I make reference to that. And it was sort of constrained at the time of adoption. There is a sort of catch-all clause within the past language, which is, these are the traditional uses and other as Council sees fit. So you can, what we are proposing in the current budget honors the traditional uses, but you could always deploy it toward further ends, if that makes sense. The transient room tax, after it pays debt service, usually has about one to 1.4 million dollars left over in free cash every year. And we are honoring past council policy there by proposing it be deployed for projects in and around the Bonanza Park neighborhood. Transit sales tax is a recurring revenue, but its availability for capital really depends on the year because so much of the transportation fund operations are variable as well. And that's largely associated with variability on grants. The LPA RDA is a community, a neighborhood development vehicle, you could call it. The bulk of the revenues for the LPA RDA are funding the, the sales tax bond repayment that is now the source of funds for the affordable housing pipeline. And there's a nominal amount left over each year of free cash, call it 200 to 250,000 dollars a year, to fund some flexible projects, but those have to be contained in the boundaries of that RDA, which is sort of around the resort base and City Park. And then lastly, we have water service fees. A bulk of those water service fees are going to fund debt service on the new water revenue bonds that we issued in 2020 and 21. And those revenue bonds are going to pay the Three Kings Water Treatment Plant Facility construction. We've provided a review of the bond proceeds that we still have on our books and where they are headed in terms of capital projects. The 2013 walkability geo bond, we have tentatively programmed as dedicated to the Snow Creek Tunnel in, in the recommendation of the Walkability Committee. We have a section on the Snow Creek Tunnel project to come. So we're seeking some direction from the Council today, and we have a variety of paths you could follow. We do have a dedicated section for that in the meeting. The 2020 treasure and Armstrong general obligation bond is for ongoing maintenance on Treasure Hill. It will likely be, or it already is planned to go toward fire mitigation. And then we have some nominal remaining balances on the 2015 and 2017 sales tax revenue bonds, the bulk of which was used for land acquisitions and/or open space. With these remaining amounts, we're actually proposing that they be deployed for investments in the Bonanza Park neighborhood area, particularly with regard to streets projects. The 2019 sales tax revenue bond, that's your, that's the core of your affordable housing pipeline. And we also have a housing section to come. And then the water revenue bond, I do want to highlight on this point, the total budgets that you'll see associated with this bond amount to about 66 million dollars. However, a portion of that is in fiscal year 22, which is this current fiscal year. So a significant amount of that has already been expended toward construction of the water treatment plant. So we have about 45 million dollars remaining, but I wrote 66 here because that's what the budgets will show associated with this, with this bond. On the, on the grant front, Julia and her team will give you a decomposition, or they'll give you an explanation of recent successes they've had. But this is also a number that comes from past successes as well. So 28 million in grant funds associated with transportation, the bulk of which will go toward the purchase of electric buses when we're ready to receive them. There's a possibility that that amount will roll forward into fiscal year 23, depending on the delivery date of the buses. And then on recreation, in this fiscal year, the recreation team had a significant amount of success raising rap tax grants. And that has allowed us to also free up general fund money to reinvest, I would say, in maintenance and asset management programs, a variety of our recreation facilities. So a lot of the credit, all the credit for that revenue goes to Ken, Amanda, and Heinrich. Okay, so looking, looking at this, as Jed mentioned, you know, going through 200 to 300 projects and, and would, would kind of be an onerous task, but I do want to give you a sense of where the money is going. And we've given you a full five-year breakdown of citywide capital projects. We've tagged each of them to either a core service or one of the critical priorities. The main summary statement here is the significant investments would be headed toward water, bucketed under the environmental priority. We just, I just had to choose one for it to live in. And then transportation. So those are where the bulk of the city's investments would be headed over the next five years. And then you'll also notice that significant carry-forward balances is available citywide. And this is from past accrued revenues that have yet to be deployed, but are tagged to projects in these categories. And the biggest contributor to that again is the water fund and the investments to, to, that are happening and will continue to happen at the Three Kings plant. Not, not much. Yeah, I basically tagged water as environmental, or I'm sorry, it's tagged as environmental, not energy. So you'll see the, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's the bulk of the investments in that category. Yeah, I, I don't have the percentage in my head, but it's at least, it's at least 100 million of the 150. In core services, this is again the realm of what I would call the bread and butter of maintaining the city. So the big contributors in the, on a recurring basis are, are asset management programs. So asset management replacement, ice facility, Main Street infrastructure. I mean, those are things like maintaining flower boxes, curbs, sidewalks, lights. It's sort of your everyday keeping the light on stuff as mentioned. And then I do want to call out this 5 million dollar CIP funding. That's a sort of dedicated reservation of fund balance within the capital fund, designed as a credit enhancement for our bonding capacity and ratings. So that's one feature where the ratings agencies see that and they say, oh, we really like that this is set aside. That helps, you know, increase your credit in our eyes.
Eric, on this one, recreation building in City Park. It looks like it's in FY '25. So this was one in the staff report that stood out because it basically said, we can't do this if we don't extend our tax base and get money from some of the base area development activity. So I guess the question is, if this is something we should be investing in, I mean, it's an amenity people like, and if this is a project that we think is important enough to move forward, should we look at other ways of funding this outside of the RDA potential increase maybe someday?
I think that's, that's definitely a fair question. Our recreation director would likely be able to better advise you on the relative value of an investment in City Park versus other locations in the city. However, I know that he's sort of pursuing an expansion or renewal of the Recreation Master Plan. I think that would consider whether a new asset should go in City Park or somewhere else. Furthermore, I will say to you though, that the reason why this is so far off in the future is because it's largely hypothetical with regard to the stability of funding. So it depends on, it would depend on base development at Park City Mountain because the, the RDA's authority only, its revenue authority only grows with that new asset development. And that just kind of keeps extending to the, the future, if that makes sense.
In terms of the need for the recreation building and that facility, well, I mean, that houses our summer day camp, which is a keep-over for the community. The past couple of summers, we have now licensed that building as well as minors. And it is very difficult for us to manage two locations and minors. You know, the situation. Several years ago, there was a plan developed for our recreation building. I contemplated a joint use facility with a senior center, a day camp. And I think that building at that time was about eight million dollars, eight and a half million dollars. So you would be able to afford it.
Yeah, it's not enough.
So yeah, it's a sufficient amount of funding. And then we renovated that in 2006, I think it was. And again, it's, it needs some more.
I think Jeremy raised a good point, but I, do I, do I understand that we're probably gonna have a pretty robust conversation on revenue sources and sort of a hierarchy of needs for decisions that this council wants to come up with? Because there are a handful of projects that are gonna continue to crop up where we're thinking, like, like you mentioned early in your, and in the staff report, that we're kind of just treading water for a minute. We're not really discussing new revenue sources at the moment. But that's intentional because we're gonna be looking for those as we define projects going forward. And this would be one of those ones. We've been talking at the Rec Advisory Board about other pieces. So I'm actually with Jeremy, but I'm curious if we're, we want to be careful not to get ahead of ourselves because another project may come up and just actually supersede this one in terms of its importance. And I, you know, I'm not sure that the base area developments are gonna happen fast enough to actually satisfy the needs that we're looking for. Zach, are we kind of aligned?
Yeah, that's really the point is, I, you know, if we need to do this, I don't want to hold it hostage for the base area development. You know, so when we have that priority discussion, and, you know, there's other accounts in here with money, you know, we could look at how we shuffle things potentially. And if it does sort of flow to that, then let's figure out how to fund it, you know, as soon as we need it.
Yeah, I think our, our, our assumption is that as, you know, over the course of the next year, I mean, I think we've got five months or so with the new mayor and council. So as we're picking up projects as we go, this team's likely gonna have to come up with a creative financial strategy to fund multiple projects at the same time for infrastructure. And so this is just a placeholder, but absolutely, our, our thought is you're gonna have several projects. And we, you know, I think we've got a, a very solid financial team. We have a lot of tools available to us, and we have a relatively conservative budget here. Trying to leave some headroom here for you to be creative in this next year and pull some projects together and group that cost, maybe create some economy of scale in terms of interest rates or otherwise.
Right. We're in arrears in 2024 anyway on some of this stuff, right? I don't know, we're getting to a place where we're in the negative. So we're gonna have to find some money one way or another down the line, down the line, yeah.
Well, I was just gonna mention the Lower Park RDA currently, I mean, most of the funding is going to pay for debt and for that loan that Eric mentioned previously. And this is kind of a legacy project. It's been in there for a while. That's the reason it's still there. And, and the reason it got pushed to 25, I think, a year ago was just because we didn't know what else to do with it. So it's kind of just sitting in there as a point of conversation, but we really couldn't. It'd be hard to do that project in the Lower Park RDA right now, even with the base development, because we'd have to bond against the new revenue. And that's RDA only extends to 2030, so we have to get that extended. And then we have to bond. So there's a lot of complications with it. Looking for a new funding source makes a lot of sense, but again, it's part of the prioritization process.
There we go. So if we look at the total, and we have for this year 68.9, and last year was 77.5, and then 24 is 27.8. That's because over the course of this ye, the next year we go into, usually we end up with about 40 million or 50 million more that we didn't suspect we were gonna have. Is that right? Am I right on that? Or, because I just, it seems like every other year before that, we had a lot of capital. And then you, you have these lower numbers as we move on. Does that, am I, does that make sense?
If you look at the future years, those are actually more reflective of the available recurring revenue. The reason why 22 and 23 will look significantly larger is because we're programming in things like bond proceeds and grants that we're hoping to deploy in the near term. So those numbers are boosted because they're, the revenues available for them are being driven by those one-time proceeds, if that makes sense.
Oh, so for like, that would have been, that would have been 20, 22 and 23, right?
Correct, correct.
We've got a lot of bond proceeds still in the, the water fund for the Three Kings Water Treatment Plant and a lot of budget for grants in the transportation fund. We just don't have those programmed out.
So would we suspect unless there was some grant funding coming federally or if we bonded again, we are around 27 to 25 every year? Or we really don't have an average? It just really depends. Because those numbers are, those numbers are very different.
If you look back at the recurring city revenues for capital, you can see that the, the recurring revenues are much smaller than the annual amounts that are programmed for capital. So you could say that we are already utilizing financial tools to magnify our buying power off of a base of recurring revenues that is much smaller. And that's from, that's, you know, goes back to historical decisions and also those grant wins that have come in. On the energy front, the mapping here is really just a function of my logic. So you could, again, you could argue that a lot of the objects also have an energy component, but this is just the way that I broke down all the projects. The one we have here is, it's really a remaining balance with respect to Bonanza Park RMP substation mitigation. This is not an amount that would allow us to, you know, move or do anything significant with regard to that substation. It might allow for movements of some poles here and there. And that's why we, we've just left it in the capital budget to honor that potential use. Again, on the environmental front, we've bucketed a lot of the water projects into this category. And you can see that the key drivers are the MIW treatment is a synonym for Three Kings Water Treatment Plant and then ongoing investments in water infrastructure. We do have a dedicated water section, so if it's okay with the Council, I'll probably go quickly through this and then let our water department manager speak to the fund later. Same with transportation.
Eric, just almost quickly. So to Becca's question, really the only thing on this list that's not water is, is the soils one, right? O267?
Correct. And that's just a, that continues to roll forward that we don't recommend touching, and it's available and flexible for you, for your use if and when there's a, I don't know, needs for soil mitigation or a further strategy. Depending on where you, if you had to a new strategy with that, we may or may not need. Depending on where you, if you had to a new strategy with that, we may or may not need to increase that, but we would, this would be one of those items that fall on the list on, dependent upon your priorities, how would we decide, design the funding sort of?
Yeah, it's important on this one, especially, I think, to make the point, we don't have a strategy. We don't, you know, we're not funding anything per se where there's like a project in the works. This is just the money that was in this account that we're leaving in this account until we have that discussion with the public and everything.
That's right.
Thanks.
I was just going to mention too, the stormwater on here, the mat project is a separate fund. And so a lot of people don't know that, but it is in part of the water. Utility, it has its own revenue source.
On the transportation front, you'll notice a mix of projects in here where I've actually bucketed what would traditionally be considered streets projects into this critical priority. So you'll see a combination, the key driver of the expenses in the short term is the transportation rolling stock replacement. And like we said, that acquisition is nearing, and if it happens within the calendar, within the scope of fiscal year twenty-three, this balance will just roll forward and be deployed at that time. The next significant additions are the Snow Creek Tunnel, which we have a specific dedicated section for discussion on today. And then some equipment replacement rolling stock that usually, that is under the management of our public works director and it goes toward things like replacing police vehicles, replacing snowplows, replacing tractors. And that's how we we fund those purchases and replacements. There's a dedicated committee under his supervision that rationalizes all those purchases and their timing. And then we also have, yeah.
I was just gonna, so that would not be buses, though? That would be any, anything with an engine that's not a bus?
You could think of that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, or a hybrid.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Wheels.
Of engine or battery. We also have the pavement management implementation program in here, which hasn't traditionally been thought of as a transportation project, but it's really just maintaining the city's streets. So that's under the public works supervision as well. And they have a whole program of when, you know, what what cracks in the sidewalk need to be filled and and he or he can speak more to that if council is interested. Uh, and then I'll also just call out Park Avenue reconstruction, which we've subdivided this year to better recognize the project's intent. And our city engineer will speak to that shortly.
Can we talk a little bit about the three in the middle, I guess, five, well, really the two, five and six?
Yeah, sorry, I'm cutting you off.
No, go ahead.
I think the key message here is that these are projects that the transportation team has entered envisioned as being potential improvements in and around the Bonanza Park area. A lot of those projects are subject to uncertainty because there is not existing grant funding for them or recurring revenues available to necessarily deploy on them in the near term. So these are ideas that the team had in the past. We've left them in for now for your consideration, but again, they would be subject to future grant awards and raises. So there's a lot of uncertainty associated with those projects.
Even number five, the six point three?
I think Ju- I think Julia can speak to that one specifically. That one is slightly different.
Just a big number.
Thank you, Eric, and good afternoon, the mayor and council members, Julia Collins, Transportation Planning Manager. The project that you were asking about is the SR two forty-eight corridor improvements. And this project is solely funded from our third quarter COG funding. This grant program that we work in close collaboration with Summit County, it's a third quarter sales tax revenue. Back in twenty nineteen, when we were working in partnership with UDOT, we were granted this money to advance the corridor. When that partnership or that project dissolved, we still had the local grant, and we've actually been pulling on this money ever since for corridor improvements that advance transportation goals. So the recent Kearns High School tunnel was paid for by this fund. The recent pedestrian improvements that you'll see at the high visibility crosswalks at the corner of Bonanza and two forty-eights, some additional sidewalk improvements. And then also the Richardson flat signal, we actually added some transit technology to that signal. So some things that accomplish our short-term goal. To the future with the two forty-eight corridor. We currently are, again, working in close communication with UDOT on some near-term improvements and some long-term improvements. And this money will be used for both planning, design, modeling, and then those capital. So it's nice to have this money when those opportunities become available that we can draw upon. And we'll continue, just like what Eric and Jen said, we'll continue to work in close collaboration with you on what the opportunities would be and how this money would be allocated.
Eric, can I just ask, why did we not try to use that money for the tunnel, for the Snow Creek Tunnel, if we were using it for another tunnel?
It's a great question. If I, if I may, because we're so heavily reliant on capital grabs, we felt that the grants that are available to us, we have been quite competitive in nature with that. And so when we get to this section where you'll you'll see the actual funding proposal for the the Snow Creek Crossing, it's, you know, pretty much funded with outside revenue sources and a small percentage of it or a percentage of it is coming from the transportation fund. We could draw on that. This fund, we wouldn't have it available and then we wouldn't be able to advance the priority for the two forty-eight corridor. But that is absolutely a decision if you wanted to make that. We, I'm getting, I'm getting ahead of ourselves, but we do expect some additional revenue from the third quarter county fund to go towards this project side of this revenue source.
That's great, thank you.
So then that that six point three just, it kind of changed by, changes by the marginal amount that we use each year for each of the new projects that creep up. We don't have anything scheduled in FY twenty-two, and so next year we'll likely see some amount in FY twenty-four going forward. Going forward down the line, right?
We come to you with, for example, maybe there is some bus queue drop opportunities or there we can realign some zip code purge or there's some opportunities in the short term in the next one to three years. We would come to you with that project and say, send a hundred dollars out of this, like a big project, we like to talk and, you know, I'm not going to dance up with you.
Pardon me, sorry, pardon me if I forget. Did we use any of this fund or was any of this fund earmarked, so to speak, for anything related to the Queens Junction parking ride? And then we re, no, so this was completely separate.
Numbers.
The one below that is the existing.
Just then, we were kind of pulling from a lot of different sources, I didn't know if we had, like, I say, if you can point on two forty-eight, if the parking lot went in and it was, you know, we were going to, some of this, but it sounds like we.
But it is earmarked for something on two forty-eight.
That's correct. The application made to the COG for approval was two forty-eight corridor improvements.
Maybe just a little bit of the.
Oh, so I was just going to say, like, this isn't necessarily money that we have in our bank account. It is money that we get reimbursed for when we do the actual projects. So if you think about what a budget is, it's a financial plan. We actually have had this in the budget for a few years now, but it is based off doing the, doing a project or several projects and then getting reimbursement. And so that's the only little tricky element to it is we submitted the project through the COG and we'd have to resubmit some changes, which we can do. But it's just, it's not just sitting there like in our fund balance or anything like that. It's actually part of a bigger process.
So because FY twenty-two officially ends on June thirtieth, so does that mean like this FY twenty-two fully closes out on June thirtieth? Or is it still for things that were scheduled for previous to June thirtieth, but you're still paying it off into the FY twenty-three? Or does that then become carry forward in the FY twenty-three? Sorry, I was just wondering about the technicality of that.
Okay, so so the fiscal year ends June thirtieth, we're able to, anything that's, we're still paying invoices. We have an accrual-based, modified accrual-based budgeting and accounting system. And so we're able to pay invoices that were posted previous to June thirtieth. And so typically, we're still paying those things off for a couple of months, maybe three months sometimes in extreme cases, even though we have kind of a hard deadline. But we have to, through GASB accounting rules, we have to accrue those back into the fiscal year. And so if you look at the carry forward, one of the kind of weird words that's different than the alphabet, you're looking at the transit rolling, so sixteen point eight billion. We're not planning before June thirtieth to pay any of that. We're not applying those losses before then, so that's going to get carried over into FY twenty-three. And we haven't done that here just because we have a process that does that automatically. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
When does that happen?
Typically, November, December.
So it'll be in the mid-year, mid-fiscal year budget review?
Yeah, uh, the carry forward are budgets that were adopted previously. And so they're not necessarily part of the adjusted budget, they're part of budgets that have been approved by previous councils. However, we can't adjust and change those as needed.
There's a result, right? Like, we either didn't take the grant money, we gave back the money, or we didn't spend money in an account, so how does that result get reflected?
It it's, it shows up in the adjusted budget for, so for this current fiscal year, it's going to be in FY twenty-two. But we don't, we we can't show it at the, if we did a budget adjustment in the middle of December. Typically, in years past, we've shown that as part of this process, you can see the carry forward as part of the annual budget process.
Yeah, perhaps when we talk about the scoring models sometime in a few months, we could talk about methodology here a little bit and like how we show this and what data, just to make it clear, kind of a separation between cash and, what's called cash in the bank and other money. Casted or whatnot. It's just, it's a little hard to read unless you get that full explanation, you know? But I I understand now why the six point three, like for item five, isn't shown as carry forward versus other things that are, because it's money we actually have yet, right?
Julie, are we, would we, are we at risk of losing that potential grant funding in the next few years? Or should, like, should we be, you know, moving forward quickly?
That's a great question. At the recent May COG meeting, there was discussion about some of these outstanding project balances. However, the mayor did an excellent job, as did other mayors, the mayor Camus and Francis, who are, you know, there are some kind of carry forward grants that are unspent. Demonstrating that these things are still in motion, that they are projects that are moving forward. If we were sitting on funds that the project was not moving forward, they would ask us to revisit, maybe shift to a different priority, reallocate, or have it go back into the COG for the COG. So I think we're, two forty-eight is our regional corridor, I think we are showing motion and it is important.
That was really helpful, just so you guys know, because I really thought we had six point three in the bank too, so.
With respect to affordable housing, we.
Can we, sorry, mayor, I think we just need to take a break. Technologically, some of the audio is a little garbled in the background and we feel like if we reset the system, the quality would be better for folks listening online. If we take like a two-minute recess for the tech team?
Absolutely, just let us know when we're ready to go again.
Test, test, test.
No, I don't think it's working.
Test, test, test. Mic check, mic check. Test, test, test.
Give us a thumbs up.
Mic check, testing.
I hear you.
Okay, Ryan can hear me, but I don't think you can hear in council chambers. Test, test. There we go, there we go.
Okay, we, I believe, have fixed our audio glitch with the online. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention and should it not work again, please, please keep, keep us posted on that.
Okay, continuing on, we have affordable housing and we also have a section with our affordable housing program manager. Okay, continuing on, we have, um, affordable housing and we also have a section with our affordable housing program manager. The key takeaway that we would like the council to be aware of is that in the past, the, almost the entire affordable housing revenue was programmed on one project, Woodside Phase Two. What we've done this year is just an attempt to more closely recognize potential anticipated uses that the council may have. However, none of these, uh, amounts and projects they're associated with are constraining, of course. It was just an attempt to more transparently recognize potential future uses. And then the one additional item that I'd like to mention is that the light deed program is proposed in this budget. You'll see it as a million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three and the revenue of that, or the revenue for that, I should say, arises from past, uh, sale of asset. In the social equity front, we also have, uh, remaining balances from the, the senior center community project, which could be redeployed as part of a Woodside Phase Two project or standalone. And then, uh, new amounts with respect to public art, this is overseen by, uh, Jenny Dearson. And then library development and donations, these are really an accrual of grants that the library, uh, receives or has done a good job raising.
When it says land acquisition banking program, that's three million in FY twenty-two, and FY twenty-two is about to end. Did we buy three million dollars worth of land in FY twenty-two?
No, it's just a reallocation of budget, uh, that would then roll forward. So there. And this is an interesting project that we'll come back to. This project itself was used to purchase the home stake lot. And it had, it had a pre-existing balance before this year of a million dollars remaining from additional resort sales tax. So that three million is actually composed of two revenue sources. And we, we do, uh, have a question for you on whether you'd like to retain that additional resort sales tax within this project. It could be a source of like flexible use or for further land acquisition, um, if that makes sense.
To be clear though, it's not, again, it's a, it's a, it's a, I think, to be clear, it's, it's not cash in the bank either, right?
Yes, it is. In this, in this case, this project is, the three million is from existing cash. So past accrued balance, which would be the additional resort sales tax component. And then, uh, we've proposed adding two million to it as a placeholder from the twenty nineteen bond. So you, you would have to go deep into the capital reports to see this information. It's rolled up to a total right here.
Okay. Yeah, that, I just, why is it not on the, in the, why is not a portion of it in the carry forward balance then if it, if it's cash in the bank? Uh, just referencing our conversation earlier, that kind of.
That's a good question. I may be misspeaking on this one, but, um, I think what we've, we're recognizing. I may be, I may be wrong on that, to be honest. That's fair. We, I do know that the one million from additional resort sales taxes proposed and then two million from.
I gotta say, I feel like maybe I deserve a plaque or something because it, it, if I've ever stomped you.
You caught, you.
I feel like I just, can I get a tattoo or something that says I?
I'm trying to.
Yeah, I, I'm going to reiterate something. If it's budgeted, what that means is that it's a financial plan, meaning we're planning to spend it. And that could be in the future, but it could also be in the past. So sometimes, yes, the money is sitting in our coffers, sometimes, uh, like with the, um, the rolling stock, uh, the transit buses. That is, most of that's federally funded and so it's in FY twenty-two, but we haven't received that money and we won't receive that money until we actually expend the money and then we'll get reimbursed for that. And so it's a little, it's a little weird because it's like, oh, this is all money that we have. In a lot of cases, yes, and in some cases, no. So it just depends on which project we're talking about. Yeah.
Um, and then the, I think I'd like to allow you to get the managers up in front of you, but we did try to fold up the top, uh, projects within each fund. So, um, again, you know, the bulk of the expenses are usually associated with your largest projects. So within the capital fund itself, the affordable housing program makes up the, you know, it's actually twenty-some million dollars in change, which you'll see later. But there's one project that's called Affordable Housing Program. That's listed at twelve million. Pavilion Management is the next, um, largest expense over the five-year plan, Park Avenue Reconstruction and on down the list. I, I won't actually read each of these to you. Um, and then the main message with regard to all of these is the largest new proposed project is the Snow Creek Crossing, which we have a section on, of course. So, uh, that is, I guess the key takeaway here is most of what this budget proposes is our existing projects that are in our plans from the past or this year. You can always, um, change or reprioritize them, but the largest material increase would be coming from the Snow Creek Crossing Tunnel.
Eric, we could go back for, I'm sorry, back to the social equity top ten. We're talking about public art. I know that that's supposed to be one percent of capital projects. So will there be like one percent of the water treatment plant that we can spend on public art?
I don't, apologies because I don't actually know the legal definition or obligation on this project. But usually, from my understanding, it was from new development. Um, and, but I could come back with a better answer. I'm, apologies on that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we, we do have a one percent policy. Usually we put that into the project budgets themselves and this is more of a general public art fund. So it's, it's not for each project individually.
Is it in the water treatment plant? Do you know? Jenny would know.
Clips, giving me sideways looks here.
That would be wonderful art.
It does not apply to infrastructure projects like water or something like roads. It wouldn't apply to those projects. We have coordinated with the water department in the past. So with this, with the, the balance that we have, if we wanted to do something at the water treatment plant, we certainly could.
Okay, thanks.
And then, uh, sort of the last piece of the summary, the summary lens is, is that addressing the general fund slice itself. We also looked at the project proposals through the lens of the, uh, the annual themes that the city manager has discussed. So in fiscal year twenty-two, uh, we, we tagged approximately five hundred thousand as, as associated with administrative infrastructure. Um, resort economy, two million, neighborhoods, two and a half. And our general fund transfer amount in twenty-three is actually slightly lower because of our forecasted, um, slightly lower sales tax, uh, revenue projection. Um, but a, a, again, just looking at allocating the projects according to these themes as well. And I've only listed the top three within each of these, um, buckets to give you a sense of how we thought about those in our discussions. There is a full list of general fund transfer projects in your presentation. Um, but I noticed this morning that I didn't, this next slide was sort of buried in the, in the deck. Um, I believe the mayor has actually asked us if she, if we would present the not funded or not recommended projects. Largely, there's not a high volume of not recommended projects because we mostly match the projects to revenues that are real or expected to come. But, uh, on the general fund transfer specifically, we did have requests that were in excess of the revenue capacity. So these are the projects that fell below the line and the big ticket items were associated with, uh, just, I would almost call them hypothetical amounts with respect to a mark expansion. Uh, potential Marsack building remodel. Um, the committee did not ultimately thought these were good ideas, but didn't support them relative to the other needs that we saw within the city. And then the projects that are below that mark expansion line. Managers expressed a capacity to either solve these problems a different way, or these were projects that were just closed down. So, uh, Triangle Property, uh, Guard Rail to Royal Street and Deer Valley Drive, these are projects that are just complete. So we closed those and then we would actually redeploy them, um, potentially in the future. But we, we didn't have the revenue capacity to, to fund these lines and they ranked the lowest in the eyes of the capital committee after that kind of hand rationalization. And I would also say one other thing on this point, which is to say that this list is relatively small because we've, we cleaned up a lot of projects during COVID. Meaning anything that we could kind of, um, that could be creatively solved other ways or redeployed for safety over the course of COVID was, was eliminated or closed. Or if a project was just not going anywhere, we proposed that it be, um, closed at the stage that we were going through the crisis. So this list is pretty small because we've already gone through a lot of that cleanup process in preceding years, if that makes sense.
Eric, can I ask a question on, so on the, I printed out the full capital budget and there's a few, probably, I mean, just on this one page, probably ten items that, um, don't have a carry forward and don't have any money in them in the future or now. Um, why are they still on there? Are they, like, we're thinking about it or they?
Potentially, yeah. It would, it would either be balance, it would either be capital projects that we haven't explicitly said are closed down or eliminated. Or they might be entertained in the future but are as yet unfunded. But we let that through in the report in saying we, we don't know if it should be shut down or leave open at the moment.
Okay, so it wasn't like they had a project like this, they're just open.
Yeah, open and unfunded, you could think of it as.
I'm sorry?
Open and unfunded, which would mean that managers hadn't requested any money against them. So there's not like necessarily like a live opportunity or a current plan.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we do want to get into the meat of the new requests. So the next section involves the department managers and project managers. So, uh, we have some new requests associated with trails and open space. And if Heinrich is in the room, he will come speak to these items.
Thanks, Eric. Excuse me, Council, Heinrich Dieter's Trails and Open Space Manager. And so Eric, you'll have to correct me if I'm, I've gone twice on these budget ones first. So as the, the FY twenty-two are actually budget allocations that are in the budget being addressed right now. Is that accurate?
These are proposed increases within the current fiscal year. So it would increase hi- his project balance to close by June thirtieth. If he didn't expend all of this money, it would roll forward to fiscal year twenty-three.
No, thanks. That was a good update. So, um, I'll just roll through each of these and then answer any questions you might have. I think council is pretty aware of the community wildfire risk assessment that we kicked off just the other day. Tana, thank you for attending on those. And I know Jeremy is our other liaison. That's a annual, or that is a year-long project that will be returning to council and asking for adoption of a plan to help us with our ongoing mitigation and the community's ongoing mitigation efforts. The open space improvements associated, um, with most of those projects, um, those are just projects that actually, previously, when we went through a lot of this process, have been funded by grants. So some of those are the Bonanza Restoration Projects that have identified. But we're also looking at additional projects at, I have my additional list. So we have additional projects in Bonanza and Clark Ranch, a wetland that we're trying to enhance out in that area. There are two trailheads, one, um, on Meadows Drive and one on the other side of Meadows Drive that aren't paved. The one on the, um, west side of Meadows Drive is sort of an informal parking area that people have used in the summer and the winter to access that area. Been working with that HOA. That might be a project that's coming back to you associated with a possible easement. We also have a lot of wayfinding, uh, improvements that need to be addressed. So, uh, Logan and his team put forward a lot of new wayfinding projects, but they are supportive of some of our older four-by-four posts. And you can imagine our trail system here in Park City, we've got a lot of those out there and they're probably about fifteen years old. Because I think I put them in when I, in my first year, um, but we're finding that they're cracked and falling apart and all the placards. And then we have been interacting with some of the NTP. We've gotten a lot of requests on our pathways to actually put gates. So these aren't like closed gates associated, but if you're going out two twenty-four, you can see Snyderville Basin has put some gates to, or almost make a chicane, if you will, where there's some of the crossings. So we're trying to implement some of that as well as some additional stenciling and stuff on some of our pathways for safety aspects. And then this fund actually serves a lot with matching aspects for some of the grants that we get. I think council is pretty aware that we have been very successful, uh, in attaining a lot of grants for trails and open space. And so this is something that we use to match a lot of those grants. So, um, the forestry plan is moving forward. Thanks to Mike Mccone, his team, Gretchen, John Robertson is on that. But, um, we are looking to actually adopt a plan that a consultant will be looking at as well as some implementation funds associated with that. Uh, and then I believe council is pretty aware of the, the Trails Master Plan. The five twenty-one is really the RAP grant that, um, we grabbed from, um, Summit County to a lot of that funding. And then the seventy-three thousand is impact fees that goes specifically towards that. So those will offset some of our trail projects. And then.
I do, I do want to call out one item on fiscal year twenty-three. In your original slide deck for today, I entered a typo in that box, so Max can catch me on this too. I put a hundred thousand in that. It's actually eighty-five in Heinrich's request for twenty-three. So apologies for that mistake, but I do want to cite that as a change.
And then the twenty-three is just the ongoing aspects associated with a lot of our open space and trail planning. So happy to answer any questions you have associated with those.
Include our wildfire mitigation plans, um, because it says the assessment is two fifty in FY twenty-two. Or is that going to be something that comes back every year, an additional two fifty? Or how do you have that, or is that budgeted in for the continuation?
So one thing that we focused on here is just the incremental changes. So this is proposed new requests. In the open space improvement project, Heinrich actually receives, uh, a three hundred thousand dollar line item associated with Flagstaff transfer fees. And that revenue itself has been utilized for, uh, things including, uh, noxious weed mitigation, fire mitigation, and he could deploy it toward that end. That has about an accrued balance of six hundred thousand dollars in change. We budget only three hundred thousand a year because the revenue source is highly variable. So it may be thirty thousand dollars some years, it may be seven hundred some years. And the reason that three hundred is placed in the budget is because that's the historical annual average. So this doesn't, uh, I'm, this doesn't display that to you, uh, because it's not a new increase request, but it is available for him to deploy, um, to your priorities, but I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, so, um, the budget specifically for this year for noxious weeds is two hundred thousand and then a hundred thousand for the wildfire mitigation that we've been moving forward. Now that's supplemented by a lot of work that's happening on treasure this year that comes out of the treasure fund. So that's that aspect. So moving forward, that defensible space work is a hundred K for wildfire and mitigation. Now, it's the, it is the intent of the community wildfire risk assessment and our work with Summit County to actually acquire grants, FEMA grants associated with those. That could serve as a matching grant that we could not only use as the city moving forward, but also residents could apply for. So that is sort of the funding strategy moving forward for wildfire mitigation. I knew you'd have one, Jeremy. I was waiting for it.
I do, yeah. And we can talk about it more during the, the next topic on the agenda. You know what? Let's just save it for that.
Okay.
Actually, uh, I'll just touch on this really briefly. We also included some informational, uh, data for you. Don't want to spend a ton of time on it, but we queried cell phone tracking through, uh, the Bloods Lake Trailhead. This actually includes ski data too, so you'll see high winter peaks. One of the main messages that Heinrich and I wanted to convey is that the, the summer peaks are rising as well. So if you talk about trail usage in the city, that just continues to go higher. And we're actually seeing some, uh, similar behavior with respect to trailhead data as we're seeing with traffic around the resort base. Which means higher influx of, uh, traffic in the morning hours, say eight AM, relative to historical norms. Uh, next up, we have recreation and parks, and this is a combination of Ken, um, Amanda and Troy potentially. So we've got a lot here and want to let them speak to some of the changes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Ken Fisher, Recreation Director. Whole bunch of projects here and a lot of these received funding because of the RAP tax money that we, uh, got. We got over a million dollars, um, on two of our projects. So we got about three hundred and eight thousand dollars for Prospector Park and seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the replacement of this vortex field. the replacement of this vortex field out at Quinns. So with that million dollars, we freed up a million dollars of general fund money that we were then able to take and reallocate to some of our programs that were short funding, in other words, really infrastructure stuff. So the first one is we got $150,000 additional for Mark Equipment Replacement. We use that fund for everything from replacing treadmills, weight equipment, tennis nets, any sort of infrastructure, FF and E type stuff. Got $100,000 to resurface the tennis boards. The Mark is now about 12 years old. Going to be due to get resurfaced here. So again, that will just help to maintain that infrastructure. Aquatics, 400,000 with some old pools that we're dealing with. And when a boiler or something like that goes out, we've never had sufficient funding. And it would mean that I would then have to put a request into the city's overall asset management in order to help fund it. So now this helps us to streamline that process and take care of that infrastructure. Cemetery improvements, another 123,000. And that is really for working on the master plan to try to expand that cemetery as well as future expansion to the cremation garden on that end. Neighborhood parks, $75,000 for the Dirt Jump Park on Creekside. That park was it's been more and more of a maintenance issue. And really what we hope to do is to get some do like a cement pump track in there and make it more usable on a year round basis for more users. We actually are working on getting an RFP out to try to get some design work done on that. Then $100,000 for recreation amenities for our master plan. So again, that's when you talk about potential improvements to city park building or the work that we're doing with the Mark in Quinns, that's where that funding is coming from. Lifeguard Jack was actually a RAP tax funding that we received and is complete. Same on the cement pad in the back of the Mark. And then the Prospector Park, there's still $165,000 of impact fee money in there. While we received $308,000 for the playground equipment, that full project's about $345,000. So we'll need some of that funding to help complete that. And with that, I'll turn. Go ahead. Okay, yeah, yeah. Quinns Field's Phase Three with $600,000 in there, and that's funded with impact fees. And that will go towards hopefully outdoor pickleball courts or whatever that design comes up with, right? We're just starting that process. Certainly pickleball has been a driver, but depending on how those designs and how that's phased, we would certainly use that. We think that 600,000 at a minimum would be good for to get some outdoor pickleball courts and parking out there.
To that note, really, we're talking about the Quinns Rec Complex then, not the Fields anymore? I imagine that's just an old account name then.
Yeah, so when we originally did Quinns, and Matt Twomack can talk to this better than I can. Basically, it was broken up into three phases. And we completed the first two phases. The third phase that's remaining is that parcel between the National Ability Center and the Axos Road and the Ice Arena where the big dirt lot is.
So what about the other items that we're looking at in the REC RFP that's out around the aquatics, around the Mark potentially? Those are not funded, right? We don't even know what we would fund at this point.
Correct.
And this is a carryover from the Quinns project essentially, which we could use towards that if it makes sense once we get that back and figure out the whole plan, right?
So you could use it now for a specific scope that amounts to $600,000 or you could wait? And then if the new projects address impacts or new demands from the community, it could be deployed without it.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to be clear why this is here, but those other things.
Can I ask, related to that, so on the Mark expansion, though it looks like Ken did make the request for the Mark expansion, is the idea that that's something that's regardless of what comes up in the study, we're we're pretty sure we're going to need to or want to expand the Mark? So we should have that in mind or what does that say?
So Ryan, I think at this point, we are working through, you know, design and conceptual design on and all that. So we don't have a dollar amount of what that project would cost. The money that I put in there was the hopes to to get some funding so that we could potentially start construction next spring. But I think, you know, given all the demands and everything, it makes sense for us to just wait till we know what the project looks like, that you guys are supportive, and then we figure out how we're going to fund it.
Okay, thanks.
Where is that one? I missed it.
Those are recommended, not recommended projects.
Yeah, they're not recommended.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Amanda Angen. I'm the General Manager of the Ice Arena. The Ice Arena is 16 years old and we are approaching the end of life for several large pieces of equipment. And actually, back in fiscal year 21, we anticipated this need and the city increased the funding for the capital budget from 50 to $66,000 annually and made a one-time $275,000 contribution in that fiscal year. And we had anticipated that the basin would match that contribution in fiscal year 22. That's what you see on the screen here. And that's because of the timing of our inter-local agreement review and also because their budget follows the calendar year versus the fiscal year. So you see that in the original fiscal year 22 capital budget. But what you see here is that we haven't reached an agreement to receive that funding from the basin in the current review. So on the slides here, we are delaying the receipt of that funding till fiscal year 23. And what you see in fiscal year 22 is a net contribution of $50,000, which is outlined as the payment in the current agreement we have with them. So again, the funding in fiscal year 23 has not been is not guaranteed. We haven't agreed upon it. It's not written into the inter-local agreement, but it is included here. And currently, the basin is supportive of the increase to $66,000 a year. They are not supportive of the $275,000 contribution, though they are willing to advance their annual payment if it helps us in the short term meet the capital needs. However, they have stipulated a few conditions for accepting that money that needs to be carefully considered before we actually would move forward with that. Any questions on this slide?
Yeah, I have a question on the, I think it's not this slide. It's to for PCI Serena Facility Usage Insights. And it's just the usage. I mean, I think if if the residents of Park City see this, and I could understand their them questioning the participation, right? So my question for you, Eric, is where do you get these numbers? Are these is this the same cellphone data that you've collected over the last five years? And can we pull some of this out by year? It looks like you've got it.
Yeah, correct. We, I mean, we can slice and dice this in further detail for you or aggregate it by year. And you let us know what you would want to see. But the tool that Amanda and I have used here is our cellphone data store. And what we did is we wrapped the Ice Arena and the Ice Arena Parking Lot in a polygon for analysis. And this is the historical series of estimated use based on that cellphone detection tool. So you'll notice that there are so Amanda can speak to this better than I can, but there are certain peaks around Olympic years and momentum for Olympic events. You'll see the shutdown or the lack of attendance relatively speaking with respect to COVID in the series. And then also, we we see that it captured some maintenance closures as well in in fiscal year 21. So we, in terms of the precision and magnitude of the estimate, it may not be precisely equivalent to what you would get if you had a laser beam across the entrance of the facility. But given that we don't have that, this is the best source of truth for us at the moment. And then using that cellphone information, the tool also tells us where those phones live at night. And it calls that its home zip code, if you will. And what we see is that the volume of usage based on this information, 49% of the users over that five year period were from a home location of 84098 and 17% were from 84060. And then kind of on down the line from there into the Wasatch back.
So from a usage standpoint, I just want to reiterate, this is where those cellphones sleep at night. Not just once, they're not this isn't somebody standing at New Park Hotel for one night and going to the Ice Arena. These are people who sleep predominantly in 84098.
Yeah, that's correct. And and this is the highest precision tool we have outside of registration forms and class registrations, which people sometimes don't fill out or they sometimes lie on. So this is a source where there is a quantitative measure behind it, and it's precise to that area, that geographical area.
Sure. And is there is there a tool out there that any municipality or any entity uses that's more accurate than this? Or are we all the way up to date on this?
Well, it would kind of. It would be like what Ken has, where he literally has a badge scanned at the entrance to the facility for every single user that comes in, and that is tied to their address in the database of the the Mark.
Thanks a lot.
Yep.
Can I, just directionally, do do the forums we do gather tell a similar story?
Yes, so we have a couple of different ways we've looked at zip codes previous to Eric's magic here. One's looking at registration. You can pull a specific class or season or year. But what's complicated with the Ice Arena too is you have, you know, you have programs, but then we're also pulling zip codes for folks that are entering our system through a different aspect of point of sale. And we're reliant on getting their zip code from the liability waiver and not from the same software. So there's different ways to look at different groups of residents and their zip codes. We find these members actually are very reflective of our adult hockey league when we pull the couple hundred zip codes out of USA Hockey's registration. I think it's almost it's it's very similar. But when you look at skating classes versus public skate versus some of these different ways we collect zip codes, they can look different. What's nice about this is it's all encompassing. It's one it's one source capturing everyone versus.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I just wanted, you know, if we have more data points that support it, makes it even stronger, right? And the facts are the facts. So thanks for giving them to us.
I will call back to one thing we didn't speak about with regard to the new requests. Oh, sorry. And it's the safety style soccer goals. These would just be available at Quinns as well. I think unless the council has more specific questions, we could probably skip Troy speaking about that, but oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Troy, those are those are good on those turf fields too, right? They're not staked or how do they?
Correct. So Troy Daley, Park City Public Works Department. We had an incident a few years ago where the kid hanging on the soccer goal was the soccer goal fell on him. And we was unable to stake those goals into synthetic fields. We went to the safety style that allow these these goals won't tip over, and we expanded on that. So this request actually finishes out the rest of our goals, whether it's on turf fields or synthetic fields that are not easily tipped over. I mean, I guess you could if you put someone on the backside, but they're a safety goal that we feel will prevent other injuries.
And then maybe this is a good follow up, Troy, because we have public works up next as well.
Well, before we jump there, can we just pull up the slide on the mark?
Yeah. Oh, so this is the time series associated with usage estimates. You'll notice the spikes around Sundance, but then in the summers and, you know, I would say non-Sundance usage is consistent and growing since COVID. I don't I don't if you want to comment, Ken, go ahead.
No, I mean, it's I mean, I thought that obviously the most interesting thing is the spikes. But I can say, you know, as Eric said, these numbers are actually low with our door counter in the front. In the month of July, we'll get over 30,000 people through the door. And I think here it's about 10,000 less than that. So and I don't know whether that's because we got a lot of people coming in and out of the door because it doesn't differentiate that. Or, you know, we got obviously kids and people coming in that may not have cellphones.
Yeah, he may he may have a biased low estimate because not everyone actually takes their cellphone to workout, but.
Oh, so this is place or AI, but the other slider, are these badge scans?
So these are gates, yeah.
So so what I did here, to your point, Jeremy, looking at different data sources, I pulled the one on the top is people that own or have a facility pass and a punch card to the mark broken down. And then I said, okay, we have a different system for tennis bookings or reserving courts. So I went in and I ran the numbers, pulled all the members and sorted them by zip code. And that's the breakdown from that. Then the bottom right one is active accounts. So that captures everybody that participates in all our programs as well as pass holders and everything.
And the tennis one, is that tennis and pickleball?
It is. Yeah, anybody that would reserve a court through tennis bookings. So it includes pickleball as well.
If we have the ability to break it out, I mean, it's not necessary for the budget discussions. But when we talk about the RFP results and, you know, what we're going to do moving forward around possible enhancements to REC, it'd be nice if we could have tennis and pickleball separated.
Yeah, and I was hoping actually in our our system, and I'm going to ask if we can do this right now. People don't identify as a pickleball player or a tennis player. So there's no way for me to do that other than to go in and look at the actual court reservations by, you know, looking at such and such who booked a pickleball court and marked them as a pickleball player.
I bet that sounds fun to Eric, no? I'm just kidding. All right, we'll deal with it later.
I do want to point out, though, on all of these facilities, we have a variety of uses usage. And I like to look at it like we're one pretty large community here. You see at the Mark, a little more 84060 than 84098, but still some 84098 usage. It's a flip at the Ice Arena. We have a lot of 84098, but this is one community. And I think the last 20 years have worked really well, operating as one community. We've done a good job working in the basin, working in town. People feel like they're part of Park City to the point that they're confused when when the follies comes out and highlights that they're not. So I just think it's kind of cool. This this shows that we actually are one community and that anything we can do to maintain that going forward, that's what this a lot of this council ran on was that synergy. And I I think that that's that's reflected here. So good info.
Yeah, and I have just said more FYI of spoken with Dana out at the basin and she's will pull their facility zip code breakdown that they have out at the field house. Because I'd be interested to see how many city residents are using that facility.
Do we have this kind of data for our other recreation uses also, like golf or city park reservations or anything like that?
We could pull it for certainly parks reservations where basically where anybody has an account. It would really difficult for field users or anything like that where, you know, renting to the soccer club. I'm not sure on Von's end, but I would think you would have data of certainly people with accounts that you'd be able to.
Yeah, well, and in context, again, not specifically for the budget, but I think we're going to be having that right, that conversation around what we're doing for our residents and taxpayers around recreation specifically, you know, as part of the bigger recreation conversation that'll be coming. So when we when we have that, it would be useful, whatever, you know. I'm not saying it's the number one priority to spend a ton of time on it, but if we can get it, it would be great.
Yeah, and I I was thinking when you mentioned that basin was going to pull their numbers, thinking about why someone would go out to the basin versus being in here. And I can tell you one reason is usually classes, right? Like if I find a yoga class out there that works at my time and it's not at the mark, that might be why I go. But it might be it might also play into this of like, is there something we're missing? it might be, it might also play into this of like, is there something we're missing that the basin is getting most of the people for? Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I think, you know, the good thing of when you look at the mark compared to the, the fieldhouse, is that really they're compatible facilities. Out at the fieldhouse, you obviously have the big indoor turf field, that certainly city residents would go out and use if they're in soccer clubs, lacrosse, birthday parties. We have the court facilities, the tennis facilities. And I think that's, again, why you see in the tennis bookings, that that number of eight four oh nine eight is higher than, you know, people that have passes, facility passes.
Great. So I think we will move forward to Public Works.
So we have multiple requests here. The first one being walkability maintenance of thirty one thousand dollar increase, in addition to the ongoing seventy one thousand. The lion's share of this is for the rail trail from Bonanza, it's going out of town, in addition to increasing some, some services with our contracts for seal coating and some of the maintenance of our trails. So working towards that. The vehicle wash, this is really the bus wash, but we want to, we'll run all vehicles through it. That, the internal components of the bus wash is twelve years old. We want to be able to run not only buses through it, we want to run some of our other police cars and other vehicles through it too. And that's what this request is. We have roughly fifty million dollars of vehicles, so we want to take care of them, and washing them is, is one part of that. The fifteen thousand dollar request for the gate at the mine bench, that is out between building number two and three. We're getting graffiti on some of these old historic mine buildings. We're getting people who are driving down this road down towards the judge tunnel, who really doesn't have a reason to be there. And so we want to put this automatic gate that we can limit who, who comes and goes with vehicles, not necessarily with bikes or on foot, but just with vehicles. The fifty thousand dollars for equipment rolling stock is really just, that's a small amount, and maybe somewhat of a, a just, you know, creates a discussion. Vehicles have gone through the roof in prices. The ability to procure them is becoming very challenging. In addition to, we are moving from these fuel-using gas engines to hybrids. And, and as we go towards electric, they're going to be much more expensive. We didn't ask for a whole lot of money at this point, because we feel that the, the, it's so volatile. We don't know what's going to happen with vehicles. We hope that they actually come back down and stabilize us to a point that we can actually forecast out what is going to cost us over a ten-year, fifteen-year period. But right now, we don't know. So this is a, you know, fifty thousand dollar increase in that. The Santee chair replacement, I do not know a whole lot about, but I believe we're going to reupholster the Santee chairs.
And I can.
Going to replace them?
Yeah, replace. And I can take this for on behalf of our manager, John Widenhammer. In FY twenty-three, we've programmed fifty thousand dollars. And then if you look ahead in the budget, there's also another fifty thousand dollar placeholder. It's not the goal to necessarily expend that, and we would evaluate as we approach that point in time. But we wanted to show some good faith in the plan, that if, if the fifty thousand on our end wasn't enough, we proposed to you the intent to finish it. So we wouldn't like, if the choice costs more than fifty thousand, we have a way to finish the job, because we can't leave these, this unfinished, if that makes sense. And I, I apologize, because I don't have all the context on the partner on the project, but this is our side.
It's a Park City film series, and they have just done an amazing job in getting grant funding. It's, I think it's close to a three hundred thousand dollar project. And so they've gotten not only some, some grant money, but some private money as well to partner with.
Get the restaurant tax gap.
Can I ask why I have the Public Works?
I didn't know where else to put it. Yeah, oh, that's fair. Yeah. Um, IT.
Your Honors, Scott Robertson, Park City IT Department. So our request, biggest one, computer replacement, we have shifted from desktops to laptops. Laptops are more expensive, and they also have a, a shorter life expectancy. So we could do three to five years, maybe on a desk, sorry, four to five years on a desktop, or probably three to four on a laptop. So that's bulk of that request, plus some core infrastructure that we would see in the network, maybe having a five to seven-year life, is now more like a four-year life. It's just a change in the, in the industry. The network and security enhancements, obviously cyber has become a big part of what we do now. And that is equipment necessary to analyze, filter, and process the data that passes through our network.
I think we had one carryover from two weeks ago. Hopefully you're feeling better. While you're here, so I sure hope so, right? Okay. The, it was the Gartner line item in the O and M side of things. And just if you were comfortable moving forward without having that funded, given the major system replacements that we're considering in the next year or so.
Yes, I, I, we can live without it. But I probably will come back and request big in. It does have value, because it's, it should sound like you're alluding to the research that's readily available is so helpful, rather than us as a team trying to figure out what technologies are trending forward, or what we should be investing in. So I'll probably be back next year for another request on that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, with regard to engineering, we have City Engineer John Robertson. And I will preamble a little bit by saying that one of the projects associated with change in the FY twenty-two and twenty-three budgets are this, we've declared, if you will, in addition of this Upper Main Street intersection improvements, that project was always considered as part of the Park Avenue reconstruction effort. But what we've done here is split it out as, as a, to, to make it more transparent, where the money would go in that investment. And then he can, you know, speak about the scope of work and what would actually happen. But this line item itself was previously bucketed within the project called Park Avenue Reconstruction. So this is a net zero change. It's just that we're trying to transparently display the intended work.
Thanks, Eric. Mayor Doyle, council member, John Roberts, the city engineer. Well, you just took thunder from me on that last item, what I was going to talk about. I was just going to kind of reiterate that, if that's okay. The, the one new ask for fiscal year twenty-two, we talked about a little bit in the past, is, is adding some additional funds to the traffic coming fund, which is related to the neighborhood traffic management program. As you know, we are working to do some updates to the program, the policy. We will be coming back to council the twenty-third of July or twenty-first of July, I believe, with kind of an update on the NTMP as it is right now, and the things that have been accomplished, and then also discussing some of the policy changes we're looking to make in the program, and then coming back later this summer or early fall with a full-blown re-change or change in the policy, and renaming of it and some other things. So that's what we're looking for, those funds, the hundred and fifty thousand that we're asking for, a hundred and forty thousand. Then the ten, the original. We're looking for that to help us to be a little bit more flexible, a little bit more, be able to be more proactive as we get complaints about, you know, across a neighborhood. Maybe we can combine some of these complaints into preparing a capital, a smaller capital project that we can go out and address, maybe sidewalks over a longer stretch of way. Currently, we just kind of do updates to signs and things like that. I think the additional funds will allow us to be more proactive in actually addressing larger projects and addressing bigger concerns across a wider range of a area of a neighborhood within a neighborhood. So, and it's really, the, the, they ask in twenty-three is really just part of the, what Eric is explaining.
And then on the subsequent side, I included this just for your review. John is obviously overseeing a significant amount of other large-scale projects. So we've just put those on the subsequent slide to show his existing budgets. These are not new requests outside of the ones he's previously addressed, but we just followed up the, the new requests with the existing plan, if you will, for your visibility. And the reason why, I, I guess I'll speak to one other change. The reason why APA implementation is, is showing, you know, negative is because we would, we zero that out as, in speaking with him, we understand the APA is incorporated into each of the projects now, as opposed to being a separate standalone project. So that was a, just a zero out effectively. Any, what, any questions on this front before we move forward? I can take this in conjunction with the city manager, the Bonanza Park Neighborhood Area. In your reports, you'll still see this project specifically as titled as the Arts and Culture District. That's because it's with, it's in a database that we didn't have time to edit. But in the future, we'll change the project name to Bonanza Park Neighborhood Area. The, the changes with respect to this project will look a little bit strange. If you look at the full budget report, you'll probably see a minus six million for item number. Just to explain that, that's because we had been planning on a sale of assets to the partners in understanding that that wasn't going to occur in FY twenty-two. We've just adjusted that to zero. It doesn't mean that we can't add it back in in the future, but for the moment, we just zeroed that line out. So in your full report, you'll see a minus six million. That's not money that's going away. It's just money that never happened, if that makes sense. And then in, in FY twenty-three, a request of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from TRT for potential consultancy and work on the site.
So I will say, it's fine if we don't want to call it arts and culture, but I did just think it was interesting in the packet, when we call it the Bonanza Park Neighborhood Area. Again, I think we're maybe setting a different expectation. And so maybe we just call it Bonanza Park and take out the neighborhood area or something, because I also think in the packet, when it says, you know, on like, on the staff report, I think it's on page twenty-one, it says, you know, the most talked about major capital, some of the most talked about major capital project ideas are, one, Bonanza Park Neighborhood Area. It says parking, housing, transportation, and transit. And I think that we are neglecting the fact that actually the money was dedicated towards that call for arts and culture infrastructure, and that's not mentioned anywhere. So, okay, if we don't want to talk about the arts and culture district, I think we need to make sure that there was still that call out towards arts and culture investment, and not let that go completely. Just, I think it's important that it's still in there, and we're not just saying, okay, that's, that's gone.
And one thing, this, I should note that this is the only revenue that is not fully programmed in fiscal year twenty-three. So we do reference in the staff report, the original intent of the revenue adoption that cites arts and culture as the intent of the council at the time. That's associated with a discussion of TRT. So we do recognize that. It just is perhaps not in the area you might have expected, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, as we, as we kind of go through the whole Bonanza Park area, and we have this conversation, right, there, it's going to keep coming up. How do, what do we call this zone and all that stuff? But I think it's pretty important not to forget that we spent a fortune on it, and that was sort of the foundational reason behind spending that much money. And anybody that was a part of that would probably be pretty frustrated if we don't have art and culture in there somewhere. So I definitely support keeping that as at least a lens that we're looking through always when we're discussing this property.
And can I ask, so I know, you know, we're paying back our bond on it, but I think on one of the earlier slides, we have, you label it free money, but there's like one point two million that's just accumulating every year or something.
So.
That additional money to make it safe. What, does it just kind of sit? I know we, I asked you, I think I asked you this, we're not allowed to like invest it in like the stock market, right? It just kind of hangs out there and.
It just accrues to the bottom line of the capital fund balance. Yes, correct. And so the last time we made an estimate of this revenue specifically relative to its expenses, I think, I mean, we would have to refresh a specific analysis on this one revenue, but it was in the range of four to six million that had accrued to the bottom line of the capital fund. But yes, also correct, the, the first thing that happens when the, if TRT comes in at two point seven million dollars a year, the first thing that happens is we pay the debt service on the bond that was used to purchase the land. Then we're left over with one to one point four million dollars. And that has the capacity to go toward cash projects right now. And we're not proposing any further debt service on it, although that is a tool you could use in the future, again, if you wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to mention too, that we do invest the cash that we have on hand, but through the state, just.
Yeah, they're going into short-duration money market funds that are extremely low risk and currently relatively low yield, but they can't go into the stock market.
It just seems like.
Okay, I think the next section is fairly robust, so I'll kick it to Kim and Julia to discuss transportation. And we have some small incremental project requests, and then we, of course, have the large new requests that we will get deeper into right now.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kim Felstead. I am the Park City Transit Manager. So over here on our left, I'll just start going down that column. See the scheduling software from fiscal year twenty-two. That was, as you might recall, those that were on the council at the time, the Optibus and makeshift software. We were scheduling software for operators in Excel, and we've really come a long way with these two programs. So it's been very efficient for us, and the operators have appreciated it. We also have the transit ABL system. We had to go to five G on our ABL system that's what handles all the technology on the transit bus. So the ridership counts, the camera systems, you know, the GPS. So that was a huge transition that we did accomplish. And the parking equipment replacement, I don't know if Johnny's on the line to speak to his parking items.
On the, there's two items in here, parking equipment replacement and China Bridge improvements. These are just incremental sort of maintenance initiatives for, under the supervision of the parking manager. Unfortunately, I don't have more detail than, than that at the moment, but we could come back if you would like more.
Okay. And then the transit expansion you see here, this is part of the fifteen bus purchase, but it is separated in the budget by rolling stock replacement, where we're actually going to retire a bus. And then expansion would be in this category. So obviously, the majority are replacements, but we did get some permission for expansion buses from UDOT. So we plan on taking them up on that. And then we have China Bridge Improvements, I think you pretty much spoke to that already, and the deck coating replacement, that's all parking. And then the bus lift, we thought we were going to hopefully get a grant for that, to get Troy and his folks a bus lift to help with maintenance. And that did not come through for us, unfortunately.
And I think you have one more in FY twenty-three, Kim.
Oh, sorry, the emergency response. I thought you wanted to talk about that, because it's really exciting. Okay, what this is, you know, initially, we were thinking we might be at Quinns providing service, and they don't have any facilities for the operators. And so an emergency response trailer, I've had the privilege of having one in operations before, and I've also had operations where I haven't had one, and it's much better with one. Because you can set up your operations basically anywhere to deploy your employees if needed. So if you have major state of good repair, construction going on, you can move your operation and still keep things running. Or if you have a situation like bridges and flats, and say you're going to be running service there, and it would become an end of line for the operators, there's no facilities out there. So for them to be able to go in and have a kitchen area and a restroom is huge, as far as their morale and the support, and how we can actually schedule the work to be efficient. So that's what it's for, and it will come in handy for any emergencies as well.
Thanks, Kim. Julia Collins, Transportation Planning Manager. Before I go through the details, just a quick high level, our transportation fund programming. Before I go through the details, just a quick high level, our transportation fund programming is currently our strategy is based on state of good repair, transit operations. And then we shift to looking really at grants to advance our transit cap, our transportation capital program. And we use the transportation fund for leveraging a lot of match on local grants. And then obviously we have our major investments, we kind of see a big, major capital investment every year or so coming as well out of the fund. So we already talked a little about the two forty eight corridor and why this money is coming through and being added to the budget right now. I want to actually lump the Old Town Complete Streets and the Active Transportation Master Plan together. Park City Forward, our long range transportation master plan is coming to a close. And what that looks like is it's identified active transportation and Old Town Complete Streets as major priorities and and areas of interest. And so the Old Town Complete Streets funding is coming through the third quarter cog grant. And this has essentially, we're bringing this into our fund. We intend on using this money as a way to implement that Park City Forward plan. It is tied to active transportation, bike and pedestrian infrastructure. And, you know, historically, we've been working on the Park Ave and Upper Main Street. And this, this will kind of help us identify that next round of priority projects. And then the Active Transportation Master Plan. We received a grant from the UDOT Department of Transportation. This is a planning, see, I'm gonna, the acronym is Planning Transportation Funds in the amount of $80,000. We started that plan in 2020. We did have some staff turnover and we also paused due to COVID. And as part of that, we recognized that, you know, we needed to do more outreach. This community is extremely excited about active, about biking and walking. They want to be heavily engaged and we want to make sure that we give them multiple opportunities and touch points to be participants in this plan. So we had previously hired a consultant that was out of state in order for us to kick this plan off again and really elaborate on our public engagement and move it again, move it forward and meet the requirements of the grant. We are requesting additional funding, which we're estimating this will be necessary to complete. And we may roll the Old Town Complete Streets. Again, this will identify more funding and more projects. We may roll that into the bike and pedestrian master plan. Emerging Technology in Transit, this is another Utah Department of Transportation grant that we were awarded in the amount of $80,000. This will enable us to look at transit technologies, emerging innovations, and how we could incorporate that either along our gateway corridors or other areas that we're looking to enhance and expand either dedicated bus lanes or bus queue jumps or just maybe there's other technologies that are signals, but this will allow us to do the plan to identify what technologies would essentially work in Park City. Another grant, are you shocked? McPolan and Meadows Bus Stop, we received a Transportation Alternatives Program grant from UDOT in the amount of, I think, just under $40,000 to construct two bus stops. This is the first of our local resident, you know, kind of local community bus stops that we're going to start working on advancing in the next three years. You'll see a lot more of these opportunities coming before you. And this is the first. And so for us to pull that money in and also match it and then do the construction, we need to pull this into our budget. And then we've got one more. Thank you. So as we look to 100% conversion, fleet conversion to electrification, especially in the transit realm. You know, we need to be thinking about what those technologies are and how they integrate, how we're doing our charging, how we're planning on operations. And we've really just begun to understand this. And I think that looking comprehensively at this effort through a transition plan. And Kim, isn't there also a federal, federal requirement for this as well? I'm going to kind of hand this off to you to speak to that.
Yes, I had spoke with council before about the new requirement to have a plan like this in order to apply for grant monies going forward. And we did do an initial phase to meet that requirement. But it's an ongoing document and, you know, we need to be able to tweak it as we learn and grow. And so this would be setting aside some money for us to do that if that was needed.
And I'll take this one as well. So we applied again for grants through Utah Department of Transportation. And so we're in the running for this. The awards would be next spring. And what this parking assessment would do is it would look at our needs for how many offsite parking stalls we would need along our gateway corridors. And it would also highlight parking management opportunities and potential policies throughout the city. We wanted to put it in the budget now in case we do obtain and receive that grant, but we're not planning on doing that work until potentially, you know, later on in next calendar year. So can I take this up? Okay. All right. So I am just thrilled to share this news with you. We have received $5.5 million for our transportation capital program. And this is coming to us from the Utah Department of Transportation. This is a relatively new funding source. It's their Transportation Improvement Fund. It's part of their general fund. And the exciting thing is it's going towards transit. It's going towards biking and walking. And so we have been really aggressive. We actually applied for over $12 million and, you know, this for us to see that type of return on our grants is just very exciting. So we have three projects. The first one is the Snow Creek Crossing that we will, in our next couple of slides, discuss with you. And then our Kearns and Bonanza Transit Connections. So as the Bonanza Park District moves forward, we recognize that we need better accessibility, enhanced pathways, connections, transit amenities and transit shelters along that area of Kearns, two forty eight, and also along Bonanza. And so this funding will give us the opportunity to move forward with those two, those two connections. And lastly, we have a top ten transit stop improvement list. This came out of JTab. It also came out of another bus stop assessment program that we looked at on a variety of factors. So Prospector Condos is on that list. But this grant also includes crosswalks and some sidewalk improvements for the Prospector Square area that I know that they've been looking for as well. And so it'll be used to advance those critical connections. And so I believe we've included both the local match and the grants in this year's budget cycle as well. So with that, I think we're going to transition to the Snow Creek Crossing.
Yeah, and this, what you'll see right here is a recap. I think the key highlight is that when we originally put this tentative budget together, the UDOT grant was hypothetical. That's not hypothetical anymore. So that's confidence instilling in the sense that the revenue is available to deploy on this project. The one thing that is worth is potentially will all tee up, but John will also expand on, is that the tentative budget does contemplate utilizing funding from the transportation fund at 4.6 million dollars in order to get to a project level of fourteen. So this is all just reflective of the tentative budget. What we are hoping for is some, is potential guidance from the council on if you're heading in a certain direction, it would be great to let us know so we could adjust for a final budget. You also have the option, well, I'll get, I'll let John talk. You'll see some options and we can go from there.
So at the, at the last council meeting, when we talked about Snow Creek, there was a discussion to have us bring some breakdown of cost for the three options that we had talked about. One being the single tunnel or two tunnels or the three tunnels, which was presented. The cost for the three tunnels had been shown to you at the meeting. But we didn't have good breakdowns for the other two. I had rough numbers, but not good breakdowns. So the, the amount for the tunnel with just one tunnel underneath two forty eight was, is right about 9.3 million dollars. The 10 million is, and that's, that's 2023 numbers. So excuse me. So the numbers shown here are 2023 and 2024. So the high end are the 2024 numbers. The increase is based on 12% increase in costs, materials, labors, et cetera. So that's why we have a if we delay it out, it's that's the increase in cost over time. The double tunnel option, which would be a tunnel underneath two forty eight, the tunnel underneath the driveway entrance into the businesses to the south ranged from 11 million to 13 million, and the three tunnel option was 14 to 16 million dollars. And so those were the three breakdowns. Those are good estimates that we, we had the consultant go in and he gave us good numbers on, it wasn't just percentages for costs of their design costs. They gave us what their design costs would be and their construction costs also, or construction management costs also. So those were good solid numbers that they provided to us. And those are the three options that you had, three ranges in costs, I should say, that they that you had asked for and requested.
And I wanted to note as well that at the end of your presentation, John actually provided detailed cost estimates for each of these scenarios. So we won't force you to go through them and look at them in the meeting, but they are in the presentation that should have been distributed to you at the, in the appendix. So think, thinking about the, as we head toward the final budget, Jed and myself were just thinking about what paths could potentially be followed. And certainly we could just not budget for this project and, and that would be sort of a statement of you know, don't budget for it, don't do it. And if we, if we don't plan to do it at all, that UDOT money would be lost. Another potential scenario would be budget for the full amount, but then execute on the basis of the cost constraints that you review as you go. Or if, if the council has an amount or scenario in their mind that there's consensus on, we'd be happy to reflect that as well. But curious if there's any sentiment to guide us as we head toward the final budget.
I mean, it does sound like we have the opportunity to do all three and potentially get some economies of scale and not end up in a situation 10 to 15 years down the road where we're interested in adding another tunnel, but at that point in time, they're far more expensive or you'd have to dig up the roads again and do all of that. So I, I'm comfortable with moving forward with all three.
Apologies for interrupting the conversation as well. I know, I just would cite that any reduction in transportation fund balance today is less flexibility for future projects. So it's not, not trying to influence any direction, just to keep that in mind.
And with saying that, Eric, I think at the very end of our city council meeting today, we will, we will find out we have about a $30 million gap in the, in what the capital improvements would be for the long range transit plan. So if we were to take the five, almost five million from this project and use it towards some of that, that would help us with that gap of 30 million. Is that right?
Correct. That, that's the, I believe it's the five year window of the long range transportation capital plan.
Five, yes. So if we're looking at number one, option one, nine to 10 million, that's pretty much covered correct by grants and we wouldn't, it would just be a small in a walkability bond. Yeah. So that, and then number two would be us putting in about two to, two to three, and number three is us putting in four to six. Okay.
With the walkability bond could be allocated to other walk projects, couldn't it?
Yep, that's right.
Yeah. So really the locked in money here is the bond money, which is like four and a half. The rest of it, you know, there's conditions around its use perhaps, but it's not necessarily locked into this project.
I was just going to mention, Julia just whispered in my ear that the UDOT money could be reprogrammed if we went back and
It, it's a process. I mean, this is Julia, Julia Collins, Transportation Planning Manager. You know, I just don't want to put it would be lost. You know, we, we definitely, there was a letter from the mayor to the Transportation Commission, which you know, is essentially the board that UDOT reports to about how Snow Creek Crossing is the community priority and how we heard from the Walk Committee or the Walkability Committee that this is their current priority. So we did go to them and say, this is where we, we really would like that money. And, and actually originally, we only asked for 2.5 million. We have four projects in the application process. And they may have awarded to another one of those. And we actually said, you know, this is a really big investment the city is making. Is there any chance, you know, with construction costs that you would be willing to give us more money? And so they actually ended up giving us 3.5 million. So we would, we would go back to them, appeal to them, they would re, you know, they would reconsider. They, you know, it, it's not, I don't want to say it would be lost and, and without us trying to pursue other avenues and have it reallocated to a different priority.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anyone's going there.
Okay, all right.
Can it, can you, can you remind me, if we do two tunnels, it's which ones again?
Eleven to thirteen, that's the eleven.
It's under and
Two twenty four. Twenty four, and then that driveway on the south side faces the, into the movie theater parking lot. On Snow Creek, under Snow Creek, correct.
Yeah, John, I wanted to ask about that too, if I could. Isn't there more traffic going to the driveway at the north to the market? Why would we do two tunnels and do Holiday Village? Or am I wrong?
No, you're, you're correct. There, there's, I think what it had to do with was the access and getting into the tunnel under two forty eight. We have a little bit more room on the north side to put in some some ramps and other things to get down to it. That provides a little bit more flexibility. The one on the south side with what we were proposing allows that the traffic, I'm sorry, the, the the bikes and the pets to just go straight down and go underneath a ramp that doesn't require a lot of excessive ride away. So that's why we were leaning more towards that one first.
We, when we looked at this in the last week or so, whenever it was, there were some variations that, you know, we potentially consider depending on how we want to move forward, right, on both sides of the street. So you know, I, to, to finish the earlier thought, I mean, I don't personally feel like we have the data or see a lot of value on the Doubletree side of the street in putting a tunnel across an entrance to a parking lot. I think the big opportunity would be to get across two forty eight. And then if it makes sense based on the final design to also address the Snow Creek Drive Crossing, which we do have data that shows that it is more of a problem. Then so be it, but we don't have any of that information quite yet. We're also looking at surface crossing improvements there at, you know, on both sides of Kearns. And at the intersection of two forty eight and two twenty four, right? And we don't necessarily have that data yet.
Well, we, we've had conversations with UDOT. And in the two forty eight corridor study, I think Julia left, she's still here. There was discussion during that meeting with them and during that process where they evaluated different options and I'll have to defer to Julia exactly what was talked about at those locations. We did do some analysis of crossings at two, of Snow Creek and two forty eight. Where some analysis being we looked at some signalized crossings and some other things at that location, and they weren't favorable from the standpoint of the impact to traffic and the slowing down of that corridor as people cross to stop. It would have to be like a hawk crossing of some kind like that. And there, so there were some challenges to those. So we didn't go to the point of of finalizing cost estimates on those things, but we did some preliminary analysis on those things.
So, well, and that's just the, the point. Go ahead.
Well, so, so my recommendation, I'm going to lean in here. I don't know if you're going to like this one, but I think the intent here. You know, what, what might be the most efficient would be, you know, from a staff perspective, you know, I think we'd recommend this point that you award the maximum budget, which just gives us headroom to come back with a very specific work session to your point, Councilmember Rubo, about what are the options? What is the engineering state, the cost estimates? So you're providing us the headroom, but no allocations will be made. And by not choosing option number one, there's no project that we're missing out on in the meantime. So really it's you know, the authorization to, to provide the maximum headroom for us to continue to explore all the options. But we've got to come back with a, a serious work session before we actually make any allocations to the tune of nine or 14 million dollars, whatever that spread is where we end up.
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree with that, but with the caveat that I, you know, I actually don't see a lot of economies of scale here. The, the increase from one to two is two, two to three million and from two to three is three to three million. So I would be comfortable with the budgeting the 13 million that's presented. And then using that as the springboard for the conversation you just described. And if it turns out that that's a terrible idea and we need to find some more money, we do have other revenue sources. I, I feel like right now allocating 16 million to this is, is I I feel like right now allocating sixteen million to this is is over allocating based on the conversations we've had.
I actually agree with you because I I thought we were at fourteen and then to see fourteen to sixteen, that's that means we would be going. That's that's a lot more.
So the tentative budget is fourteen point two one seven. What John is presenting is a cost estimate. We we can, if it if it's the situation that we're going to revisit this in practice and actually plan it out. I would propose that we just fix it at thirteen. And then know that there will be detailed discussions for the sake of efficiency, not for the sake of the intent of the
Okay, I can be on board with that.
I'd be fine with it.
Yeah, I'll just I'll say I actually agree with this conversation in its entirety. I think that thirteen million dollars, you know, as a reference is a good way to start. We already had a conversation about how we're going to be looking for money for a whole slew of other things. We do have this thirty million dollar gap that we're going to have to figure out at some point. And I think this is just one piece in a very large puzzle that we're going to have to start figuring out. And this is a long term project. One way or the other. That said, getting across two forty eight for people who live on that other side of the road, the north side of the road is absolutely critical for this community. It is a connectivity problem. It's a safety problem. And we absolutely have to keep our pedal to the metal on this particular project because th- this is the piece that has come up for the longest period of time in terms of walkability and bikeability and safety for the neighborhoods on the north side to get to our main commercial districts in Park City. So this is a high, high priority Walk Committee has said so over and over and over again. So getting this connection done is critical. There is definitely a conversation to be had about how much it's worth to get across a driveway that goes into a parking lot. When there are fifteen more driveways along that side of the road. So that's that's definitely a worthwhile conversation to be had. And how we connect to the rest of, you know, all those walkability pieces that we have in place. And Julian, you've done a great job of highlighting those. We there's no panacea here, but we got to get people across that road safely.
I just really want to compliment you, Julia, because I understand you write the bulk of these grants that are funding so much of what we're doing and you do the grant management and the reporting on them. So thank you for that. Because that's that's really a heavy lift and I appreciate that.
Your honor.
I was just gonna say, thank you.
Thank you.
I can't take all the credit. We have an awesome team to to support these grants. And then we occasionally will also outsource grants when, you know, we don't always have the capacity to do such. So thank you for the support to enable our multifaceted approach and it's obviously being quite fruitful. So.
I was just gonna say, we're we're over time. We had a housing discussion and water. We can come back next week. I I don't want to take up other people's time if that works because we if 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 the mayor and council are open to that, we can keep going. We probably have another fifteen, twenty minutes.
Probably twenty minutes more.
Maybe we could add that next week if that's okay with you because hopefully, we're going to have a something new and unusual tonight, and we're going to actually have public input on the budget, which has never happened before. So I'm going to thank you for coming back next week. I think we had a great discussion tonight and appreciate all the work that you put into leading this discussion. So I am going to open for public input. If there's anyone here in the chambers or online, if you're online, joining us, welcome. Please raise your hand. And if you're in the chambers and would like to comment on the budget, please come forward. Oh, come on. Okay, anybody online that wants this? Oh, yay, thank you.
All right, sorry. Here we go. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me. My name is Jocelyn Scudder. I'm the Executive Director of the Arts Council for Park City and Summit County. And we support promote and strengthen arts and culture throughout Park City and Summit County. But I'm here tonight to advocate for investment in arts and culture infrastructure, specifically in regards to the Arts and Culture District or now named the Bonanza Park Neighborhood Area. Park City has made significant investments in recreation facilities like the Mark, the Ice Arena, tennis courts, maybe even pickleball courts in future, in addition to massive investments in open space and trails, all of which have critically improved the quality of life in our town. But we still have not made similar investments in our arts and culture services. It really hasn't been given the same stake in the ground as other community and council priorities. Many of you hopefully remember the Project ABC cultural planning process that we did back in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. Tons of work went into this. We worked with government leaders, community members, residents, philanthropists, local business owners, nonprofits, and even the resorts. There was so much energy surrounding investment for the future of local arts and culture during this time. The value of arts and culture was also being broadly recognized finally throughout the community. And then so around the same time, it was really exciting to see Park City step up and react to this energy with the approval of a TRT transient room tax to be allocated for an arts and culture district in the Bonanza Park area, which helps secure a parcel of land that would be used for the future home of Sundance, Kimball, along with housing, transportation, additional cultural assets. The twenty seventeen staff report that's linked in tonight's agenda packet shows that arts and culture was a real catalyst for the TRT. Using it for arts and culture infrastructure was explicit and intentional. And it was a big win for our arts and culture community. We felt really good. I also noticed that in the agenda packet, and I know we've already discussed this a little bit, that the name of this district has apparently changed to Bonanza Park Neighborhood Area. The words art and culture have been completely removed. And I'm personally questioning why this happened without community discussion. After all, arts and culture is the main reason Park City decided to purchase this land in the first place to control the content of this area, to make it a space for community connection, a space where the arts can thrive. Let's fast forward to Park City's Vision twenty twenty process. Support for arts and culture felt really secure at this time, especially with government. The Arts and Culture District Development Planning was in progress and underway. I believe this is why arts and culture ranked lower than other community priorities at this time. We felt like we were already making progress in this priority. It felt safe. Now, I do want to acknowledge that I've heard, first of all, that you're having really constructive and positive conversations with Kimball and Sundance about moving forward with their buildings in the Bonanza Park area, which is wonderful. And we do see some investment in arts and culture reflected in this year's budget. We see a robust public art budget and which is, we love to see it. And support for improvements in the Santee, which is long overdue, and I'm wholeheartedly in support of all of these. It's all wonderful. We appreciate it. But in the end, it's not the level of investment in arts and culture infrastructure that was previously committed by Park City Municipal or the previous council. Collectively, our community asks for investment in cultural facilities, community spaces where people can gather, work, express themselves, and connect through shared experiences. We have data driven information that supports arts and culture development. And we are also willing to do the work to ensure that it's all still relevant today. Through our job, through my job, I hear it all the time. I work with residents, artists, makers, nonprofit leaders every day. I know that this is still a community priority. Arts and culture is a vital part of our Park City identity. And we have an existing funding mechanism in place to support arts and culture development. Now, I know that you've bonded against the TRT to fund the purchase of the Bonanza Park area, but it's growing every year. So this is exciting. We're really excited to hear about this and to just know that the cities is committed to this funding. And we really can't wait to hear direction and ideas from all of you, especially new voices on council to learn about how you are interested in supporting this community priority. I look forward to working with you all individually to put energy back into the arts and culture conversation and make some collective process progress, specifically in capital investments. In closing, I invite all of you to interact with some of the amazing arts and culture programming coming up to meet and hear from many of the local residents, artists, creatives, staff and board members of local arts organizations to really see the impressive impact that these shared creative experiences have in our community. The Monster Drawing Rally is this Saturday, June eleventh from three to six P M. Kids and adults are welcome. It's a really fun live art making party in a parking lot at the Kimmel Art Center. Please join us. The Latino Arts Festival is coming up June twentieth through twenty sixth, thanks to partial support from Park City Municipal through a diversity, equity, inclusion, special service grant. Thanks so much for that support. With that support, we've been able to program a full week of music, food, poetry, folkloric dance, visual art. It's going to be an amazing week. We hope you can join us. That's all I have for today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jocelyn. And thank you for being the first comment this year on the budget. We appreciate that. Lynn, welcome.
Hi, Lynn Ware Peak. Twenty year Park Meadows resident. And I was just going to get up and give comment because no one ever does during these budget discussions. And then Jocelyn talked and then I thought I'm going to give comment anyway. I I just want to give wholehearted support for whatever option you end up with on the the tunnels as a as a Park Meadows resident. I and my kids have so many times looked for where to cross. And it's so dangerous. And, you know, the market is my market. And I've been known to go to the liquor store from time to time and then pulling out on two forty eight, you're you literally see people taking their lives in their hands, both on, you know, on bike, on foot and in cars. You see people flying out of there just hoping they can make it before they get run down. And so, you know, I it's a you dot thing, of course. I I love the idea of a roundabout right there at Snow Creek, but let's take care of the pedestrians and the and the cyclists first and yeah, wholehearted support for that. And I I know our great team here will come up with the right.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else here? Do we have any hands up online?
No hands raised, ma'am.
Okay. Then let's thank you so much to the budget team and all the department managers that that spoke with us tonight. Let's move on then. Like five minutes. Two minutes. Okay. We have a request for a very quick break here as we're changing out. So. Please. Thank you. Okay, let's talk about trails and open space.
One second, Your Honor, I'm gonna pull up my PowerPoint. Thank you, Your Honor and Council, Heinrich Dieter's Trails and Open Space Manager for Park City Municipal. It is speaking to it a little more. Okay. So in your packet tonight, page thirty eight, we've prepared sort of an overview, historical overview of the Trails and Open Space Department, as well as an update from twenty twenty two. And so if Your Honor, if you're okay, what I'd like to do is invite some of our stakeholders to the table as we go through some of this stuff.
Awesome.
Okay.
Great.
Great. I did want to note in my in my program notes here that Logan and Jimmy and the Rangers are actually out in the field pulling Dyers Woad at the moment and some other things. So I gave them the night off if that's okay with you guys.
That's great.
Okay. So I'm going to spend just a moment on a quick overview of 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 our department. I've been in the position for fifteen years. And so the Trails and Open Space Department is a little different from your typical Trails and Open Space Department. So whether it's a rec district, similar to Snyderville Basin Recreation District or say Blaine County, a lot of you were up in Ketchum this this past year or Boulder. We're a very small group of two, Logan and myself, and then council through their benevolence has actually helped us pick up a couple additional resources in the form of Rangers. But but we do not have like a trail team. We don't have a Parks crew that goes out and maintains and builds our trails, which is a little different than most most of our pure communities. What's important about that is we rely on our stakeholders, a lot of the people behind us to help provide not only the 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 outreach for the for the public, whether it be etiquette and education, but also for the maintenance aspects associated with sort of Mountain Trails Foundation. So you know, what you are going to hear this evening is just a collective sort of community voice associated with how we move trails and open space forward. Oh, I did want to note associated with that. I want to thank Dana. Dana, thank you very much. It's been great. You know, traditionally, we haven't, I haven't necessarily had a Trails and Open Space liaison. We've had liaisons to our different nonprofits, whether it be some land conservation center. But we haven't had that in the past. So I just want to thank you. I think it's a great opportunity for my department and this council to move forward with a lot of the discussions. Dana, you want to come up?
So I want to introduce Dana Jones. Dana Jones is the Executive Director of Snyder Old Basin Recreation District. And so we coordinate, we meet monthly and we coordinate on infrastructure, planning, efficiency and safety and and in a large part now how we can mitigate neighborhood impacts. So a lot of the issues that we have and some of our neighborhood trailheads Dana is very familiar with and their trailheads. They are about a year ahead of us in the Ranger Program, which the slide is actually identifying. But a point I wanted to make and that I pointed out in the staff report that this isn't just a Park City issue. You know, this is something that whether you're at our national parks or state parks in the area, or even our different trail communities, they're feeling the same sort of growth of recreational use now, whether that was from COVID or I believe in Utah, it's the large influx of people that are moving to our community because it's a wonderful place to live and the trails and open space provide that aspect. But I want to speak a little bit to the Ranger Programs that we have and some of those projects are outlined, whether it's the public outreach, the infrastructure that we provide to mitigate for those things, our our Transit to Trailhead program, or maybe even some future aspects that I'd like some discussion at least from council on a possible commercial policy that 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 we try to mitigate and try to preserve specifically our older trailheads that are in some of these, you know, you know, Round Valley Way is a great example of that. You know, Round Valley was the edge of the earth in the early nineties, if you will. So when we developed a trailhead in that that area, it was not the middle of like a neighborhood. I know because I was there actually. You know, there was a handful of homes that were there in the in the early nineties and now it's fully built out. And the use associated with some of those can be
And the use associated with some of those can be, um, very impactful for those neighbors. So, um, we are creating and have created a Ranger program. But I'd like to kick it over to Dana, let her give a little bit of her input on how we're coordinating and how her Ranger team works.
Thank you, Council members, for, uh, having us here today. And, and thanks to Heinrich for inviting Basin to come and, and talk. Heinrich mentioned that we are, we meet regularly and, and really for the public. The public in general does not care if they are on a Park City trail or a Snyderville Basin trail. The public wants trails. And so it's really critical that we all work together to make sure that we can give the public those trails that they need and not have, um, not have there be, you know, problems and divisiveness and, and the public doesn't need to see that. They just need to see the trails. And I think that the neighborhoods that we're dealing with, um, it's difficult. Like Heinrich said, you know, years ago, um, that was what you call the end of the earth. And so, um, as the trails system continues to grow, as the city and the county and the residences and the neighborhoods continue to grow, we're going to continue to see these kinds of things happening. I've been with the Basin Recreation District for about a year and a half now. And when I first started is when we hired the first Ranger, um, in our district. And if you talk to some of the neighbors in some of the neighborhoods that we're dealing with the same issues that the city's dealing with, they still have some issues and they'll still complain. But when you ask them, is it better? They all say it's better. And they've really gotten to know, um, the first Ranger we hired was Ranger Ben, um, Ben Pearson. He's done an awesome job of just being out there. And when you think of Ranger, we're not hiring someone, um, to do law enforcement per se. We're hiring someone to do education because we want to educate the public because we believe that if the public knows what they're supposed to do, they're going to do it. And that's really what we found. Um, Ben, our Ranger, does have the ability to write, um, parking tickets. And, but what he'll do first is he'll write a warning. And what we found is he writes very, very few parking tickets because that, either that personal contact with the people, letting them know, or that word, that written warning seems to give the people the education. Therefore, we don't have to move on to the, to the, the enforcement part of it. So I would have to say that probably 90% of what our Rangers do is education and, and just that, that one-on-one talking to people, you know, letting them know what's going on, why we're doing what we're doing and what we're doing moving forward. So with that one Ranger, we started, um, we now actually have, um, two full-time Rangers and a seasonal that just started. So we've got three Rangers out there right now, covering our areas, talking to people, just making sure that people understand what we're doing. And we're really looking at even expanding the program even more and maybe doing a lot more education and like, I want to call it formal education or interpretation. And maybe even being able to go out into the schools and talk to them about, you know, the environment and, uh, stream, streams and beavers and fish. And because those kids will go home and they'll tell their parents. And that, that whole thing just, it bleeds up and it's going to, it's going to provide just a much better experience for everybody. So we have a lot of hopes for that program. We, we think it's going someplace. And we share this information every month. And I, and I know Park City is, is doing the same thing. So it's great to see.
Quick question on the Ranger program. Because we said, we had the slide just before in the budget presentation about the trail users, like for Bloods Lake Trail. And it, it was mostly not Park City. Right? It was mostly outside of even the basin. I think it was Salt Lake was a third of them or something. It was a high number. So how do we measure effectiveness of that? Also seeing on there that a lot of the trail users are from out of area. So, you know, maybe they get a warning, but they're also here for one day. And, you know, so I, I struggle with that a little.
So I couldn't ask for a better segue. Thank you, Jeremy.
You got it. Here for you.
So one thing that we're really proud of, and I'd like to thank the chamber, uh, who are offering sustainable tourism grants. So, um, at our last meeting, monthly meeting with, with Snyderville Basin and Laura's in the audience with Mountain Trails and ourselves, we collectively decided how we would take a, um, a public outreach, program and grant process to the chamber in which we can reach much further in our messaging. So, you know, the idea of the messaging is to get to, to users before they actually plan their, their trip someplace. And so I used the term no before you go, but I realized from Ranger Jimmy, who works for, um, the Avalanche Center, that that's already used. Uh, and then, uh, Linda, uh, head of our comms team said, how about no before you roll? And I actually thought, it's in my slide tonight. No one's really seen that. But I thought it was a really cool, cool aspect and it's something. And so, so getting to the point, um, you know, Mountain Trails is, is looking for a chamber grant where we can develop one website where we are going to drive all the traffic. And the content, whether it be Mountain Trails contact, city content, Snyderville Basin content, that information goes there from trail conditions to, to trail closures to, hey, you're going to get a ticket here, um, aspect. And if we can control that narrative when people are in their planning aspect of their trails, we can provide them information that, don't go to Bloods Lake. A Bloods Lake option is this. Oh, the peak times from the data that we're gathering for this trail is this. Did you know that this is an off-leash area? And this is where you'll get a ticket if your dog's off-leash. And so I think that's what you're getting at associated is we're taking all of that data and we're all going to work on Mountain Trails doing the website, Snyderville Basin providing content. The city is also put in two grants. One is for the trailhead webcams where it takes a picture of three trailheads, Bloods, um, Bonanza Flat and Mid Mountain, which obviously are geographically separated from the city. So people can see before they leave Lehigh or wherever that, hey, the trailhead's full. Don't even go up there right now. And then also another $30,000 for just content. And so on the slide here is, um, right before COVID in partnership with the basin, we did a wayfinding educational video. And that's Matt Wagoneer. He's not here this evening, but he works for Dana. Basically trying to get people like, watch this video. This is what the dots meet, Becca. I think you've asked me that one before. This is how it corresponds to the wayfinding. Unfortunately, some of those efforts were sort of derailed with COVID, but we want to pick those aspects up and, and it couldn't be more important to actually provide that information now. So Jeremy, did that answer your question?
And can I just add, um, I'm super happy to be your liaison, but I'm also the liaison to 13 other groups as well. And one of the things that I am finding is the best part of that is making sure that each of those groups knows what other groups are doing. And so I think this is a great program and I, I hope that you do presentations to lodging and HPCA and restaurant and maybe every concierge, a big event where they all know this. But, um, getting it in the hands of people who are coming here and would have no idea that this existed, um, I think is, is key to this.
Thanks, Dana. We had a text chain with Rick, Laura, myself and a few people about an interaction in a coffee shop before our meeting this morning and how the trail information was disseminated. And we're like, we need stuff in coffee shops and hotels and concierge. So thank you. Great idea. I did have one more specific request to this. Dana and her team have started to explore a commercial policy on the trails. And I'd like Counsel direction or support, if you will, to explore that and, and give just two seconds to give a little bit of background. At the highest level, I think if we had a commercial policy associated with our trail system, we could identify trailheads where commercial use takes place. And so to find commercial use, I don't think it's one person going on a hike with one person. I think it's a tour company dropping off people of 10, like in areas, which we do know. And we can actually identify trailheads where it is veableton, if you will. And if we have actually a, a policy, um, in place where maybe they have to get a Park City business license to operate, we could either pull that operating license, um, associated with that, or we at least have contact information. And I think that along with a couple of other mechanisms, and it's not there to make money. It's not there to, um, you know, like overly, um, impose or regulate like the users. But one thing that we heard even going all the way back to like the off-leash dog discussion back in 2014 or so, it was, you know, that some of the commercial groups, uh, that at that time it was the dog walkers are really impacting some of the neighborhoods. And so I'm not targeting one extra use. I just think we should discuss it and bring it back to Counsel and have that discussion in public.
Counsel, ready?
I just have a question on that. Um, as I just mentioned, talking to the Lodging Association, are you talking about shuttles dropping people off from hotels as well?
I think it needs to be defined, Anna. You know, we want to obviously support alternative transportation and get the messages to the right place to them. But that might be something that is, do we need to drop 15 people off at the top of Iron Mountain? Me personally, I'll step out. No, we don't. But, um, it's, it needs to be a, a discussion in public, I think. And Dana is, Dana's team is a little bit ahead of us exploring with their board. And I think it's a great opportunity because of the seamless network. So people don't, you know, we want people across the board to know where they can, where they can't, and what the rules are. So.
Are you open to that, Becca?
Yeah.
Jeremy, max. Okay, go for it.
Any other questions for Dana? And I just want to say thanks. It's always good to see you.
Thanks for taking time to join us today.
Great, Dana. Thank you. I'd like to invite Wendy Fisher, Executive Director from Utah Open Lands to the table. Wendy's behind me. I believe most of you know Wendy. Utah Open Lands holds eight easements, conservation easements for, um, Park City Municipal, going all the way back to 1992 at Willow Ranch. And if you don't know where Willow Ranch is, it's actually just in the back of Park Meadows, off of Meadows Drive East. Uh, it's a lot of the wetlands where the McLeod Creek, um, path goes. So, um, that was one of the first conservation easements, obviously, in this area. I might have gotten that wrong, Wendy, and you'll correct me if I did. But if it wasn't the first one, it's, it's very much, uh, one of the first ones. Specifically, um, we'd like to focus on Bonanza Flat, not only because some of the projects identified in the staff report are very specific to Bonanza Flat, but I know that there's been a fair amount of public discussion about some of the aspects associated with that. And so I'd like to, um, you know, tee that up for Wendy, the aspect. I also want to note that Wendy was in Leadership Class One. Wow, State Municipal. And so she's been around for some time. And, and then also just some, some housekeeping, Your Honor. A site visit is contemplated in the staff report. And my recommendation would be maybe to set up two-on-twos. Or would you like a full, all of council will go up? Uh, I'd ask Counsel for that direction. Preferences?
Finding our schedules.
I mean, twos are easier. I just wanted to be clear. It is in the staff report. And if, if it does take place, I just want to make sure that, you know, A, maybe the public's aware of it if it's all of counsel. And if not, it's properly like addressed. So my recommendation, because I do know most of your schedules are very packed, would be a two-on-two, but that's what I'm seeking some direction on. Two by two.
Two on two.
Okay. And then also on the, on the slides this evening, um, we have had a violation, um, pretty egregious, if you will, bulldozer up on, on our, on our open space. And so, um, I'd like to bring that up and maybe just at the end of this sort of, have a slight discussion on that, um, with the impetus on, on how we would like to actually investigate that aspect with the council. But, um, before we have that discussion, I'd like to kick it over to Wendy, if that's okay.
Yeah, and I, um, want to be mindful of all of your time. I'm happy to be here. Boy, it's, we've come a long way. I've been with Utah Open Land since 1990. We were the first local land trust in the state. And I remember when we were begging and pleading for trail easements across private property. So it's a great thing to see, but yes, it comes with problems. I just want to give you a quick context because it's something that we're seeing from a statewide perspective. During the pandemic, one of the most amazing things was that people were constantly talking about how their mental health was actually made better by their ability to, when everything was closed, get out into open space. We saw as a state 300% increase in the amount of people using open spaces, and that has not abated. Utah Open Lands has seen in our own campground that we own down in Moab, Castleton Tower, which was protected in 2003, that the search and rescue recoveries in that area have gone by a magnitude that you wouldn't believe. And so one of the things that we're seeing is with people partially from the pandemic and getting out there into the outdoors for some folks for the first time. People who had climbed in a gym now climbing outdoors. We even did a study on trailheads, including Bonanza Flat, um, funded through the Central Wasatch Commission, that showed that 67% of the people were out hiking for the very first time in nature. It's crazy. But what that means is that you've got some misinformation, some uneducated, um, individuals that are out there. We have started our Leave It Loved campaign. I brought stickers for you all to challenge your inner steward when you're out on these landscapes, similar to what Heinrich talked about. We have a landscape landing page for Bonanza, for Castleton, and for Galena-Sonkani because we've seen this happen throughout the state. And so I think it's important to understand, um, that context when we think about the fact that everybody, even across the, the, the West, are facing these sorts of challenges of the increase. And therefore, how do we deal with the crush of visitors that come to these areas and do it in a responsible way and one that is going to be economically feasible into the future? So I think that additional context for, um, Bonanza Flat comes from the map that you see up on the slide here. Um, in 2017, when Park City acquired Bonanza Flat, Utah Open Lands did a natural lands inventory that was the precursor to 12 stakeholder meetings with, I don't know how many jurisdictional and technical stakeholders, but it included Wasatch County, Summit County, Salt Lake County, um, and then a number of nonprofits, Mountain Trails Foundation, Summit Land Conservancy, Save Our Canyons. Um, and those were all public, not private, um, stakeholders because of course this is a public trust that's created with respect to Bonanza. But that map represents the man-made disturbances that were already on Bonanza Flat at the time that you purchased it in 2017. So there has always been a component of the management of Bonanza Flat that has meant restoration, but there is necessarily a component of the management for Bonanza Flat that also includes, very importantly, um, making sure that the trails are sustainable. So to that end, I think some of the good news really quickly is that Utah Plans has consistently raised funds for various different management practices. In fact, we've brought in over $323,000 that has not come to us as an organization. We've taken that, we've used it to pay for materials, um, and it's gone directly to Park City to pay for some of the things that have been done up there. For every dollar in trailhead work or, or trailhead work, Utah Open Lands has raised about the same amount for restoration work. Um, in fact, sitting behind me tonight is, um, the Pilco family. And they have helped us along with the U, uh, UORG. So Governor's Office of Outdoor Recreation Restoration Grant. We fought the legislature to let us get restoration funds, not just trail building funds. And, um, so between the two of those, we'll be doing some extensive restoration, um, programming and planning up on Bonanza, as well as being able to educate people about that through our landscape landing pages. Um, that is not going to come at any cost to Park City. All of that restoration is borne through the grant from Pilco family and the Governor's Office of Outdoor Recreation. So yes, it's a great thing. Uh, we have put up trail closure signs and trail restoration signs. And unfortunately, there's been a fair amount of vandalism. Um, I could show you the bill that we've had to repeatedly replace, um, those trail closure shot, signs. And they come from people who have been on these trails in the past, who maybe sense that this doesn't apply to them. We're not really sure, but it's unfortunate to see that these trails that were originally essentially trespass trails on that private piece of property, are continuing to be used even when we've put up trail closure signs. So part of what we're working on in terms of restoration in some of these areas is actually to create plant plugs and what we call vertical incursions, which will all be natural materials to really try to get people to stay off of these areas that need to be restored because you can't restore these areas if people continue to use them and to go around the signs. But we're continuing to work on it. We think that the Rangers will be a big, huge part of that. My stewardship director actually has her PhD in ecocentric stewardship and public education. So this is really a focus for us as an organization on a number of projects. And we're bringing all of that to bear on Bonanza Flat as well. I think that after a couple of years of Utah Open Lands and Park City staff shoveling the existing deck, um, that's up there, that's the other grant that Utah Open Lands sought. We're still looking for the last $25,000 on that to make that deck, uh, structurally sound and safe because we think that that is a critical component. And quite frankly, some of my staff members, when they went up there in the winter, were harassed. And that's something that as a boss, I just, I wasn't, I wasn't going to put them through that again. So that's one of the reasons we looked for a grant to make it something that's sustainable that we didn't have to. So that's one of the reasons we looked for a grant to make it something that's sustainable, that we didn't have to shovel during the winter, so that it could remain. We think that accessibility is being added to that. We don't see that as any real change in what the existing structure was. But we think that that's important when we look at the inclusivity of our entire community. So that will be a great addition to it as well. I think that the, the frustrating thing, and as Heinrich mentioned, that we're having concerns about, is that there have been repeated violations on Bonanza Flat. A lot of them have been motorized vehicle use, especially in the winter recreation use. To that end, I've discussed with the area sergeant for the state of Utah, who's over the recreation motorized vehicles, about helping us with enforcement. One of the tough challenges that we've known from the very beginning is that Bonanza lies in a different jurisdiction than Summit County. And so it makes it tougher for Park City to be able to do enforcement. And so we've had problems with enforcing parking, which has mean, meant that the trailheads were designed specifically to limit degree of use. And you can't do that if you can't enforce parking. So we're looking forward to more cooperation from various different entities on that. The same thing with the motorized use, recreational use. In fact, quite frankly, we've saw, seen quite an uptick since 2017. And this was purchased, and we did a survey during the winter, and we reported those findings to you, actually 2018. We've seen a huge uptick, even in this last year. And that's been frustrating. But I have to say that the most recent violation, which we sent you a letter on with respect to the blading of what appears to be a fairly wide swath on the eastern edge of Bonanza Flat, is a material violation that really needs to be dealt with. It is not okay on so many different levels. I will not go into it now because I think it's something that has legal repercussions. I will tell you this, though. Utah Open Lands has dealt with violations of this nature on other properties. And the courts recognize that this kind of a violation is serious, especially because it involves, this is not property that that individual owns. This was not authorized by the owner of the property, and it does constitute a violation of the conservation easement. In those instances, we have asked for punitive damages along the lines of the restatement of conservation servitude. And I can tell you on the Galena-Sonkani Preserve, beyond the cure of the restoration, there was also a $250,000 punitive damage. So this is a serious issue. And part of the reason is because when you have these repeated issues like this, you do have to get to a point where you demand that the restoration and that the cure to this is something that people take seriously and continue to respect into the future. So we do ask that Park City look at this, that this get investigated, that the cure to this violation involve working with Utah Open Lands to ensure that the area is fully restored and that, to the extent it is, it is necessary. That we also look at the punitive nature of this, because quite frankly, we think that Park City should be setting the same precedent that the state agencies and others have set when dealing with violations of this nature.
So Your Honor, with that said, with direction from council, we would work with Wasatch County to, to look into investigating this, if council approves that.
Thumbs up if you want to do that. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Jeremy?
Can I just ask, I was, I was confused a little bit in the violation. Did you say blading?
I think Wendy used the term blading. I would call it grading. But I think the photos there in the slide, Ryan, if you can see those, it pretty much shows the bulldozer at the bottom.
Can you?
Got it.
Oh, he might not be able to see it just the way this slide is.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can see that. I didn't, I didn't know if that's what you were referencing, but I got it. Thank you.
Hannah, are you okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I did want to say happy five-year anniversary. I think we should.
It is right about now.
Yeah, because it said June of 2017. So it's fully been five years. And I think it's been, I know it's been so much work, but it is really amazing how far we've come. And I think people don't recognize that it wasn't just one deed restriction and conservation easement, the fact that you were able to wrap up all those little bits and parcels in there. I know that took a ton of work and just, I mean, I know that there are a lot of issues to resolve. And I think that we've talked about it a couple of times. And the phrase comes up, you know, you can give people things, but you can't take it away. And for people that are used to being up there and aren't willing to give it up, I think that that's been, you know, something we're probably going to continue to struggle with. But hopefully, at some point in time, people will get to the point where they understand it's kind of a new day and an age, and we can figure out the best way to make sure that we're actually protecting and conserving that land up there. So anyways, I just want to thank you for everything. And, and we should find a way to celebrate that it has actually been five years.
Well, isn't that what we're doing on the two-on-two tours?
Oh, yeah, that's, that would be, that would be the only reason I would say it would be worth getting all of us together up there. Would be because I think it is a big deal that five years ago, the community really did come together. And I remember singing on the front steps down here and having a big party down there. I remember you singing on the front steps down there.
That's a memory I don't remember anymore.
It was only five years ago, but it was a big deal. So thank you.
It was. And there was a lot of funds there. And I would ask that hopefully you can have a broader session where we can go through all of what has happened that's been really positive and looking at specifically the, the management plan, maybe in another session, because I know we're short on time.
I just want to, just for the sake of the public who, who doesn't know exactly what this is, because we made a big deal about this particular violation. For those people who aren't up to speed, this is that Jeep Hill Road that historically was used as sort of like a real fun way to test your vehicle if you can make it up the hill. And it's on Park City's property, and it was slated to be revegetated. It was not intended to be a road in the summertime. We're actually trying to revegetate that area. That's in the plan. And to have somebody go out there with a backhoe without permission and essentially regrade a road that is not supposed to be a road is, I mean, imagine somebody coming into your house, into your neighborhood, and just deciding that you get to have a, a single-track trail through your backyard and not asking and driving a backhoe through it. That's what this is. Just for the sake of, I just want people to understand, this is a pretty significant violation of somebody's property. And we need to take it seriously because that type of thing just absolutely can't, can't stand in a, in a place that we're trying to preserve as, as natural space for the public to use. That's just, I, I'm, I'm kind of blown away. So, Jeremy?
Yeah, wait, why I paused before. And I mean, anyone who's been watching the past few months, obviously a big supporter of law and order and property rights and protecting those, and definitely think we need to address the situation. Have we pulled together, or do we operate some kind of, I don't know, group or stakeholder-type conversations with the trail groups, with the city, with Wasatch County, with the, the folks who live up there? As we work through these, you know, so it just, I'm, I have a little bit of pause with like, yeah, this is bad and it can't be happening. But before we go throw people in jail, do we do that?
So, so Jeremy, I, I want to answer that question because I think it's a great opportunity right now. And so what I was going to say in closing, because I know we're short on time, is I wanted to thank Sheriff Frickby. I wanted to just thank Wasatch County. I wanted to thank a lot of the people that live up there moving forward, because we're going to institute a parking restriction up there that is going to be a surprise for a lot of people. And if we can't collectively work with those, with that group of people, whether it's the residents right there, Wasatch County and stuff, I think just the parking itself is a nexus that starts off a good discussion and discussing whether it's these infractions, et cetera, associated with all of those stakeholder groups and people that are interested, I think is a really good step forward. So Wendy, I don't know.
I just want to add a couple of things into Councilman Doyle's point. Actually, this was discussed in a June meeting at the Wasatch County Council in 2018. Wasatch County Council members actually acknowledged the potential liability for anything like this being open during the, during the summer, which is why restoration plans were firmly put in place, and that was part of the management plan. Everybody was very aware of it. So to be honest, this kind of takes me a little bit aback because there is no question that there were many people in the room. We feel very firmly that a public trust is a public trust. You can't create private benefits off of that public trust. And so we have engaged with all of these stakeholders. But again, you know, there were two different meetings in 2018 prior to us moving forward with the conservation easement being signed and the management plan. And this was very clearly, no, this is going to be revegetated. It's not safe. It's not what anybody wants, not even the adjacent community. So this, this is a little bit of a, of a, I'm not sure how this could have happened, to be honest.
Yeah, I'd probably stay pretty firm in that, to be honest. Understanding the history, we've gotten a lot of information from it. We've heard a lot, especially this past week, from folks who are in the stakeholder group. And I don't think it's a lot of, a lot of effort really to pull that together and extend that olive branch and try to address this again before issuing those kinds of fines and locking people up. Now, I totally agree, if we make that outreach and it doesn't go well, I mean, we revert to, yeah, it's, sorry, you're breaking the law and we're going to enforce our rights. And then we're going to enforce the conservation easement. But giving that opportunity, and I, I don't know where the truth is on this, but I'd assume it's probably somewhere in the middle of, of all the different perspectives that we've been hearing. And I think that's the right first step, is convene that stakeholder group, have this conversation, let folks know they're on notice. And if this stuff's not remedied immediately, then we will be taking the next step and then take the next step.
Are you suggesting that happened before we investigate what happened?
I think it could be concurrent, to be honest. I mean, I'd love to see that stakeholder group convene like ASAP. I mean.
Well, I think part of the investigation is talking to people, right?
Right.
So if, if we'd start an investigation, we would be including all of that group, right?
Yeah, but there's a, I mean, investigation just carries a little bit of connotation, right? I mean, we're saying we are going to take it that next step. It's, it sets the stage a little different.
Jeremy, I want to, I'm sorry, I think this conversation's worth having for just a minute. I, I don't really want to put grading a road in the same bucket as somebody using their snowmobile to kind of take the path that they've taken for the last 20 years to get to their house. I think there's absolutely a conversation to be had about access to property. And is there a better, is there a common ground we can find versus just a fan of snowmobile tracks everywhere you go? Can you take this little route and we'll accommodate a little bit in the wintertime? And I mean, this is different summer than winter. I think this is different than the trails conversation we're having. This is taking a bulldozer. I mean, literally, I, I just think this particular case is different, and this one needs to be treated differently. I absolutely agree. We need to have deep discussions with everybody who uses the property up there, the stakeholders who are in the room, the people who live in Brighton Estates, who we've heard from a lot. And then we got a 12-page document about how we've been doing things. I, I, I think there's definitely a conversation we want to have with those people. But, but this is going way, way too far. This is way beyond my regular access to my property, using a road that has a gate on it, et cetera. I mean, we have a chain across the thing here. This is not the same. I don't, I don't want to put them in the same bucket. I agree with you wholeheartedly. We should have conversations. We should figure out how to use this place exactly the way we want to use it. We are following, you know, the, the, the conservation plan that we had laid out. And if that's not amenable to the people who are up there, then maybe we do need to have more conversations. I'm not sure, but this is just above and beyond. So.
Or we could have the conversation, and in the first 10 minutes, you find out exactly who's doing this because they come into that room screaming at us, right? I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways to attack it, and that's my opinion. I'll leave it at that.
I think we have consensus that we'd like you to investigate it. And Wendy, I would appreciate taking you up on your offer to come back in another work session. And really, you know, I appreciated both you and Laura sending background on Bonanza Flat, you know, to kind of bring us, refresh our memories and bring new people up to speed. As well as, so I think another work session where you, we can dive deeper into these issues and how we want to move forward with it. You know, this was a, a, a public land that was purchased with public dollars for public benefit. And I think that, that this council needs to have a deeper discussion in that. So thank you for that offer. And Matt, if you could help us get that on the schedule. Thank you.
Your Honor, written, a little short on time. We got a couple other people. So Wendy, thanks for coming up, class one. I'd like to invite Cheryl Fox to the table. I think most of you know Cheryl Fox. Cheryl in Summit Land Conservancy, I'm sorry, did I hit your foot? Holds 19 of our conservations in town and, and proposed the Iron Mountain and Treasure Hill easements. And what leadership class were you in? So give you a moment to just speak a little bit about your programs, and I'll go for next.
Well, thank you very much for taking this time to talk about trails and open space. We have enjoyed the long and really wonderful partnership with both the city and the other stakeholders who are here talking with you this evening. I think that this year, the Summit Land Conservancy is celebrating our 20th anniversary. And as we look back over 20 years and the things that we've been able to do, what's become so clear is that our success is really because of our partnerships, our friendships, our willingness to sit down with each other to find the common ground, literally, and, and, and moving forward. So we have had a lot of interesting opportunities over the years to do different kinds of, not just placing easements, but also restoration work, enhancement work, ways to work with people's willingness to, you know, give back and participate, whether that's through tree plantings, although I do get sideways a little bit about the trees, but, but to find other things. And I think most recently, you might have heard there was a report on KPCW about a Girl Scout group, and they went out and they put these, they're called One Rock Dams. It's a misleading name because it's not just one rock. It's a bunch of rocks, but they're only one rock high. And the thing that I'm really excited about this is not just, again, the partnership with, you know, local people, local youth, a volunteer who got her friends together. But it also is the type of restoration that works really well and respects the ecology that we have here in our community. So we're happy to be, again, partners with that and, and other, other situations. We are currently working to place the conservation easement on the Treasure Hill project. And so my staff are out walking the property. We're meeting with different landowners, working through a lot of previous easements, encumbrments, handshake agreements to try to figure out what, what's already there on the property before we put this conservation easement on that. And so we've been really happy, Heinrich and, and his team have been really super helpful with that, too. We're also excited to be working on adding another 475, 480 acres to preserved land on Iron Mountain. And so this is the part of Iron Mountain that you see as you drive out of town, high up on the hill above the McPolin Farm. And most of this was land that the city already owned and acquired through various agreements in the night, in the, in the early aughts, or whatever you call it, the 2000s. And the city owned them, and, and there were in holdings that Iron Mountain Associates, which is the developer of the colony, owned. And because of our relationship with Iron Mountain Associates, Summit Land Conservancy was able to negotiate with them and chat with them about actually giving those in holdings also to the city. And we'll put one big conservation easement over it. We're excited about this because this consolidates ownership, makes for easier forest management. And of course, then, my fear is always that, you know, if you have this 40-acre inholding and you've got all this great open space protected around it, that somebody 50 years from now figures out that they could helicopter into their house or whatever we do in those days. So we're, again, excited that, again, a partnership with, again, a developer, the, the city and the Summit Land Conservancy. And in this situation, we're hoping that the neighbors will help us out with the stewardship and transaction cost funding for that, too. And I suppose that's the final thing that the Summit Land Conservancy has been happy to be part of over all of these years. This community has spent a lot of money protecting open space. You know, we've bonded over and over again. And then people consistently also open their pocketbooks for individual projects. And it is our honor to be able to work with the city and these individuals and, and just see, when, when people do this, there's a reciprocity, there's a generosity. People are so that, I, that they open their hearts and the light shines through. And it's just a wonderful opportunity for us. So again, thank you very much. And it's just a wonderful opportunity for us. So again, thank you very much. And I don't know if people have questions, but. Any questions for Cheryl?
I'd like to maybe just ask counsel for just one direction. Tana, Cheryl and I had a meeting earlier today and an item that's been brewing for some time has been the donation policy that the city has. We have a very good donation policy. Actually, a lot of communities ask us what our policy is because they don't have one, but it's time for a revamp. And so if counsel approves, we'd like to, I'd like to work with Cheryl because I worked with her a lot on it. Laura Smith, Tana maybe as the liaison, maybe bring that back in a work session and, and sort of revisit that with counsel and see if we can make that a little better policy. Is that okay with you?
Are you talking about donation of property or donation of benches and?
The latter, the latter. Okay.
How do you feel about that?
Great. Cheryl, thank you. Laura Smith, can you please come to the office? So I'd like to introduce Laura Smith, Executive Director of Mountain Trails Foundation. Mountain Trails Foundation was founded in 1992 and I, I would say the single most important entity that has actually created the trail system that we have today. Not only have they been great supporters of public access, but they also provide the maintenance. They, they actually hold the Backcountry Trails Maintenance associated with. So the maintenance out on the trails that happens, happens because of their crews. And a lot of the actual construction that takes place on our trails happens as well because it's grant funded. And they provide that. So they come at no, no cost to the city. So Laura, what leadership class were you in? I was going to go last, you know, I was 16. So I'd like to just kick it over and you want to give a little bit about what's going on.
Yeah, I'll just talk a little bit about the organization. And then if you guys have specific questions, we can go for hikes for coffee again. I have met with most of you privately and it has been my pleasure to get to know this new council and mayor. Our mission at Mountain Trails is to build, maintain and protect non-motorized trails in the Park City area. That footprint is growing. Our, our footprint is roughly from the White Barn to the south. Of course, we don't do the big float, float trails at Deer Valley, but we do do Round Valley, the Solomir area, Bonanza Flat. We've got a, a pretty, pretty large footprint. So lots of, lots of miles of trails. To that end, we employ 11 people. Nine of those are trail crews. So we have a seasonal trail crew and a couple of full-time year-round crew who manage the winter maintenance in Round Valley. So we do the grooming for the Nordic and single track in Round Valley, Clark Ranch and Bonanza Flat. This is all under a contract with the city. We have in 2021, a five-year contract began with the city for Mountain Trails to do the backcountry maintenance and some limited development per city instruction. We have a $375,000 five-year contract. So that's $75,000 per year for trails. On another note, Mountain Trails in the past five years has raised 3.7, a little bit over 3.7 million dollars for Park City's trails. So if you know where you can get that kind of return on your money anywhere else, you should, we should have a conversation sometime. This year, we're on track for a million dollars in funding through grants and private donations. So we're a very, very healthy organization and we put this money all back onto trails. Our communications with the public are one of the underpinnings of our, our mission. It falls under our advocacy arm of our mission. We have a newsletter that reaches 10,000 people every month. It is a one-time-a-month thing. So if you want to sign up, you'll know everything that's going on on the trails that month. It has a 50%, sometimes 48% open rate, which if anybody in the communications department could tell you, that's phenomenal. A normal open rate for newsletters around 15%. So clearly trails matter to your constituents. We do a summer and winter map, which is supported by the city. You give us a small grant for that and that helps cover some of the production costs and I want to maybe touch on the Bonanza Flat thing. I know that we've, Mountain Trails has to come under fire like city and some of the ways that we build trails have risen some eyebrows. And I wanted just to let all of you know that we don't build trails willy-nilly. There's always a purpose. There's always a, a funding source. Sometimes the funding comes before the trail. Sometimes the trail idea or need arises before we have the funding. So it's kind of a, a lot of moving pieces in this puzzle, but it's never done in a silo. We are always working with the land trust, with the city, Heinrich's team. And, and I would hope that if you have questions, you feel free enough to call us and we can explain the rationale behind the trails we build and, and maintain. So that's it. Oh, and in closing, Heinrich, love working with this guy. He's, he's the, one of the best parts of our job. Thanks.
I just want to give Laura a little bit of, of kudos here. We went through a administrative conditional use policy for, for a trail in Round Valley. It's called the Big Easy. And we met some of the residents with, that were concerned about parking and specifically parking in the Round Valley Way parking area. And in those meetings, I watched Laura walk out of the room with some of those residents and say, we want to help. How can we help? Can we message more? If there's people there that are parking in front of yours, how can we help? So, you know, we understand collectively as an entity that there can be impacts associated with trails and, and trailheads, especially in some of these areas. But I was amazed at Laura's approach with our resident because we are, we are a community. We all live here. And having that discussion and saying, here's my cell phone. Call me if you have problems is something she should get credit for. So I just want counsel to know that.
Thank you, Laura, and Mountain Trails for being such an awesome partner for the city for so many years. We appreciate it.
Your Honor, we're two minutes past. I have two more slides. Can I have a little bit of leeway?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Laura, thank you. David Tellian, please come to the office. Is that okay? Dave Tellian is with Alpine Forestry LLC. And I also, Mike, will you please come up? Mike McCombs, well, you can introduce yourself, Mike. Go ahead. So this slide before you is on, on wildfire mitigation. And this is something that, you know, it is, it was a small project that we worked on for years and years, but it really took off, if you will, probably two, three years ago. And we've been doing a lot of work associated with that. I've been having some discussions with Jeremy. Jeremy's very interested in these. He's liaison with the, the Park City Fire District. And what I realize is maybe the public doesn't know everything that we actually are doing. You know, from my department, we do our defensible space. We do our treasure projects. We do, we do as much as we can with the resources and we're, we're trying to move at warp speed. But we collected a sort of a list, if you will, from the different departments that Jeremy, I think if it's okay with you, I think we should share with all of council and maybe post on our websites. But, you know, our building department, you know, did you know that similar to like Park City Fire District, we do Living with Wildfire series? We, we actually make it available that residents and HOAs can call us and our building officials like go out and tell people, this is how you do defensible space work. This is home hardening. This is all for free. These are our education programs. They speak with general contractors, like before projects, this is what the woo-ee means, right? The wild and urban interface. This is how, you know, this is what we're going to ask you through the different processes. Mike and his good work, very coordinated with Summit County on the pre, on the 2016 pre-disaster mitigation. We're a fire-wise community now. Did you know that we have a citywide evacuation plan that Mike and his team put together? You know, we work every year, not only with, with Summit County, but with the state on, on restrictions, whether it be open flames or fireworks. There's a lot of work that goes into those different aspects. We host or have hosted series on educational events, the mega-fire events, the Parley's Fire After Action Panels. We partner with Summit County and the Western Summit County Fuels Committee, which is a very active group that has HOAs involved in it. You know, Mike is very, very closely tied in with the Summit County Fire Warden, Summit County Emergency Manager, Park City Fire, the State Forestry and Fire. If we need a plane, if there's tankers, crews, it is all very regulated in the chain of command, how this works. But it's not that Park City isn't in that loop. Mike is that cog that plays that role for us. And I know Summit County had a discussion on this yesterday with Bryce Boyer, but it is something I think that, and I thank Councilman Rebel, that we should probably take some credit because there is a lot of work that's happening associated with these things. I, I want to kind of tout a little bit. We were working with American Flag HOA right now. Lookout HOA on some of extending onto some of the private property aspects, Deer Valley and some of the areas where we're trying to provide this stuff. Mike Owens and I have sat in so many parking lots together, trying to figure out how we can further collaborate with Park City Fire District on some of these. So I, I wanted to note that there is a lot of good work that's going on. And, you know, sometimes I think that maybe we don't have the resources, maybe myself or something, but there's an entire team working on this. And Dave and his team is, is part of that. You know, they bring 40 years of experience to, to wildfire mitigation in this area. And we really lean on them because they are technical expert, just like Laura is with Mountain Trails and Wendy is with Utah Open Lands, et cetera. So I've talked enough. I'd like to just give him an opportunity to speak a little bit about not only the Treasure Hill defense, but, but the upcoming Treasure Hill work this summer and then maybe touch base a little bit on the CWRA, if you will.
Also mention your leadership class.
Leadership class, which, Dave?
The current class, Leadership 28. I'm having a great time and I'm very thankful for the city, that, that program that the city, you know, more or less sponsors. It's, it's phenomenal. And I've just had a chance to build great relationships and learn so much through it all. So as Heinrich stated, I'm David Tellian. I'm one of the co-owners of Alpine Forestry. We're relatively new to this area. But I, I truly believe meeting a, a much-needed demand as far as open space management. And, you know, with our technical expertise in wildfire suppression and, and hazardous fuels mitigation is a big emphasis of, of our company. I just wanted to kind of lead out with our mission statement. Alpine Forestry is committed to achieving fire-adapted and resource, resource-rich landscapes through detailed planning, comprehensive treatment and sustainable management. We seek to be an industry leader in best land practices, environmental stewardship and strong community partnerships. We're really excited to be a, a new partner with the city in this effort. And I've just, you know, want to commend Heinrich and, and so many others that are coming to the table now to, you know, try to go about this collectively and try to go about this. You know, dotting Ts, crossing Is with thorough planning. We're really excited this year. You know, we started last fall on some defensible space work on Treasure Hill. We're excited to expand that significantly across the hillside. And, you know, this is going to be a, a big deal for the town. I can't stress that enough. And that the, the planning that goes into that is, is super important. And then just the project management and the attention to detail that we intend to, to take on that project is huge. And we want to make that a real flagship endeavor that, you know, the community continues to, to get behind this effort and, you know, plan for that inevitable scenario of, you know, wildfire affecting our town, our, our economy. And, you know, frankly, public safety. So I'll move on to the community wildfire risk assessment that literally just kicked off internally last week with our team. And then on Tuesday here with, with city staff and, and some others. This is a, a huge endeavor. It's going to take some time. We're pulling together over 150 years of collective experience in this field and, you know, trying to kind of look at it through several different angles and, and deliver to the city, something that is extremely useful in their open space management and their open space planning. But then also, you know, how that trickles down into the community. And how can those other large landholders around here be motivated to, you know, take on restoration activities and, and look at their forests and look at their fuels in a way that just hasn't been common in the past here. And so we're definitely seeing a shift in in fire activity pick up locally. And I, and I think this, this endeavor is a response to, you know, that growing concern. I really believe that when we, when we take a second to make a plan, that then we won't have to make a plan every second. And, you know, the, the effects of, on, on the community are going to be really positive. So is there anything else you wanted me to, to touch on?
I was just going to add, thank you for, for the meeting. We had the kickoff meeting on Tuesday. It was Wednesday, one day. It was great. And I just, so the council knows there is going to be a stakeholder, this is a stakeholder-driven project. And part of that, a lot of that stakeholder is having members of our, of the city team as well as myself or Jeremy, attending these meetings and getting updates and then coming back to council and, and updating at least quarterly on where we are with the assessment. But Jeremy and myself will, will try to tag team this on being a part of, sorry, Jeremy, I don't know if you knew that. But we will be working with them in cohesion. So, you know, we, we can get what the council wants out of it as well.
Just briefly, thanks to all of you involved in this, Mike, Heinrich, Dave, everyone else, all the jurisdictions you work with, right? There, there's a ton of them. A lot of folks don't realize that. Appreciate you putting that document together. And yes, absolutely publish it out to everyone. I mean, let's use our communications team if we need to, to help with that. It's really important stuff. It's, it's on the top of a lot of people's minds. And we should, we should be touting, you know, our, our work in the area. Also want to highlight, I believe this is true from the report, that we, the staff has taken feedback from the council and pushed to do more in the mitigation space sooner than we were perhaps initially planning to, which might spark one of our, spark, yeah. One of our budget conversations to, to make sure that funding's available. And I hope we don't stop there. You know, this looked like it was another 75 or 100,000 or something is what I'm recalling. But if we need more, let's talk about getting more and keep pushing.
So Jeremy, thanks. I mean, I think what you heard from Eric and myself is if we have the opportunity, and, and I think I've had this discussion with council before, is somewhat we're limited in just the availability of contractors. But I don't want that to be the, you know, the bar that we set. The flagstaff fee, as you heard from Eric, has additional funds associated with it. If we have the opportunity to get more crews to do more stuff in an efficient and safe manner that's cost-effective, we will do that. I've heard that loud and clear from you. So we wouldn't be returning necessarily with a, with a budget request. We just keep going. Okay. Anything else for Dave?
No, thank you. We're looking forward to working with you.
I got one more, Your Honor, and I would be remiss. I promise it'll just take a second, but if I don't bring Sarah Jo up here, who's been part of our, part of our community and, and something that is really, come on over.
And had a leadership alumni.
Yes, and so I was going to hit her, Sarah Jo.
23 Bonanza Flat.
There you go. All right. So just real quick, Sarah Jo is a PhD in ecology, specialist in plants. She has been working with us for numerous years and really is our advisor on all things noxious weeds. As you can see out on the hillside, it's exploding this year with the late rains. The dire's woad is, is, is out of control, if you will. And, you know, between, you know, Sarah Jo, myself, Logan, orienting crews to where we're getting the biggest bang for our buck minning. We're pulling plants before they go to seed and we're getting in certain areas is really, really technically proficient. So I just want to give Sarah Jo an, an opportunity to say something and for council and me, so.
So yeah, I've been around probably seven years, I think, working with the city and was part of developing the first ArcGIS, so our online mapping that we're continuing to use now, which has really made efficiency, well, made the work more efficient. I also work with the Summit CWMA. That's the Cooperative Weed Management Area. And if you haven't heard of that before, it's essentially an organization that brings together a lot of the partners that would care about noxious weed control, including the city and Summit County, Snyderville Basin, Deer Valley, Vale. including the city and Summit County, Snyderville Basin, Deer Valley, Vail, several of our large landowners. And so in working with the city, I work with Heinrich, Logan, and now Hannah to direct the crews the city is, has contracted. But I also direct seven other crews that are working across Summit County, primarily to control five or six different species, including garlic mustard. I do want to just say that when we're approaching noxious weeds anywhere, we want to make sure that we're focusing on the priority weeds. And unfortunately, they're not always the ones that people know are a problem. And the reason that they don't know is because there's not very many of them. And we think we can still completely control them. And that's why we try to work with them quickly. And sometimes that means some of the ones that other people see very readily, we don't get to them quite as quickly. But we are certainly doing everything we can. And we're trying to utilize every method that we can from mowing to hand-pulling to burying the seed bank in mulch so that we don't have to use herbicide anymore. With the Summit CWMA, a garlic mustard competition throughout the county, which we've pulled over 3,000 pounds of garlic mustard in the last two weeks alone. So it's a huge group of folks coming together to make this happen. And Park City's been a really good partner in that. And I think it's, it's important bringing up the restoration that was talked about earlier. Restoration is a tool for weed control as well. If we don't make sure that our soils are healthy and we don't make sure that native vegetation is reintroduced to areas, we will get weeds that will colonize. They will take over. And if we control one without restoring, we're going to get the next weed to replace it. So it's a long struggle. Most of these weeds have seed banks that can last five to 20 years. It may seem really crazy this year. We had a lot of rain in October. That means all of our biennials that germinate in the fall, overwinter, and then flower right now are doing it. And that would be that mustard that you're seeing out there. And then we've also had enough moisture this season to kick off a lot of thistle, as well as some of our perennials. So it is going to be a rough year. We might not get to it all, but the crews are certainly doing the best they can. All of the crews are understaffed, hugely understaffed. So we'd like to thank the community that's been calling in and letting us know kind of what's, what's popping where, so we can try and get to it as quick as possible.
Two minutes over, Your Honor. I'm done.
Thank you. Really well done. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, we, you've been sitting here for four hours. You need a break. Let's shorten our break to 10 minutes and, and resume at 6:15. So we'll start the regular. All right, let's go ahead and call the regular session to order. If you could please take your seat. Please take your seats so we can get started with the meeting. So it is June 9th, 2022, at about six, almost 6:20 in the evening. We're going to call the regular session, regular portion of this meeting to order. Four council members are present in the chambers and Councilmember Ryan Dickey is joining us virtually. So let's move right into the most exciting part of the night. And that is the presentation of the 2022 Historic Preservation Awards to 1141 Park Avenue, 1062 Park Avenue, 803 Norfolk Avenue, the Thane's Mine Conveyor Gallery, and the Star Hotel.
Mayor, I believe Aiden just walked out to grab her laptop for her presentation. She should be back shortly.
Okay. Here we go.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Hi, Council. Good evening. Tonight, we are presenting the 2022 Cindy Massimoto Historic Preservation Awards. I do have a presentation. Just give me one second.
Is it okay if we move the easel from in front of the screen?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
One moment.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I know. I don't know. There we go.
Okay, one moment. Okay, thank you for your patience. So the purpose of the awards are to honor the historic preservation projects that occur in Park City and utilize the design guidelines for historic districts and historic sites, which are in the Land Management Code in Chapter 1513. This year, the Historic Preservation Board has awarded five historic sites on Park City's Historic Sites Inventory with the Cindy Massimoto Historic Preservation Award. One of, are the first of our five awardees are the Star Hotel. Then we have 1062 Park Avenue, 803 Norfolk Avenue, 1141 Park Avenue, and the Thane's Mine Conveyor Gallery. The landmark historic site located at 1141 Park Avenue was chosen as the primary award winner for excellence in restoration. The Historic Preservation Board has commissioned an art piece created by local artist Morgan McQ to recognize the recipient. The homeowner will receive a print of the painting as well as a plaque. Here we have pictured some of the previous Historic Preservation Award art commissions that are hung on the second hall of city floor. This painting, after we unveil it, will also be added to the second hall's gallery and added to the city's public art collection. Each award winner will receive a plaque to commemorate the historic preservation efforts. And the painting, the print, and the plaques are paid for by the planning department's budget. Tonight, we have former councilmember Cindy Massimoto, HPP member Lola Beetlebrax, and the artist Morgan McQ here to help unveil the painting and distribute the plaques.
Before we present the plaques, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the citizens, the city council, the staff that work on historic preservation to make our town special. We can't do it with just one person. It's a community that has to stand together and make the hard, tough decisions. And I want to thank all of the people that were appointed awards this year for their effort. And with that, the, the award that the painting was done for, the artist is here. Why don't you, hi. And you're, and that's Morgan McQ, and she's going to do the unveiling. Whether she knows it or not. And if we could have the homeowners, Sam and Jim Oslier, come up for 1141 Park Avenue. That's fine. Want to go stand next to Morgan? Great. This is a really wonderful home that's right on Park Avenue. And we're glad that people have moved into the community to make this home special for our community, but also to be community members, which we can have historic homes, but we have to have community also. So I want to thank you for being, being that and also for doing such a wonderful job on your home. So with that, Morgan, this is her painting that she did. Well, thank you very much. It's lovely. I like it a lot. Now, Aiden, I don't have the other names that you mentioned that were just the whole. Not those, there were some address.
Oh, yes. They were, unfortunately, they were unable to attend tonight.
Okay.
But we do have the Friends of Ski Mountain Mining here to accept the Thane's Mine Conveyor Belt Award and the Star Hotel.
Okay, so for, for the Thane's Mine Conveyor Belt, the award is going to be accepted by the Ski Mountain Mining Group. And they've done an historic effort at really bringing our mining structures back to life. And we're thrilled with all the people in the community and all the different organizations that help with that. So if we could have the representative, who's that? Right, okay, come on in. And Aiden has a plaque for you if you want to go over there.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
This is our biggest gift and our most expensive, but just you wait to see what's coming.
Okay. And we, thank you very much for all your hard work. And so please get out your wallets. And the next plaque will be awarded to the Star Hotel for the embodiment of historical context. Do we have a representative? Thank you for, thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it. May he say a few words? Evidently, I'm not in charge.
So as you know, Carleen's Sandwich Shop was at the bottom of the Star Hotel. And so that's Carleen's Sandwich that we put in front of the, wish we could have brought a sandwich for everybody, I should have. But that's her famous turkey sandwich with tomato soup. And so it's called the Big Dipper now that Courtney Johansson, my daughter, is basically running. And above that, we have two levels of the, of the star bar. So come and visit us there. So thank you very much. It's a, it's a pleasure always working on a historic building. Sometimes it's like a breech delivery of a baby. I don't deliver babies anymore. I did that a long time ago. But it's always worth the effort once it's done. And Brian Brassi, who's our contractor, did a great job keeping us in line and keeping those windows exactly where the windows were and preserving every brick that he took off. So thank you very much.
And I just want to reiterate again that it takes a community to do all this historic preservation work and to, to keep our town, you know, Park City. And we couldn't do it without the board members of the Historic Preservation Board. And they do the hard work with that, too. So thank, thank you, everybody.
Okay, let's move on now to appointments. We're going to discuss the appointment of Lee Gernstein and Sharon Serpico Hansen to three-year terms on the Police Complaint Review Committee beginning June 30th, 2022, until June 30th, 2025. I'm Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michelle Downard, resident advocate, and also the chairperson of the Police Complaint Review Committee. As the mayor mentioned, we are here to discuss appointments to that committee, which is one of the feathers in our cap. You know, it was created in 2003, which really paved the way in its time. It was very unique when it was created for the purpose of community involvement and accountability. And so we have five voting community members on that board. And we recently advertised for two seat vacancies created by the end of terms. And following the interviews that were created by the subcommittee, we have, are, are coming to you with a recommendation to appoint, as the mayor said, Lee Gernstein and Sharon Serpico Hansen to three-year terms on that committee, starting June 30th of this year until June 30th of 2025. Can you answer any questions that you have?
Any questions?
Just point out that I'm glad to have them. But with, with this committee, it meets very, I don't know what's the right word. Yeah, infrequently, which is a good thing. So, you know, it's, it's, it's nice that we have a community board. I, I attend those meetings also as a liaison to it. And really looking forward to, to having folks there committed to another three years. Thanks.
Is there a motion?
I, I move to approve the appointment of Lee Gernstein and Sharon Serpico Hansen to three-year terms on the Police Complaint Review Committee, beginning June 30th, 2022, until June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along to communications and disclosures from the council and staff. Ryan, would you like to go first?
Sure, no, no communications, no, no disclosures. Thank you.
Go ahead. Sure. Let's see. Well, I'll just go straight into like my little quote that I like to do. Something that's been driving a lot of my thought the last few weeks is as this council kind of gets its feet underneath it and it feels like people are starting to find their groove. We're out of the campaign season. We're out of, you know, the talk, talking so much about what used to be. And maybe we get into what, what can be. So I have this thing on my phone that I try to go back to because I tend to fall into the pit of talking about people rather than ideas. So I have this quote that I go back to a lot. It's, "Great minds discuss ideas. Average minds discuss events, and small minds discuss people." And I find myself slipping into the latter category, and that's when I feel worse about myself. But when we get into the idea zone, everybody kind of gets energized and everybody gets to participate. And we all end up coming together and it, and it really helps groups gel. Campaigns are tough, right? You're, you're forced to talk about people because that's how you get elected. But we're all here now. And I think it's really, it's time we get to ideas, talking about what we want to do going forward and how they benefit our community. And I actually think at the end of tonight, we have a couple of really big ones coming up that I'm, I'm really energized by. So hopefully, we can all kind of lean into the idea zone and, and, and think about the future of Park City with a little lens to the past because everybody's here. Because people who came before us did a really good job of making Park City a wonderful place to live. And, and I mean, several of us have lived here forever, but a bunch of us on here moved, moved here because it's a great place. So it became a great place because big ideas were presented. And then groups like this, staffs like this followed through on those ideas. So I look forward to the next, you know, 18 months of getting after it.
Jeremy?
Thanks. Let's see. We had the Park City Fire District Administrative Control Board meeting earlier this week. Quick update from there, then the new fire station, which is Station 34 in Silver Lake, is proceeding. So we hope to get that going here by the winter. And we just talked about the wildfire stuff. So the, this other thing, it's a bit of a different kind of topic, but I do feel compelled to mention it. There's been some articles lately that quoted data that we've provided from the. we've provided from the city and have also used other data. And what I'd like to do is extend an open invitation to the two organizations that published those articles or did those interviews. One was the Chamber, and one was the Kimball Arts Center. And we are going to have those coming up. You know, it's tough, because when when you practice transparency and put things out there, and then that is used in a spin to support an agenda, it really bothers me to the core. I have to be honest. So yeah, open invitation, let's collaborate. It's a two-way street. Let's get the truth out to our community instead of trying to justify requests by that inappropriate use of incorrect data. And hopefully, we can get over this hurdle and and work together on on the topics that they were talking about. Thanks.
Yeah, just briefly, you and I were able to participate in the first council in the neighborhood last Saturday. And I will say that I was really surprised just how many people turned up. And a lot of people didn't have concerns, but it just you can feel that people are really looking to connect and and get to know people. So it was a really lovely event and big thanks to our communications team. They did a really lovely job and had snacks and treats. And there were a lot of staff people there. And I know that's not, you know, our staff works really hard during the week. So for everyone to show up on a Saturday was a big deal. So thanks, Heinrich, it was awesome, and Linda and everyone who made it happen. It was great. And then I did also just want to say that we had a graduation for our high school last week. And I'm congratulations to all the high school grads, and I'm glad everyone was safe. And, you know, that's a big night in our community every year, and we send our class of whatever, class of 22 this year. Out into the world, I keep thinking of what's myself, I'm class of 98, long time ago. Long time ago, I flew onto the world. But a big congratulation to them. And I look forward to seeing what what this year's class accomplishes. Great. Actually, Becca, that was the first thing I was going to do was congratulate that class. But I also wanted to congratulate the Park City High High School Boys Lacrosse Team, who took state, including one of my employees, Jack Ronan, who did fantastic and is going to be a senior this year. So shout out to them and shout out to the girls, too, who won 17 games, but did lose state. So great job to see us taking state. Just a couple other things. I also want to congratulate the Prospector Association on their Barrett Lane Party last week. It was a local event inspired by some musicians and some different vendors, or some, yeah, different businesses in the area. And it's, from what I understand, it had a great turnout, and it was a lot of fun, and it was just a great locals event. They are going to do another one on July 16. And they actually are still looking for a few people who might want to have a booth. They they're open for some nonprofits. So if you are interested, contact the Prospector Property Owner Association. And I also want to thank Linda and Michelle and everyone who, on Monday night, we had a serving on, it has a title, can't remember the name right now, sorry, but serving on the boards, what it would be like to serve on Planning Commission and Historical Preservation, and the Appeal Board. And we we had, you know, a few people came out, and it was great to have us all there. And I really appreciate you guys doing that. I think it gives a good insight into what it is like to actually serve on our boards. And last, I was honored to to raise the flag in the park last Wednesday for the LGBTQ+ community. It was it was fantastic. I had some family members there, and Nan was there as well. And it was just great to have the opportunity to do that. So thank you.
And just to build on what Tana said about the the panel discussion that we had the other night, we still have openings on the H P B, the Historic Preservation Board, the Board of Adjustment, and the Planning Commission. And applications for that close on the 13th at close of business. And I believe 13th is Monday. I'm looking at Michelle here. Yes. So if you have any interest in learning more about those boards or commissions, there's information on our website, parkcity.org. And we hope to see a lot of new faces applying for those positions. And I just want to also echo what Becca said, and thanks to staff for organizing organizing our first mayor and council in the neighborhood that we did Saturday morning. We were in Prospector. Great turnout from the neighborhood. I think the fact that we had donuts helped. And next time, we're going to bring some dog biscuits. But we'll be coming to a neighborhood near you over the summer and early fall. So please, when when we come to your neighborhood, come out and talk to us. We'd love to hear from you. We have, for those of you that don't have an agenda or are joining us online, there's a staff communication regarding the Thane's Canyon Drive overview. It's an update on that parking there. You can read that staff report, that update, if you go to parkcity.org and look at our agenda packet. Now, let's open it for public hearing, for public input. If you're joining us virtually, go ahead and raise your hand now, and we'll take public input in the chambers. And then if you'd like to talk to us, we'd love to hear from you. Anyone here wishing to give public input tonight on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? How about online?
No hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public input. Move on to considerations of minutes from April 28 and May 12. Are there any additions, corrections, or a motion?
Your Honor, I move we approve meeting minutes from May, April 28. And where did that go?
May 12.
May 12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll, I'm just abstaining, because I wasn't at the meeting on the 28th. So no problem.
Okay. Then let's move on to old business item number one, a consideration to approve the Memorandum of Understanding Amendment between Park City Municipal and Jay Fisher Development for the 1875 Home State Drive Development. Hello, Jason.
Good morning, or good morning. Geez.
Feels like morning.
Good, good evening. Try again. Jason Glidden, Housing Manager. And I'm joined tonight by the the rest of our team here tonight, which is Peter Tome and members of the Jay Fisher team, including Rory Murphy, Ryan Davis, and we have Jim So and Jake, sorry. And but I'm going to turn it over to them and have them walk through our presentation tonight. And then we'll go ahead and open up for questions. So with that.
One quick, let me just jump in. One quick heads up for all of you is that since the staff report was published 14 days ago, you know, the project has continued down the down the road quite a bit. So what a lot of what you're going to hear tonight is at variance with what was in the staff report. It supersedes the staff report. And I think you'll find it's been responsive to some of the, you know, conversations that that we've heard from the community, as well as with with members of councils. So with that, we'll turn it over to Rory to lead off, give us a little bit of an update. Then we'll go through a quick agenda to make sure that we've addressed the the questions that we've heard so far, both in this forum and otherwise. And then, obviously, at the end, make sure that everybody here has all of their questions, concerns, and comments heard. So that's the that's the goal. Thanks.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks very much for your time tonight, Councilman Mayor. Truly appreciate it. We'll keep it very brief. I really asked Jason and Peter if I could lead tonight, and only because we're, this is sort of the first public-private partnership, I think, with affordable housing, or among the first that the Park City has engaged in. And I know that it's, you know, it's difficult, because the council and the rest of the staff and the city is in a position, both as the applicant and as the regulator. So it's a difficult position to be in. And I know that it's very sensitive. And having served on Planning Commission, you know, the the last thing I want to do is be disrespectful to them and their process, and and as well, the staff, and and I think, above all that, the public. You know, I don't want to give the impression that this thing's a done deal. We haven't even entered the regulatory process yet. We've got a lot of discussion left. And just wanted to make sure that kind of everybody knew that, that we know that, that, you know, this is really the, you know, journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step sort of thing. So we, the plan we're going to propose has no variances to the code, none. And if you find one, let me know, and we'll get rid of it. Because we're going to try to make this as simple as possible. I know that there are policy questions, and there are affordability questions that we're going to have to address. As, as always, we've heard from the public and the neighbors, the biggest issues are parking and traffic. And we will do our best to address that as well, not in tremendous detail tonight. But as we get to the Planning Commission, those will be addressed down to the nats eye. So just hope to have a good kind of instructive dialogue. And as always, we're open to any suggestions, any comments that may make this a better project. Thanks very much.
All right. So our our agenda tonight, as we mentioned, we want to give some updates on to where where we were. Since the since the staff report was published, the design, actually, the development team met with the Building Department. And we learned that due to new some new codes, that the inclusion of commercial space in the project was going to dramatically alter the building type for the entire project, which was a very big financial hit to the project. It would, it would essentially jeopardize the affordability of the project as currently envisioned. So the recommendation at this juncture was to pull the pull the commercial space out, which, you know, unfortunately, I think represents a loss of some opportunity to create some neighborhood markets or something like that. However, on the positive side, for the city and the entire community, is that it generates three additional housing units, and it diminishes diminishes stress on parking and or traffic in the in the location. So, you know, it's our recommendation that we go forward as it is currently designed without the without the commercial space. There will continue to be, I think there's 6,600 plus square feet of of kind of community space within the within the project that is residence-serving space for playrooms and community rooms, music rooms, bike rooms, and bike storage, and all of those kinds of amenities. The the current unit mix, you know, we we don't need to go into a lot of detail, but now we're at a 123 units. 100 of those units are 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 affordable. And in response to comments from council, his, there was a desire to go for a deeper level of affordability than the than the 60% AMI, which was the target of our original MOU. So the developers done done their homework and come back to us with a with a proposal to provide a range of of AMI units that would average out to roughly 60. There's a detail there we'll get into in a moment. But it would allow us to offer a mix of 40% units, 60% units, and 80% units with the average in order to satisfy loan covenants and lenders and equity partners. When you get into averaging because of the downside of missing the average, the average has to be a couple points below your target. So in this case, instead of the average being a 60% AMI, it would drive the project to an average affordability of 58% AMI. It's kind of beneficial in terms of the affordability. It does create a financial gap in the in the project. It represents about $80,000 less a year of NOI. And that's just something that we'll look at collectively as we're finalizing the details of the of the MOU. The project is, as Rory mentioned, you know, the AMPD that applies to this because more than 50% of the units are affordable, allows it to go an extra story, and allows the height to go to 45 feet. That is the proposed configuration of the project is 45 feet and four stories. There will be, it will provide 131 parking stalls. That's 123 stalls underground and and the balance on the surface. We can talk through. So that's, that's kind of the the major changes since the staff report was 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 taken care of. So let's, next slide there, Jason. So we just talked about the elimination of the commercial parking. And then another question that was brought up was our, because of the location of the of the project near the Rocky Mountain Power Substation, was, you know, whether that substation presented any, any undue safety risk to residents associated with EMF or any or any other considerations. We've done some surveys out on the site to measure the presence of EMF. And essentially, what you find is that the what experts are telling us is that as we got right away, you know, the highest point of of EMF was extremely limited to areas where power was coming in or out of the of the of the substation. And those areas, the good news of of Home State is there's no overhead power lines. There's not, there will not be any overhead power lines. And so the EMF at the at the in the building was anticipated to be no different than background levels anywhere else. So there's a couple of of renderings. Again, this is not a final, you know, as Rory mentioned, this project gets now submitted to planning. It goes through, you know, tremendous deep feedback with staff and then Planning Commission, you know, and the CUP includes details on materials and colors and textures and all of those things, all of which will, that's kind of the sausage making of of a final approval. So these are just representative of the kind of the form that the building will take and and some of the fundamentals in terms of the setback at the top floor and some other things to comply with code. There were, on the financials, the time the this project relies on on tax credits, or was designed around using low-income housing tax credits. And this year, those tax credits are, as you've heard in former meetings, are administered by the state through private activity bonds. And that's kind of the gatekeeper of the li tech process. The process, the the agenda, the schedule of the bonds historically was January with a small allocation, and October with a larger allocation. When the when we executed our MOU, we were, we were targeting an October, an October application for private activity bonds. This year, that is 2022, the state elected to pull the October bought funding forward to get money out into the market sooner, so that application deadline was in April, as opposed to August. So with that, the team, you know, hurried up, we made an application. But the but the application was massively over, or excuse me, the 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 round of funding was very oversubscribed. And our application, because it was in April instead of October, was not as advanced as it would have been, having gone through, you know, Planning Commission and public meetings. And so on the readiness score, which is one of the scoring criteria, the application wasn't, you know, is likely not as strong as it would have been in October. With that said, there's a possibility we will, we will find out middle of July if the project is successful receiving those funds. If not, it's anticipated, because we've been in the the process, that the next application will be for the January 2023 round, and that would work actually very well in coincide with the light, hopefully, the process of approval through Planning Commission, and the balance of the of the capital stack. As Okay. And then, you know, because of the, what we'd love to do in the Okay. And then, um, you know, because of the, what we'd love to do in, in the staff report, I think there was a, a really good question and, and answer piece, um, about how, how the income, uh, qualifications and all of those things work when you're in a federally regulated low income housing tax structure. So at this point, I think I'm going to turn it over to Ryan, who's, who's the expert. These guys have a lot of experience with this and how the subtlety of, not so subtlety, but the, our, our desire to mix the AMIs from forty to eighty as opposed to having all sixty percent units, how that works.
Thank you, Peter, and good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you for having us. Um, so as Peter mentioned, I'll, I'll first start with income averaging and then I can answer any questions if there are on the qualifications and the leasing frequently asked questions. But on income averaging, one of the questions we received from council was can we strive for deeper affordability? Um, most of these targets, uh, area median income targets that we use for four percent is sixty percent area median income, as we've previously discussed. Uh, with income averaging, we were able to stratify that to forty percent, sixty percent and eighty percent with blended average at fifty percent, uh, area median income on the project. And I'm repeating some things Peter said earlier, but it ends up being about a million dollars of debt proceeds that we would not be able to raise based off of reducing our annual income by about eighty thousand dollars. Um, and so that's just something to be aware of, but this is a potential path forward for the, the programming of the affordability of the project. Um, the next piece is around the income qualifications. And so, um, you're qualified based off of household size and on the income. As I mentioned, we're targeting forties, sixties and eighties. Uh, I'll briefly go into what's called the hundred and forty percent test, um, which is a question that we were specifically asked around what happens if income changes over a period of time while a household is in a unit. Um, and essentially households have, uh, a buffer of up to a hundred and forty percent of the qualified income that they are qualified for. So if you're in a sixty percent area median income unit, you are qualified in that unit and you're certified every year. If there's a scenario where your income qualifies to a hundred and forty percent of that, which is in this case eighty-four percent area median income, if you exceed that, um, what we as the owner are required to do is to take a market rate unit, the next available market rate unit, and essentially make that a new sixty percent area median income unit so that we preserve the inventory of deed restricted units for the project. So it's intended to preserve this for the existing households. This is something that's fairly rare. Um, we've not seen it in our portfolio. When I spoke to Utah Housing Corporation, their compliance officer had not, had not actually had to enforce it in the state of Utah. Um, so we don't expect that to be something that's seen often, but it was a question that came up from council. So we wanted to make sure that we addressed it.
That's a good question. I, I was wondering what happens if it goes the opposite way? So what if somebody's income is, would, if they were at sixty percent, would we move them to a forty percent if that became available? Or does that not happen either?
Well, if they are happy in their unit and they're able to make their payments, um, if there's an available forty, they could apply for it. They essentially could terminate one lease and apply for a new lease if there's an available unit. But there's no regulatory requirement to adjust on the downside. It's only on the upside to preserve the existing inventory.
Um, I was just wondering, I actually, uh, wasn't sure exactly how occupancy worked in like a one bedroom. Is that two people per one bedroom or can you have like two people and a baby, um, or a, a child? Or, um, how does that work with two bedrooms and then up to three bedrooms? Is it just the standard two people per room or?
So their size and they target two people per room. And then there's, um, essentially children can be allowed and there's a very detailed explanation in the compliance manual. And I'm happy to send that it, it, it varies by who's in the household. And there's qualifications for live-in healthcare workers. There's a lot of kind of, um, what-if scenarios, but essentially yes. So each, uh, floor plan and bedroom count is sized to a particular household size and those are where you target. So one, a one-person household cannot get a three-bedroom unit.
Yeah, but like if you had, but I guess I was kind of thinking about it and the, it is kind of a what-if and I don't want to get too in the weeds. But I was just wondering if you're a single person and then you get married and have a baby and you go from one person to three person, does that mean your AMI, um, like it's, uh, based on three people as opposed to one person?
So children won't impact the qualification, but the, um, a, a double income. So if you go from a single income household and you, um, bring in a partner or spouse and you've changed your household size, uh, then you would have to re-qualify for the unit.
Okay.
And there's, there's again.
But still, but like you are allowed to make more because even if it's two people can make more and still fit under sixty percent AMI.
Right.
Okay. That was just thinking through that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hey, well, I'll start with this is great. Uh, thanks for doing it. Um, I think you've gotten really creative with the solution, which could be a, a great solution for the community. I mean, not only does it hit then more income levels than a flat sixty percent, but it also provides for more diversity of the residents of the project, which is an awesome thing as well. So ninety-nine point nine percent positive comments. The, the other one, um, can you just address, and I know we've talked about it a little bit on the surface, the, the provision around the next available unit, right? And I do see that as a good thing as well because you're keeping your affordable housing stock for those who need the affordable housing stock. You're not giving away a unit to someone who can keep it forever and, you know, makes over the limit, but we don't evict them and we shouldn't, by the way. So I, I think it's a great solution to not evict people, but also keep that affordable housing stock. What happens though if they fall into that gap area, right? So they're above the eighty percent. So there's no affordable unit for them, but they can't afford a market rate. How do you handle that as the project manag- manager management company?
Sure. And from a regulatory perspective, there's, um, there's not certain, there's not an exact consideration for that circumstance. And I'll also say in a lot of markets, um, once you're at a hundred and forty percent of your qualification, you're tending to get into the pricing of market rate units. Park City is unique in that market rate units are, there's a larger gap between where market ratings are. So this is, this is a very valid question for this community. Um, and what we would consider and propose is, um, for families that do exceed the one hundred and forty percent test, for those households, that we would work with council and the city to figure out what's the right transitional plan to make sure that they have an opportunity not to be displaced or evicted. We're not in the business of displacing and evicting people. We build high-quality housing and that's what we want to focus on. And so we would look to build some type of transition plan for those households to make sure they have some path to not deal with displacement. What that looks like, I think we're open to ideas and open to discussion.
Okay. Yeah, that's fair. I mean, it's something we can dive into deeper. Maybe it's something the planning commission can get into some details on with you when, when you go there. But yeah, you're right. The punchline is they may have no other place to go, right? Like, cause there, if there's not another affordable unit at a different project in the area, then it's a problem. So I appreciate your willingness to, uh, come up with some solutions there. And then the, the last one's that one point two million, um, borrowing capacity. Can you speak a little bit about how you would expect to close that gap? Is that a hard number or is it somewhere between zero and one point two million? Is it, you know, is it a loan, is it a grant?
And it, yeah, sorry to interrupt you, but yes, uh, that's, at this stage, um, the, the reason we brought it up was just to illustrate that there is a impacted financial capacity. Um, like most affordable housing projects will be working with essentially gap financing partners. Uh, almost every affordable project is, has some level of gap financing that's come into it. Um, so at this stage, there's no, um, anticipated gap because we're just too early in the process. And as we move forward, we'll be working to fund that gap. I think the ongoing conversation will be as there's, um, additional programming and vision requests from the city, you know, just understanding those economic trades so that it's an open and transparent conversation. And as we get closer to financial close, having the real conversation about where we're at in the project and, and what, if any, financial support is, is being requested from the city.
That's great. Thanks. And again, really appreciate the work you've put into this to, uh, to make it better for, for the whole community.
Thank you.
And for, for the sake of the public, just to, to have, to take that one step further. The financing that you do get is coming from lenders who tend to take a pretty conservative approach. We talked about this a little bit, five percent vacancy rate, et cetera, et cetera. And in a market like this, that doesn't have any, you essentially have no competition in Park City. Your likely vacancy rate is much lower, so you're likely from an O and M perspective to be able to meet muster for the long term, right? Just as, as we get public comments, sometimes you get people coming in going, how are you going to make this work if you don't have enough money? But it seems on the surface like you're going to be just fine from an O and M perspective, correct?
I, I, I feel very confident that we'll be able to exceed our underwriting in this market.
And then to Jeremy's point, that gap that we're talking about, um, it's really just for that group. Well, it's not just, but it, it's for that group from eighty percent AMI to a hundred and forty percent of the eighty percent. Because any group in the forty percent to sixty percent AMI group, there may be an opportunity to stay in the building at a higher rate because we're, we have those available units. So that diversity actually plays into a smaller group of potentially displaced people. And if you get to a hundred and forty percent of your eighty percent AMI, you're, you're making more than a hundred percent of the area median net income. So you should be in a market rate zone because that's how the math works, correct?
Correct.
Okay, let's hold further questions or comments and let you go ahead with your presentation.
So so one of the, uh, one of the major topics this evening is, as you can see, the project has advanced fairly far, um, in terms of, you know, being highly defined, um, and ready to go, as, you know, ready to go for CUP and MPD review by the planning, by the planning group. Um, at this point in time, what we want to do is update, posing to update the MOU, um, in order to recognize kind of where we are. The, the current MOU, um, which was done prior to seating this council has a cancellation clause, unilateral cancellation clause for, that where we can terminate the MOU for no reason with, for sixty days. And in return for that, there was a reimbursement clause, um, which currently is set at two, at, uh, fifty thousand dollars. So that if we unilaterally said, hey, we're just changing plans or we don't want to do a project or we don't want to work with you, we would reimburse up to fifty thousand dollars of, of out-of-pocket bona fide third-party costs. Where we are today, the project is advanced. I think we see that, uh, that the private development partner has the, has the capacity to bring this thing over the finish line. Um, and we're now ready to go into the process. Um, so what we're proposing is to amend the MOU, um, by providing, um, the developer a formal option to lease on the property. So essentially bind the property for the remaining duration of, of the, of the MOU, which is December of twenty twenty-four, I twenty-three, excuse me, twenty twenty-three, um, approximately eighteen months. Um, in return for, we essentially eliminate any reimbursement clause. So the reimbursement clause goes away and they're all, you know, the downside to the city, if there is any, is just that we're tying up, if you will, the project for, or the site for eighteen months, um, that we will work exclusively with, with this group toward the development of this project. Um, it seems like, uh, from my perspective, having worked on a couple of pub, public-private partnerships in the past, it's a, it's a pretty good trade from the city's perspective and it, it appears to be acceptable to the, to the developer as well. Any question you want?
Yeah, one quick question on that. Um, that doesn't eliminate like a material breach though of the agreement, right? This is just if we decide we don't.
Awesome. So, so cause, you know, if there's, if there's, you know, a failure to perform or any other cause, um, obviously the MOU can be canceled, um, or terminated pursuant to all of the notice provisions and other, other features within the, within the MOU. So next steps, um, we, you know, I think this evening, um, you can see where we are. We're ready to go to, um, to planning. Um, so we need to confirm council support to allow the public-private partnership to proceed into the, into the planning process. Um, we need to confirm your support for amending the MOU as we've outlined. Um, and then additionally, we'd like to suggest, um, because it's a, a process that's worked in the past. This project's going to be fairly fast-moving. It's going to be fairly dynamic through planning. So we'd like to suggest a, a council subcommittee, um, which, you know, uh, two people who could work kind of very closely with us, both, uh, you know, the, the entire PPP team to stay abreast of, uh, stay abreast of the developments, be able to give regular, um, updates to your fellow council members. And then we as a group would collectively come back to council on some regular schedule, either quarterly or whatever schedule that you feel comfortable with to provide a, a formal update of the process. And then finally, um, one other item that was raised in the staff report, um, is that, you know, the city has a defined process for the review of, um, a fee waiver requests. And this is a, uh, this is a project because we're obviously trying to, um, achieve an extremely high level of affordability. Um, this is prob, a, you know, a worthy, a worthy, um, consideration for a fee waiver request. So we just want to give you a heads up that, that the project will submit for a fee waiver request. It goes through a, 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 a review process internal to the city before it will ultimately return to you for final approval. But just that's a, that was a heads up, um, and to make sure that there was no, um, heartburn as, uh, around that, that process. With that, we'll just make sure that we've attached, you know, kind of any other questions or, or comments that you have and we're here to answer.
If I could just add one thing, Jason Glenn, Housing Manager, is that, you know, we considered this idea of this two-member, um, council subcommittee, um, you know, it's important for us to make sure that, um, uh, that there's some parts that we'd like to see, obviously, you know, and with, uh, Councilwoman Gerber, you know, being the housing liaison, we felt that would be appropriate for her maybe to serve on this. But we're looking for someone who had some planning experience. And so I know we haven't Ryan, talked to Ryan at all about this, but you know, Ryan would be our other choice, um, if he's got the time to, to do it. So, um, that would be our recommendation from staff, but we, obviously it is up to council to make that determination. At first all, if it's, if they'd like to see this, this go through and then which members of the, of council they'd like to appoint to that. So we appreciate it.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take these, um, one at a time. So, does anybody have any comment about confirming their support for, uh, the Jay Fisher to submit an AMPD or CUP application?
No.
Go with it.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Sounds great. Moving right along to number two here. Uh, confirm council support of amending the MOU to include the option to lease replacing reimbursement clause in a form acceptable to the city attorney.
Ryan has his hand up here.
Hi, Ryan.
Hey, sorry. Um, one quick thing on the first one, um, you know, support sending this to the planning commission, but kind of based on your timeline, um, you submitted the application in April for the July, um, private activity bond. So really to how, i- am I right then, does the timeline work the same for January? So do you need to be through planning commission by October in order to show, um, there to up that readiness metric for the, for the funding process for your application? Does that make sense?
Ideally, that's correct.
Okay. So we're on a, we're on a tight timeline here in planning commission. So, um, that should just be out there. To, um, yeah, I, I should say, I really, I really appreciate the approach, um, a-again, that, um, that Ryan, the Jay Fisher has taken here, um, with the, uh, with the ground lease option, um, versus the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap. I think this is a big win-win. Um, for us, it's a win for the, for the city in terms of this having no real cost to us. Other than that, some small opportunity cost, um, but still represents a real commitment to, um, to the developer that the council's committed to moving forward. So, um, just, just thanks to, to the other side of the table there. Um, I really like the approach.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ryan. Okay. So does the rest of the council, uh, support amending the MOU to include the option of, uh, lease replacing the reimbursement clause?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I do with, with the one comment that, um, I would expect that this project starts being built before that expires, right? So we should never really get to next December. We should convert it to the permanent solution way before then, I would think.
That, that's definitely our goal, counsel.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, it's been suggested that council members Gerb- Gerber and Dicky serve as the, uh, council subcommittee. Are both of you able to serve in that? Do you have time to be able to do that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, awesome. Does the rest of the council supportive of that?
Yep, Ryan doesn't have time, but he's totally in. Yep, Ryan doesn't have time, but he's totally in.
Okay. Let's see. And then anticipating the request for fee waiver to be submitted for the city review and consideration. Does anybody have any heartburn with that?
Just to clarify, there is a change there, right? So what's in the packet that the public has? That's invalid, essentially.
Yeah, so the the estimate that was provided in the packet there was a snapshot when the current design was done. So it is dated and timestamped to when that was. And obviously, as we said at the beginning of the presentation, that's just hard to change. It changed after that was done, actually, and into the staff report. So that's why you see inconsistencies in the two of those. So we apologize for that. But so there will be a new fee estimate created, obviously, once we have a firmer idea of where the design is. So we can update that. It's more that we wanted to bring this to council to make you aware that, you know, our request is likely and that we'll go through the process and it will ultimately come back to you guys. And, you know, there's various fees that you, when you look at city fees, you know, whether they be planning fees or building permit fees or water impact fees that maybe have a real cost associated with them. So that'll be something you guys will have to consider as you you think about what what you want to waive. So.
Just sort of, right? So the three bedrooms were always twelve hundred square feet. So I just want to be clear, because people see something like that and they'll pull the number off, right, and say, oh, the city's looking around this ballpark. And I don't think we have any idea right now is that within a certain percentage of what it's going to be. So I mean, my point of view on it is if anyone's looking at that, to try and get an indication not to because it it's just not valid. Leave it at that.
Added more units than this. So I think that 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 comes into it. So yeah, you're right. I mean, I think it's going to change, but I think that we have the opportunity to evaluate it when it comes before us and to take another look at it and and to figure it out. It is also interesting that they're talking about a one point two million gap, and that's about one point two million dollars. So figure it out.
Okay, let's go. Let's go ahead and take some public input on this. If you're listening online, please go ahead and put your hand up now. If there's anybody here in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this, please come on to the microphone. There is not. Are there any hands up? Yes, Mayor, we have one. Henry's Pat Matheson. Great. Hi, Pat.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to show my support from Mountland's perspective for this project. This is our world as well. And looking through the numbers, the proposal, I think you've got a great team here. And kudos to the city for diving into the PPP. It feels like murky waters, but I I think you're doing a good job navigating. So I don't have any any red flags that have come up on on my end from the mountain ants perspective as someone who who does this on in in our work. And encourage that the project move forward. So good, good work.
Thanks, Pat. That means a lot coming from Mountainlands. We appreciate it. Are there any more hands up online?
Yes, it looks like we have two more. Diego Segarra.
Okay. Hello, Diego.
Hello, and that is the best pronunciation of my name I've ever heard in council chambers. I following in Pat's footsteps, I'm going to also make just express a lot of support. I think we don't often hear from beneficiaries of affordable housing. I happen to live in affordable housing, and I can attest to the value and importance of it in allowing me to live and work in this community. And it would not, I don't think it'd be for if it wasn't for Rory, one Tuesday afternoon stepping into Rotary and saying that King's Crown was opening a process, I would not have been able to benefit. So thanks, Rory. I believe that this project is looking really good. And I'm grateful for council expressing support for it as well. And I'm excited for the potential, I want to say, one hundred and twenty three families or and individuals that will benefit from this project. So thank you, council, and thanks to everyone working on this project.
Thank you. Who else do we have?
It looks like we have Jamie Johnson.
Hey, Jamie.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Nan and the rest of council. I just wanted to say that we are, as the Park City Board of Realtors, in support of this initiative and or I would echo what Pat and Diego had to say. And we, as the Park City Board of Realtors, are always excited to see our community thrive, and we know that affordable housing is a huge issue. And so we are grateful to Rory. He has come and spoken to our organization about this project and are happy to support him in this.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
No more hands, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. So council, any more comments or emotions?
I would like to just make one comment. I am so excited and so proud of us for getting to this point where we're ready to take this big step and move forward. It's been, I know it's been a little bit stressful at times, but I just I feel such a need and such an urgency from our community. I know I have four neighbors that are moving out of their condo this week because their rent more than doubled. Two of them are servers in the community. One is a construction worker, and I actually don't know what the other one does. We are losing our workforce and our lifeblood so quickly right now, and the urgency behind this project is really felt. So I just thank you, everyone. Both sides of the table, I'm really proud of how far we've gotten and look forward to moving this right along.
Comment? The last two times you guys were here, you knew that my biggest concern was the EMFs. And so I do just want to thank you guys because you went above and beyond to really help me understand. And you brought in experts, you did private meetings with me and people who know this, and I feel a lot more confident than I did. And so, you know, a month ago, I would not have been a fan of this, but I am now. And so I do thank you. I know I'm just one counselor. But I do thank you for going above and beyond to to look at my concerns and not take them as just oh, she's just think, you know, she doesn't know what she's talking about. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything or emotion?
Your Honor, if no one else has anything to say, I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding amendment between Park City Municipal and Jay Fisher Development for the eighteen seventy five Home State Drive Development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Real quick before we, because it's, are we actually approving the MOU amendment? Or are we approving a shift to the option to lease?
So what we presented tonight is what we were actually asking council's vote on, which would be amendment to the MOU that would provide the option to lease, remove the reimbursement clause. In a sense, in a form of proof by the city attorney.
Attorney.
As amended.
Amended.
Okay, thanks.
In a form approved by the city attorney as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you very much, counsel. Appreciate it.
Great step. Okay, let's move on to new business. And next, we have a consideration to approve ordinance number twenty twenty two dash seventeen and ordinance approving the Snowflower condominium's Fourth Amendment plat amending unit seventy five located at four oh one Silver King Drive, unit seventy five.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council members. Spencer Colley with the Planning Department. Here to present on the Snowflower condominium, Fourth Amendment plat for unit seventy five. I'm joined in person by the property owner and the HOA. An HOA representative is online if there are questions following my presentation. So here we have a vicinity map just to orient the council as to where the condominium is located, just at the base of PCMR off of Silver King Drive. And here is an outside view of unit seventy five. So Snowflower condominiums is an eighty two multi-unit condominium. It includes two individual buildings. It's located in the Recreation Commercial Zoning District. The project was approved in nineteen seventy eight. However, during the research, staff wasn't able to find any sort of staff report or minutes for the meeting approval. In nineteen ninety two, there was a conversion of common attic space to private space in about four different units. That was an amendment to an exhibit to the HOAC CNRs and was recorded with the county. However, the plat was never amended. And so this application is to amend the plat to show what is currently what actually exists. So here we see the existing plat on the left is the main level. There have been no changes. However, on the right, where where it says loft level, all that space that says attic at one point was considered common space, but is now actually private space. And here's the proposed plat. And a comparison of the two where the changes will take place. As you can see, over here on the left, it says open to living below. The property owner purchased the unit in twenty twenty. And the attic space was already built into. And the applicant enclosed a small or enclosed a small portion of the loft level for laundry, which is allowed per the plat. And so when the applicant went to obtain their building permit, found out that the plat did not match what was existing. And therefore, this is the proposal that is before you today. So as part of the analysis, the proposed plat amendments comply with the Recreation Commercial Zoning District requirements. All proposed changes to the plat are restricted to the building's interior, and there have been no structural changes. The proposal as condition complies with the Land Management Code, section fifteen dash three dash six, the parking ratio requirements. In nineteen seventy eight, when the project was approved, the land management land management code required one hundred and fifteen parking spaces. So that calculation comes from a minimum of eight spaces with one point five space for each additional unit over five. And so the planned unit development parking requirements were also determined by the planning commission per the land management code. And as I stated before, we could not find anything that would indicate that 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 there was a parking reduction granted by the planning commission in nineteen seventy eight. According to the plat, there are fifty one spaces per building, giving the entire the entire condominium condominium, one hundred and two total spaces. However, the HOA has indicated that there is one parking space per unit, so available per unit. And then there are four off-street parking spots for guests. So the amended plat will reflect the two thousand three hundred eighty seven square feet, which, under the current land management code, which triggered two parking spaces for the unit. So for conditional condition of approval three, staff has suggested that prior to recordation of the plat, the applicant shall gain HOA approval to satisfy the current off-street parking requirements, which would be two spaces. And that can happen through either CUP or the HOA could approve for this unit a reduction in parking. Otherwise, the applicant shall seek a determination of substantial compliance and affirmatively limit the parking to one space. Furthermore, the city has not received any recorded complaints regarding parking for the condominium. And finally, the proposal complies with Land Management Code, section fifteen dash seven point one dash three B for plat amendment. The changes to the plat elements, including conversion of common area, limited common area to private area within a condominium, requires a plat amendment. And the plat amendment shall be reviewed according to the requirements of the Land Management Code. An approval shall require a finding of good cause. And staff finds good cause for this plat amendment because existing conditions are memorialized. The nineteen ninety two HOA changes of common area into private area allow the property owner to complete a remodel. And the conditions of approval will resolve the parking non-compliance. On May eleventh of this year, the planning commission discussed these options and put forth a positive recommendation. And also, sorry, one second. And put forth for the applicant to satisfy the the current parking requirements, these options that are before you today. The planning commission does not have the authority to grant a reduction in parking for this application. However, staff and the planning commission feel that condition of approval three does acknowledge the parking nonconformity through some other means. And so the commission poured a unanimous positive recommendation for city council's consideration. Staff has not received any public input regarding this project. And staff noticed published notice to the city's website and the Utah Public Notice website, as well as the park record on April twenty seventh. And notice posted to the property and notice mailed to property owners within three hundred feet on April twenty seventh. So staff is recommending that the council review the Snowflower condominium's Fourth Amendment plat, amending unit seventy five, hold a public hearing and consider approving ordinance number twenty twenty two dash seventeen based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law and conditions of approval. However, the city council may also decide to deny ordinance number twenty twenty two dash seventeen and direct staff to make findings for this decision. Or the city council may continue the discussion discussion to a date certain. And that's all I have.
Great job. Thank you. Did you say that the there was an HOA representative?
Um, yes, she is online.
And she get promoted?
Her last name is Booth.
And the owner of the building is with us? Oh, hi, welcome. Do you have anything as owner of the building that you'd like to add or say to us?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Booth. I'm the general manager at Snowflower. Spencer pretty much covered everything. Under the CCNRs, we have one parking space per condo. And that is not going to change, but we typically don't have an issue with parking with guest parking. We are right next to the resort. Occasionally, during peak season, we we do see parking poachers, and that's an issue we're addressing. People parked illegally in our lots, and that that creates some congestion. But we don't see an issue with with guest occupancy parking. We we are actually, we have two HOAs with four buildings. And so there is a little bit of flexibility in parking. So so we don't generally see issues.
Okay, great. Thanks for thanks for weighing in. Do you have something you'd like to add?
No, just except we only have one car, so we never plan on having two. And mainly because HOA says just one car per unit.
Yeah, then it works well for you. Yeah, awesome. Council, do you have any questions or comments before we open public input? And if you're listening online and would like to comment, please go ahead and put your hand up.
My my only concern or my only question is if this is similar to one of our cases before with payday, where do we know if this has happened in other units? Are we going to see this come before us again? Is there any way that the HOA could could let us know if this is happening in other units as well?
So there are other units that have gone through a plat amendment. But there are still some that could potentially go through the same process if they if they apply for a building permit.
Okay, it's only would be the top floor, I'm assuming, right? Because of an attic?
Yeah.
Right, I think there are twelve total that could do it, and I think seven have already. And I know there's one in the process right now. They just recorded the new plat, but I'm not sure if it took them over the two thousand square feet.
Any other questions? Let's go ahead and take public input. Oh, Ryan, I'm sorry.
Okay. I I just wanted to know, did we look into or do we know if they, the owner obtained a building permit for the for the ninety two remodel?
Not to my knowledge. Not not that in the research that I find that there was a building permit that was issued in nineteen ninety two. But the work was done prior to the current owner purchasing the property.
Right, right. Okay, thanks.
For public input, is there anyone here wishing to speak? How about online?
No hands raised, Mayor.
Great. Counsel, any other discussion or emotion?
So to to build on Ryan's question there, and Ryan, you probably know more about this than I would, but So to to build on Ryan's question there, and Ryan, you probably know more about this than I would, but what's the implication? Or maybe the planning department can explain that approving it without a building permit essentially? Does that mean we don't know if it meets code or?
So approving this particular without a building permit?
It's a different thing.
Oh, you were talking about the other unit.
No, we're talking about the plat. We're just changing the plat so they can apply.
Yeah, this is just just amending the plat to reflect the changes made in nineteen ninety-two by the HOA. So the HOA never went through the process of amending the plat. They just amended their C C N Rs and then recorded their exhibit with the county, which isn't the full process. But now we're trying to bring these units into compliance.
And if they wanted to do something different, then they'd be able to apply.
So if anyone who did this prior to now, if we approve the plat, they'd be essentially grandfathered in.
So this is just for this unit. So if there if the HOA chose to holistically amend all of the plats, then we would grandfather in those that had already gone through and had a building permit and had already made changes to their units.
Okay, yeah, I get it. I'm just confused why we're handling this different than we just handled a very similar situation, I feel like, with with a different project, but maybe it doesn't matter.
Gretchen, do you want to say something? Can you come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
Gretchen Milliken, Planning Director. Jeremy, I think you are referring to the payday. Yeah, and the payday was done holistically. There had been a number of units that did this sort of one-off, one by one. But they, in order to do that, you need two-thirds of the vote of the HOA to do the entire, to do it more holistically like that. And as Spencer pointed out, these are just the top units, so it doesn't affect a number of the other units for Moon Shadow. And so that's why we're doing it sort of one by one. Because we like to correct to correct the plat as best as we can. And so this is helpful for when planners, when a building permit comes in or when a permit comes in, we're looking at a plat that actually reflects what is there as opposed to looking at a plat that, you know, is incorrect. Makes sense.
Yeah, it does. And I don't think it's an issue with this specific topic, but so we can move on.
Yeah.
Are there questions or comments or a motion?
Your Honor, I move we approve new business item number one.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to new business item number two, the Park City Forward Long Range Transportation Plan.
We will be, just for those of you that are joining us online, we will be taking public input on this item. If you know you want to speak to it, please go ahead and put your hand up now.
Hi, Alex Rice, Senior Transportation Planner.
Julia Collins, Transportation Planning Manager.
Well, thanks for meeting with us today. Oh, sorry. You got it. So we're here today to give an initial presentation on Park City Four, the Long Range Transportation Plan. Yes, we'll get into it. We've kept it pretty brief today. This is, you know, not on the schedule for any action item. This is a kind of a work session item that's in this portion now, so we're looking for feedback. But I'd also invite you, if you think, okay, I want to, you know, provide written feedback at some point, we welcome that, you know, for a week or two as well. So this won't be your only feedback loop per se. So we've kind of been in this process for a number of years, and we're kind of reaching the end of the Long Range Transportation Plan. So in the past few months, we've gone to our technical advisory committee in April. We've gone to the planning commission in May. We've held two-by-twos with council recently in June. And today, you know, we're at the work session really seeking feedback on this draft. Post this meeting, we plan to go back to the planning commission in August and then also back to the technical advisory committee in August as well. And then eventually come forward to you guys for feed, consideration of adoption in September. You know, during this feedback loop, we've heard a lot of great information on the project, you know, primarily the real need to have more of an executive summary that kind of unifies the plan and kind of creates a cohesive vision that, you know, you can use as a quick, you know, handout or, you know, kind of like an elevator pitch. So we're actively working on that now. And we've also heard some feedback, you know, we maybe we should just look at a little bit of the wording and the financial assumptions, and we plan to go back and work with the finance team to update those also. And so we wanted to give you a quick overview today of where the Long Range Transportation Plan, Park City Four, kind of fits into the overall picture of transportation planning and projects within the city. So Park City Forward is kind of, you know, twenty to twenty-five year look at transportation planning. This consists of, you know, big project concepts, planning level costs for multiple transportation modes, so biking, walking, transit, roadway, intelligent transportation systems, including, you know, like signage and things of that nature. So it's really a comprehensive package. Because it's so comprehensive and long-reaching, it can't really get into details of any one specific node. It's really kind of trying to lay out a blueprint of where we want to go for the next twenty-five years and then have identifiable steps to reach those ultimate goals. Traditionally, you know, a city will undertake something like this five, every five to ten years to kind of reassess where they are and then make sure that their priorities are aligned moving forward. It's similar to what a metropolitan planning organization would do every four years for a region, or looking internally in the city with more modes every five to ten years. Once we, you know, complete the Long Range Transportation Plan, we also have mode-specific plans and projects. And these are where you really kind of see the more nuanced look at what, you know, different projects look like or spell out or, you know, design features. So to that end, we're working on the Short Range Transit Plan. We'll be coming back to you guys this summer to talk about that. And we also have the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. And then we do, you know, parking and corridor studies and area planning with the planning group as well. And then once those studies are complete for these different modes and, you know, different projects, a good example is working on the two twenty-four BRT project with the county, then they go into project design and implementation. This is where the real nuts and the bolts of the design and how it's going to lay out fixtures. So it kind of, you know, works down from this overall blueprint, you know, kind of an umbrella of all transportation and then gets, you know, specific down these ways. So you set the vision and then you work, work kind of down to make sure you're implementing what the vision is.
So I'll be as brief as I can because we know that we're last and we want to get through this, but Alex talked about planning level. So I just want to highlight that this is not a plan that's going to sit on the shelf. This is a blueprint, not only for our planning process and how we get to the end deliverable with capital projects, but it's also for so many of our transportation goals, our programs, our policies and our projects. And so I'm just going to outline some of the next steps, kind of longer terms, the next steps shorter term that our department is going to work with you and the community to advance. So this plan identifies that much of our work is regional. Many of our trips, especially the longer distance trips, employee trips, visitor trips, they all start as regional trips. And so we want to focus on those partnerships and our project needs. We also will use the financial projections and the priority projects and many grant grant applications, which we talked about earlier this evening. This document will also identify how we build policies and regulations and really guide us with those strategies. And then it's going to be the supplementary tool to the general plan for our transportation, again, strategies, goals and visions. And we, having gone to the planning commission, they've emphasized how important this will be in the work that they're doing with a lot of their current development projects. If you go to the next slide. And then in the next couple of years, what we hope you're going to see from our department will be able to deliver is using this blueprint to incorporate the strategies into some land management code updates, other city codes and policies. And already, again, because we've recently been to the planning commission, they have specifically asked for this to add a degree of specificity to the transportation demand management requirements in development proposals. And we're going to start working on that pretty quickly. This plan also identifies a metric and data reporting program that's very complex. And what this means for you is that it would result in some type of annual report on progress to the health of the transportation system. But, you know, we are currently evaluating what data we have, what data we need, where do we want to go with that? What data can we use, rely on our other partners for? And what what can we give you on the successive projects and the health of the transportation system? And then lastly, the modal hierarchy. This is something that during the the plan development we brought to council, I think it was October second in twenty twenty. And it was supported by council or basically saying, our priority is advancing bicycles, pedestrians and transit over single occupancy vehicles. And so this is this, we're going to look up, take a really hard look at how we can integrate that into more of the work that the city is doing and start right off the bat with the land management code and our partnership with the planning department. With that, I'll get it back over to you, Alex.
Thank you. Thanks. So I think, go ahead. Bring the energy. So when this project first started off a number of years ago, vision and goals were established. This has kind of evolved over the course of the project, but the ultimate vision was Park City's transportation system embraces innovation to provide a safe, year-round transportation options that promote a connected, inclusive and multimodal mountain community and culture. And culture was a very important word to the tech because they wanted to really bring in the sense that this isn't just, you know, for people coming in, but we want the culture to be reflective in the transportation planning that we do. The goals of this include access, so accessing many places in all locations of the city include to make sure it's an equitable transportation system and we're reaching the parts of the public that sometimes don't always get reached. Sustain, make sure it's environmentally friendly and transform, making sure we're looking at new and emerging modes of transportation. Well, I think these vision and goals are very important to kind of create a baseline. We found the need to have some more guiding principles that might be a little bit more tangible in the planning work. So we've identified these five different guiding principles. One would be develop the multimodal community. And the really, the sense of this is that multimodal just means that if you park once or you're living somewhere or you go to work, that you don't need to drive to every place you're going. That's really like, okay, if I park here, great, I can use transit or I can bike and walk. And really, understanding that cars are always going to be part of our culture and community, but we want to provide other options so they're not necessary for every trip. We want to work with regional partners on transportation solutions. We understand that Park City is not a entity in and of itself, but is really, you know, a multitude of different counties, different communities that all kind of make up who is traveling to and within Park City. We want to identify and manage transportation during peak conditions. You know, this is a very complex issue. As we've seen, you know, there are various things we can do. And I think the first step to that is really understanding what these conditions are, where the people are moving to and during what the peak times that we need to be looking at. We want to expand our world-class biking and walking developments. I think Park City for a long time has kind of been recognized as the gold standard of biking and walking in Utah, where I think we're the only gold League of American Bicyclists recognized cities. We want to ensure that we maintain that high ranking and that really great world-class biking and walking development. And then we want to leave space for disruptive ideas and transportation innovations. Looking at twenty-five years from now, I'm not sure that any of us can accurately project what is going to happen to the transportation field. Ten years ago, if you had told me we'd all be like taking people, people would just pick me up from an app, I would have been surprised. But I think, you know, we want to be flexible enough that we can be nimble with these kind of new transportation modes that are coming out. So a big question that we get is who is this project for? And I'm not going to get into each one of these, but it's really for a wide variety of people who are coming into Park City. We want to record, give to the community members and the residents, but we also recognize that recreation and culture events make the city what it is. So we've developed this, what we're calling the Park City Blueprint, Park City Four Blueprint. And I think this really is reflective of, you know, some of the feedback that we got from you a few months ago on what should our priorities be? And we kind of looked at, you know, okay, do we want to have parking on the outskirts of town? And we heard pretty loud and clear that that's important, but we also have to recognize where parking is needed in town as well. So we kind of broke it down to these two things. We have getting to Park City. So what does that mean? That's high-capacity transit, working on regional transportation projects, looking at park and ride and sensible intercept lots to to get the most amount of people are coming into town to improve the traffic on our gateway corridors. But it also means like building upon those, you know, bicycle and pedestrian plans that we know are so critical of community, looking at intersections and crossings to improve the safety of bicycling and walking, looking at intersections to make sure that they're operating, you know, to peak capacity within the footway with the, you know, right away in the footprint. And then, you know, looking at different transit options for more community-based service. So, you know, as we've talked to you a number of times, we're looking at the viability of a micro-transit system where that's not really for, you know, regional trips, but it could do a really good job of, you know, enhancing the community's transportation options or transit options. So this plan, you know, was built on a number of years of comprehensive outreach. We had nine hundred participants or more over the course of a couple of years. We had over seventeen hundred comments. And some of the things that we heard of top transportation concepts were high-capacity transit on gateway corridors, focusing on reduction of single occupancy vehicles on gateway corridors. I think that single occupancy is critical. You know, that's getting away from people driving themselves, but providing, you know, you have carpooling options or transit options. And I think there's a whole lot of different projects. We can look at the term single occupancy vehicle. Improved sidewalks and bicycle and pedestrian safety is also very critical during our outreach. Some of the lower priority transportation projects, but ones that we're still want to include in this project, but just in later phases are area, aerial in Gondola, private shuttle stops and dedicating curb space to special, special uses. Lots of cities have kind of done flexible curb spacing where, you know, they change throughout the day, but we're not quite there yet. New shared mobility devices were super popular. So we're talking about e-scooters, but, you know, we do, there was a lot of support for the existing bike-share network. And then new freeway connections. This isn't enhancing our existing freeway connections. This is, you know, brand-new freeway connections and brand-new roads was not very high, highly ranked either. So PC four project list, you know, is multimodal, active transportation, shared mobility, transit, parking TDM, roadway goods movement and technology. It's all wrapped up into, you know, a list of about ninety projects. And we wanted to give you a breakdown of how one of these projects would look quickly. And I know we've talked about the Snow Creek two forty-eight crossing quite a bit, so we've decided to kind of represent how this, this project looks at a very specific plan. So it's in pedestrian crossing improvement. So that'd be ATO two, if you wanted to look at the, you know, the very wonky wording in there. But so it's in kind of a group of five different pedestrian crossing improvements. One of those is identified to be in the next five years from just a fiscally, fiscally monitoring type system. So we've identified one of those to be in the this current five years, probably going to be Snow Creek. Then we get, you know, then it goes to one degree more where you heard John and Gabe talk about, you know, kind of the design and engineering alternatives and what's included in the project. So it gets more specific there. And then so the project is kind of bigger than that. So we're looking at multiple crossings, but this is how like one specifically looks into it and how we budget it for moving forward. Other crossings show up later in the spreadsheet. And so we kind of say, okay, we know we're going to need more, but one right now in this first five years. So this is our last slide, but I just wanted to kind of highlight how we, we would like to adopt this plan eventually in September. We want to adopt it as a supplemental update to the existing transportation of the general plan, so it will not replace what's in the general plan. It's just a supplementary information for the general plan to be using in their, you know, identifying different processes. And then this will also help inform the planning staff with the upcoming planned general plan update. So with that, we would like to say, Council, do you have any feedback or written comments that you would like to provide to us today? And is the council comfortable with the direction and strategies of the document?
Well done. Lots of information in a quick manner and a zippy manner and kept us awake. Hi, Ryan. Go ahead.
Yes, thanks for keeping us awake. That's always a good bar to clear. So, so I think there's a lot of great work here. You know, this is meaty. It takes a couple of cycles through. That's, that's, you know, part of the feedback I gave to them was, hey, I read it. I'm going to read it again. So more feedback to come. But I think what's, I think what's most striking about it. But I think what's, I think what's most striking about it was the feedback we gave in our, in the session I have with these guys as transportation liaison. I think the piece that's missing, and I think it's, it's, it's for this team, and I think it's also for us as a council, is, is the, the vision upfront for, for transportation and for transit that, that, that takes it from multimodal and connections and nodes into what is the vision for transit that this rolls up to achieve? So like a, as, as they're talking through it and talking about park once for locals, you know, talking about high, you know, high throughput connections. You know, the, no one, no one, the visitors don't bring a car, no visitor brings a car to Park City in 2030. You know, what I, I think it's incumbent on us to, to shape this into a vision that the community can respond to and rally around, and that's provocative, sort of in the same way of 800 housing units. Something that's simple and, but aspirational and that, you know, will guide us in all these next steps to go get grants and build the pieces of, of the plan that don't all happen at once, but the community understands that we're building towards a vision that people can sort of galvanize around. So I think it's a really big opportunity in that way, because there's so much good meat here in this plan. And so that's what I would really want to see, see us, you know, arrive at that, a vision like that before we would adopt it into the general plan. Yeah, I, I'd love to see us head there. That, that was my big takeaway from it.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, I actually agree with Ryan. And when I heard that phrase that I think he coined of park once mentality, it, it really stuck. I think that it's something that people can get around. It doesn't say you are parking once out of town. It doesn't say you're parking once in town. It, it really covers the entire, the entire region. Where you park, you park one time. So I do agree with that. And I really do agree with the visitors don't need a car. I mean, I think that's a great message that our partners can get behind and we can really help push forward. So I agree with that too, Ryan, on all the vision. I just had a couple of comments. And so one was, when we did this transportation work session in March, we came up with, or you, you guys came up with 16 disruptive ideas. And I, like Ryan said, this was really meaty. There was a lot to it. So I just didn't find a lot of those in here. And so I don't know if they're just not on the table anymore, if they're not part of our five-year plan or, or where we want to go with that. Because for me, a lot of the disruptive ideas solve a lot of our problems. So I just think that I would like to see at least some of those looked at. I know you have Ariel on here, but you know, I, I still think we need to be looking at tunneling or different, different ways to move a lot of people. So that part and then, and I don't necessarily, maybe it's just the phrase of where you say low priority. I don't necessarily think those are a low priority. I think they are a high priority. Like I said, I think they will actually help us solve more. So maybe it's not a, not, not the low hanging fruit or something. I just think saying low priority makes it sound like it's never going to happen. So maybe just different phrasing there. I said this also in our, our meeting on Monday or Tuesday, whoever that was. I, I don't think I see enough for Main Street. Really, there's not a lot with pedestrian intersections and cars. And there's, I, I don't think it's lost on anyone that Main Street is where we have the most pedestrians. And so I think we need to really figure out how people are, what, what are they doing when, once they do park their car one time? Do we, are intersections working? Are they, are they having, not opportunities? Are they going to have run-ins with cars? So, so really looking at Main Street and making sure that area is also on there. And then, oh, also just where we are with construction vehicles. And, and obviously that's a bigger conversation with our building department, but you know, construction season is upon us. And I think we need to understand it's probably not going to stop. It's probably just going to keep getting worse as we go, but really having a construction element to this would be fantastic. So thank you. And this is really great work and I, I really appreciate what you guys have done here.
Next.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll support Tana and Ryan on the vision side. This kind of leans into the piece that I was talking about earlier with ideas. Ideas lead to energy and, and conversation. And, you know, to Tana's point, she obviously has a lot of ideas and wants to kind of hash them all out. Obviously this plan, I think this plan leaves lots of room for those ideas to be presented. We can bounce those ideas around and figure out which ones kind of rise to the top in terms of, you know, how much they cost and whether they actually work, property rights. I mean, you've got all kinds of different pieces to the puzzle, right? But this particular thing that you've put in front of us, Park City Forward, isn't necessar, it's sort of like guide rails. Hey, this is what we want to talk about. Ryan's probably going to get tired of this, but we're just going to keep giving him credit for Park Once mentality. That's something that, it's a pretty easy thing for us to repeat and say over and over and over. And it doesn't just help the community understand what we're doing. It helps staff come to us with, hey, this fits into our Park Once mentality. We have a connection to the airport that we want to invest in. We want to work with our regional partners so that people can park once in LA and go skiing in Park City. It also works in, you know, park and ride situations. It works. And when we, when we start looking for solutions for everybody that's going to circulate because it costs money to park in Park City, ideally you just pay once and park in that place once rather than trying to move around. Even in our two by twos, there were ideas that were bounced around and I felt like we had more synergy in the room than we've had on a lot of discussions so far this year. And so I'm going to give Ryan a ton of credit because I think that that, that phrase really did that for us. That's the kind of thing that we're looking for. I think that's the kind of thing that Park City is looking for. It's an idea like the 800 unit goal, which, you know, give Becca a ton of credit. She brought, hey, I want an idea. I want a firm goal in, in place. We found one and it's guided so many decisions over the last six years. It allows for us to frame conversation and we hear a ton about transportation in Park City. So having this Park Once mentality doesn't say you have to not use your vehicle anymore. But boy, when you get out of it, please try and use one of these other mobility options that we have in the community. But I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that, you know, we have a ton of complaining and moaning and groaning about traffic in Park City. When in reality, I might butcher the timeline, but I think it was less than 20 months ago. We did a analysis and there are less than 20 days where you're actually delayed more than a couple of minutes from any point-to-point trip, you know, outside of two hours a day, right? Maybe we have a, a little bit on your way in and a little bit on your way out of town. So let's be clear, when we talk about disruptive ideas that cost hundreds of millions of dollars, let's, there's no, there's no getting around the fact that if you put gondolas around town or you put tunnels under town, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars, whether it's operations and maintenance or capital investment. 20 months ago, we're talking about 20 days a year for two hours a day. So let's make sure we know what we're investing in. I think we want to be talking about the livability of the community rather than just targeting these, these spikes, right? The livability of the community, what it's all about. And so I'm excited for the Park Once mentality to take off and for Ryan to get that, you know, on his license plate. It's going to be great.
We can make him a little brochure that he can go to bed with. Bedtime reading.
Jeremy. Well, I stole it from Alex. So, you know, it's the finest form of flattery, right?
But, you know, I just, I really like this idea. I think this is great. And we can do a lot with the feedback that you're giving us. And I don't want to steal Alex's thunder or, or Ryan's thunder, but I, I just want to, we can, you know, we heard from the planning commission that they would like an executive summary, that this is too thick, this is too dense. Give us a light version that, you know, whether we're handing this out, whether this is our talking points for them, it's going to help them with their development review. But the park once, we can take that and say, hey, this applies to this user group, whether it's an employee or a visitor. Park once in Salt Lake and take the express bus to the resort, you know, that's a plausible future in the next five to 10 years that we could, we could provide as part of this vision. The same thing for the, the local or the second homeowner. Park once in your driveway and we want to give you a transportation option to get to your destination. If you want to take it, we will give you that option. So both those regional trips and then those local trips, we can, we can give you some of these, these nuggets or, or things, if, if that's a format that appeals to you.
I, I would say, you know, the Park Once mentality is, is a great headline. And then you have kind of these sub, sublines, which were the visitors don't need a car, address peak day traffic, bike and walk community and regional collaboration. And I think those kind of fall into a subcategory there that, that is covered by Park Once mentality, but gives us a little more framework.
And I was also going to say, the one thing that, so again, I, I love everything and I, I like the executive or the 12-page summary or whatever you did. Sorry, Jeremy, I cut you off too. Jeremy, you're just so shy. She, she started it. I, but I was going to say, I do want to make sure that, and I love the park once. I think it makes a lot of sense. And I think that maybe even you can like evolve it down the line to like the park nunts or for like the park never. Because we, as we talk about evolving our affordable housing program and these denser, more dense parts of town, I want to make sure that there's a highlight on serving needs too. And there's the needs component, and then there's the wants of our Park City. So, but understanding that they're like people in our community that don't have cars or people that our workforce are coming in that literally don't have cars. And making it, you know, safe and convenient for them, and then making it easier for other people to jump onto that bandwagon of, you know, making it so that we don't need, need to provide as much parking overall also down the road. That can be the long-term vision.
Jeremy, go ahead.
I agree with what's, what's been said. I mean, the overarching theme is we're missing the outcomes. All right. I mean, what, like the so what that relates to these, we've talked about it before. It feels like a good laundry list of ideas. It doesn't really have much of a value proposition though. And that's where that so what and those outcomes will tie it together and not only make it real for probably what the planning commission's asking, but also make it real for the community and for us, so we can make the decisions on where we want to prioritize the funding and our limited resources. So as, as it sits, I mean, I, yeah, I guess to answer your question, yeah, I'm comfortable with what's in here. I don't necessarily think it's comprehensive though. Like I felt like there were some ideas we've talked about that aren't in here. And I also just felt like without that, so what? Unless it's purely for like applying for grant funding and this is good enough to check that box. But if we're going to use it for anything else, I, we probably need to pivot or take a step further or something.
You guys have done so much work on this and it's just amazing. So thank you. Thank you so much for that. You know, I'm impressed that, that you, you said upfront, this isn't a document that's going to sit on the shelf. You know, and to Jeremy's point, I think outcomes are really going to help with that. And, and doing the executive summary that was suggested by the planning commission, I think is really needed with this. Cause you know, when I look at our general plan, which has to be two volumes because it's so comprehensive. I think that a shorter version of this would really be useful for the public to, to engage. You know, and I also think that there's a lot of strength in a unified voice. And I think that the more that this council and members of the staff have the same talking points as we talk about our transportation going forward, I think that's really important. And whether we start with, you know, park once as, as Ryan, and then build off of that with the bullet points that Tana suggested. You know, I just think that an elevator pitch that is repeated over and over again by this council, by members of the staff is really going to help hit it home with the community. So this is noticed for public input. Is there anyone listening online that would like to comment on this?
No hands raised, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here in chambers that would like to make a comment? We'll close public input. Council, any final comments?
I forgot in my comments, the recreation survey is out. So if you go to any of the social media spots or on the website, you need to. We want a lot of input. Hey man, we're going to.
For all those listening, take the survey. Good, good job, Max.
I'll say it on the radio tomorrow. It's all right.
Thank you, Max. Thank you, Max. Coming back to what we were talking about.
So you, you will engage the transportation stakeholder group that, that we had still, and so they, have they seen this yet or no, not yet?
They, it's been publicized, but they haven't seen the, the full document.
Okay. And you'll do a presentation to them as well?
We've given them the Cliff Notes version of it, I would say. And then we'll share with them, but we'd also, we're also going to plan on working with our transportation liaisons to incorporate the feedback we've received from you. As I've mentioned, if you, you know, want to read it again and provide written comments, that'd be great. I'd ask for the, you know, maybe two weeks from today would be a great time to provide written comments to us. And then, you know, we'll come back, we'll incorporate those, we'll work with our transportation liaisons and our technical advisory committee to incorporate as much as we can. I think we can do a lot and I really like, appreciate the vision. I think, you know, we're so involved in this that sometimes we miss, you know, the forest or the trees or whatever. And, you know, we focus really intensely on these small issues. And I think you, you're bringing some great perspective that there needs to be a unifying message and we've heard that loud and clear.
And I'm just going to add, you know, throughout, I think a lot of the, the campaign, there was a lot of hubbub in the community on how we don't have a vision for transportation. And, you know, we are proud to give this plan to you. It's representative of what we've heard from the community with our outreach over the past three years. We have these community stakeholders. And so this is your plan. It's the community's plan. And we want to give you the tools that you need to be able to share this, that we've accomplished this. You know, we did have a pause with COVID, but here we are now and we've pulled all the relevant people back in the room to complete this, to execute this. So, you know, if there's other things that you guys see as you're diving for this that you need, please let us know. Because we, you know, we also rely on you to share the message of what we've accomplished here and what this, you know, like I keep on saying, it's a blueprint. You know, it's, it's going to set the stage for a lot of things for the city, like Park Once.
And can you please remind all of the public that's listening right now, how they could submit any more comments?
There is a Park City Forward email account that if you go into the transportation planning webpage, you can find the email links there.
Great, thank you. All right. Now that we've talked about the recreation plan, we are adjourned.
Bye, guys.